Okay, it's four o'clock, everybody, and this is the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission, holding our hearing via Zoom. It is Tuesday, April 12th at 4:00 PM. And we have one postponement this evening. And that is item number nine, MCJB LLC, at 44 Cutler Road for a final site plan and special permit to add to a single-family dwelling. In addition, we have a decision item number 10, which we will not be deciding tonight because your chair was supposed to draft something and did not finish, and I apologize, I ran out of time. And with that, we will begin our regular meeting with Cortesi Real Estate LLC, 469, and this is a correction, West Putnam Avenue in the LB Zone to convert the present use to a dialysis center. And for the applicant, Mr. Laura, oh, Mr. Hegney, hello.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. For the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. As you indicated, Madam Chair, this is to take existing space, interior renovations to go from the current uses, which are jobbing, office, health, and a salon to a health center as a dialysis center. This is a permitted use in the LB Zone. So we're coming to you really as a change from one permitted use or series of permitted uses to another permitted use. There are 44 parking spaces associated with this space. And we believe that that is more than adequate to address the parking needs that would result from the use of this facility. I want, I did have a chance to speak with the owners of the dialysis center today, and I did want to fill in a bit of the questions that you had at the briefing yesterday. There are 12 of the dialysis stations. There is one isolation room that is only used on a really a rare basis when someone comes in with like hepatitis or something else that they need to isolate them during the dialysis treatment.
We might even say COVID, but okay.
Might. Would be topical. The home training rooms are not scheduled at the same time as the 12 dialysis chairs because there are people come in at various times for either refresher or to be trained so that they can do dialysis at home rather than coming to the center. Currently, they're planning on having Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, so three days a week. If they are looking to expand, they would probably do it Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. Although there is a fair amount of space in the center, they need an awful lot of storage space and other ancillary space. They would not be looking to expand the number of treatment chairs. They would really just look to expand the hours and days that they provide treatment. Ninety percent of the patients who come are dropped off by family members. And those people probably would not use the garage. They would do the surface parking or the handicap parking that's right at the front of the building. The employees all would use the garage so that they would free up the surface parking spaces. They do have both a medical waste room and a medical waste plan. The, this is an independent facility. It is not associated with the hospital. This is a for-profit business. And a question came up about parking for Polpo. My client has had an ongoing battle with the restaurant. And at times has had to resort to towing. But there is no parking arrangement and from discussion I had with my client, unlikely to be a parking arrangement between Polpo and this property at 469 West Putnam. Given the uses that we have, a total of nine employees, full-time and part-time, and that there would be no more than, even at the extreme, 15 of the treatment areas occupied at any given time. The 44 parking spaces allocated to this use are more than adequate. And they really need the time both to prepare for people coming in and then to clean up after people have been leaving.
And Mr. Hegney, you also have a comment about the, your square footage on the fit-outs not exactly matching up between what was approved and what you have. I believe you could address that prior to permit, but have you had a chance to figure that out?
Oh, I was looking at the gross square footage. And I believe that there's a little bit more gross square footage on the first floor than what we're including here. Besides, besides just the subway. But these are the numbers we've been using for a number of years as part of determining the required parking for each of the various uses that have been on-site since the building was built.
Okay, going back to your, I don't remember seeing anywhere in the application. Refresh me if you did, your hours?
They would be just at this point for, the treatments are three to four hours, so.
But then you have that training time for the at-home and all of that, so.
That would just be two of those rooms which would be used for that. They will have staff on-site during regular business hours.
And what are the hours of operation?
Most likely to be nine to five.
So you're nine to five, and then you would, for now, you're going to do Monday, Wednesday, Friday. You would eventually add Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday also on a nine to five?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, within the, probably Saturdays would not be nine to five, but because they wouldn't have the regular administrative staff there necessarily a full day on Saturday.
Last thing, since you said that, and I didn't go look at the site recently, so my apologies, since you said people would be pulling in for the drop-off. Is there a way that you can accommodate that drop-off with signage for the patients so that it's not just, you said they might use a handicap parking. Say they're not handicapped, they want to drop off the, the patient's family member comes, wants to come in. Can you somehow mark, put signage near the building, what that, what those spaces are for, you know, 15-minute parking for patient drop-off or something by the building?
The only impact I would not want to have is, we have the Subway Sandwich Shop
Right.
there, right at the corner, and I wouldn't want to have a negative impact on their businesses as part of this, but.
But to our point, what we would say to you then is, if the Subway people have to walk 20 minutes, I mean, 20 feet.
Yeah, I would hope it wouldn't be 20 minutes.
And you've got people who are very ill, who you want to accommodate, so I would try to accommodate the people who are ill first. And if you could put a sign that says between eight and nine AM or whatever time will leave you open for it, but that there'd be 15-minute parking somewhere near the building that is marked for those people to be dropped off so that it's more accessible to them, because from what I know of that, they don't feel good.
I, I'm certain that we can work that out on the site, because there are quite a few surface parking spaces.
Yeah, and just something that accommodates people who aren't feeling well when you do the parking.
Certainly.
All right. Any other questions for the Commission? Mr. Yaski?
Mr. Hegney, you mentioned that this is not part of Greenwich Hospital. But I assume this sort of treatment would have to be licensed by the state. Is that true?
I'm not sure what the licensing criteria is for this. I imagine there would be some licensing criteria. This is a a for-profit business, so.
And is this, is this the only dialysis center in Greenwich?
I'm not aware of.
Wow, that's a record. That's a record.
I'm not aware of that. I believe that you can receive dialysis at the hospital.
Yeah, I think you are. I can't imagine that you wouldn't be.
I just didn't hear it before. I'm just curious. Because as you know, in the POCD, we were trying to figure out the land use and what it means to medical. We've had applications about assisted living and cancer and blood and a couple of other things. I was just curious. You know, how many of these kind of operations and how many other services might be provided, like this satellite location, but that's fine. It's not really per se part of zoning, other than long-term. If these are the kind of services that are needed by Greenwich residents, I'd love to know a list of these kinds of services.
Yeah, I would say this one is, is obviously very specific. It's for dialysis. It is not a high-traffic generator, and it's not like a doctor's office where you have people scheduled every 15 minutes. They, people are there for three or four hours.
I don't believe, I don't believe the incidence of
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Hegney.
dialysis is that high in general. It's not widespread.
Chronic kidney disease affects as many as 37 million people in the United States, a huge percentage of whom are not aware they have kidney disease, just telling you. It's the 10th leading cause of death in the United States. If, you can always count on your commission to Google, Mr. Hegney.
I appreciate all the research that's done by the commission members.
So, so yes, it is actually, people don't know they have it. Okay, any other questions from the Commission other than?
Yes, just a quick question. Madam Chairwoman, you were talking about drop-off pickup. Would your thought was that, you know, spaces be allotted for that?
But not block them the whole day because Mr. Hegney is saying it's in the, it's, you know, they come at a certain time in the day for 15 minutes while they, while your family member walks you in, so it could be, we leave it to the applicant that they, the applicant, we've asked the applicant to designate what, two spaces near the building as, as temporary parking between the hours of, you said nine to five, so between nine and nine-thirty or something like that?
So it's not, it's not a queue.
We have to see what the, right.
Yeah, we would just ask you, we'll leave it open, but we're just suggesting, and I'm sure your company will have the same idea, but that we would encourage you setting it aside.
Yeah, we'd have to look to see what the hours of operation will be and and then work in the signage accordingly.
Okay. Yes, but we were gonna put the hours of operation as being nine to five, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday initially, possibly followed by Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, just so that you're all set.
Yes, but they would only be having one of the treatment sessions a day, and they're doing them pretty much all at once, rather than having them come in at different times.
Mr. Hegney, is there not enough demand to do one in the morning and one in the afternoon?
Not at this point, no.
Okay, but eventually you might also go there.
I asked them about that. They said first they would go from Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and add Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday.
And then they would do the second half of the day.
More demand, they would do second, yeah.
All right. Okay, does, is it all ready if I turn to public for comment?
Just a quick question, Mr. Hegney. There's going to be no change to the building? The big windows are going to stay, the awning is going to stay, all of that stuff is going to stay?
Yes, all that stays.
And you'll go to ARC for any signage change?
Yes.
Okay, I would, I would, okay, I would assume you're going to block the windows, so. All right, does anybody from the public wish to comment on this application? And it's Andrea Siska, who is here for something else, I think, but thank you for coming. Ma'am, you should, if you unmute, you should be all set to speak. Hello.
Hello, how are you? Can you all see and hear me?
Yep.
Yes. Hi, hi, Chair Albin, Commissioners, how are you today?
We're good.
I'm here today for Combine Training, who is a tenant in the part of the premises that the applicant seeks to use for the dialysis center. My client Combine Training has been a tenant since 2012. We submitted a letter that was copied to the Commission yesterday just indicating to the Commission that my client has a lease that continues through March 1st of 2027. That can actually be extended until March 1st of 2037. And so we just wanted to let the Commission and also the, the members of the public know that my client is operational in the space because there has been some question about its continued operation in the location based on this application proceeding. And so there is a great concern that the application is pending, notwithstanding that my client has a long-term lease in the space.
The landlord in the space has authorized the application, correct? Mr. Hegney?
Yes, the landlord has authorized this application, yes.
Well, the property owner.
The property owner.
Correct.
So therefore, therefore, Ms. Siska, I think that's the recourse of your, it's not us. If the property owner has authorized it, that's the only, that's where we stop. And we have to go forward with it, and your recourse will be to go to the property owner. And I'm sure you know that. I'm not telling you as an attorney anything you don't know, so.
I understood, Chair Albin. I just wanted to, for the record, make it clear that my client is in the space and is fully operational and intends to continue to operate through the balance of the term of the lease.
Okay. Alrighty. Okay, thank you very much.
So, Mr. Hegney, if the Commission goes with the, you know, parking requirement of any other use not noted in the regulation, and it's one for 250, yeah, I can see that you, that there are enough parking spaces for the site. I'm more concerned about what the health center and what Mr. Yaski, the direction he was going, because we have other private health centers around town. And they will function, I'm sure, slightly differently, dependent on the type of situation they're dealing with. But in your particular case, I see that there appears to be, well, the parking demand of 27, or is that, that's just the, what would be available at the 250? Anyway, where I'm going with this is, what is, what is the peak parking demand that this particular use would experience? Assuming that you have all-day use, so if it was, you know, Monday through Friday, and there was a session in the morning and a session in the afternoon, I, obviously, there wouldn't be much overlap, I'm guessing, but I think it's important for the record to establish the peak parking demand. It will be anticipated.
Certainly. So even if all of the treatment rooms, even for the, the home treat, training, and the isolation were occupied, that would be 15 patients, and there's a staff of nine, including both full-time and part-time, five full-time, four part-time. So if they were all there at the same time, that would be a parking demand of 24. There would be at least an hour between one session in the morning and one session in the afternoon, so that they can prepare to clean up the, the, the treatment rooms and then prepare for the next series of treatments. We have 44 parking spaces allocated to this square footage based on 150 square feet per space. So this building was built at a time when the parking regulations are what they are currently. And, and that's what is available and assigned to this space for, from the property. So even if it was considered to have a different all other use criteria for one space for every 250 square feet, we do meet the 150.
Okay, so, sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Katie. I know exactly where you're going. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, so if they have the 44, just if you just, there's 81 total.
Right.
Right, so if you just run down, they have the 44, and then the other uses as shown in the staff report don't add up to the 81, or are you doing it such that the peak of one use is not coincident with the peak of the other use?
There, there obviously are, there are different peaks. Subway is probably not as busy at like 10 o'clock in the morning as other places might be. And the offices on the second floor of the building.
But that's not what Katie, Katie asked you, when you do the allocation of the spaces to the 81, how are you subtracting out the 44 and allocating the remainder?
So currently, it's occupied by the, the exercise facility. There's a salon, and there's New England Oil's offices and jobbing establishment, and that's, that's where we end up with the, with the 44 parking spaces. And then the subway has five associated with it, and then we have office space on the second floor.
So let's put it differently, Katie.
Which is not as large.
Let's put it differently. On the, they're saying on the second floor, they need eight, 10, 24 of, 24 spaces go to the second floor. Then subway is another five. What did I just tell you? I said 24, 26 spaces. It's four, four, eight, 10, 24 spaces, five. So you're at 29. And then downstairs on the first floor, you have 17 for New England, 21 for Combine, and 10 for the salon.
Yeah, and the, the reason that the salon is greater is because they had more stations, and the salon is based on stations rather than on square footage.
So 38, so 48 spaces is what they currently require downstairs. And they are, and they're saying they would require, I just forgot your number, Mr. Hegney, at the max.
They, the maximum would be the number of employees of nine and 15 stations occupied, so it's 24.
Okay, and so you, they should be all set versus the total number of spaces.
Well, particularly so if he's claiming that 90% of the, of the patients that are coming there are being dropped off.
Yeah, but that's, now remember that the use could change again. And if we've approved, if we've made a mistake in something, then the next guy that comes in can do the same non-conformity and we're stuck. And this goes back also to the problem that although, and I know we're rabbit-holing, but just quickly, medical, walk-in medical is an allowed use in Use Group Four, but we don't have parking for it. And I think we do need to write a parking requirement that would cover the, that would cover walk-in medical. So Katie, does that work if you go to page three of the staff report, is the little parking table?
Yeah, and that's right. That's what I was going off of, right.
So there's 44 spaces.
I think it might behoove you, instead of trying to put it into some sort of square hole or square whatever, that you, that you just know that this is a health center that has specific needs, and any change of use even to another health center needs to come back to the Commission.
Until we have a regulation that covers this.
Yeah, because I mean, we, even if you put this as a medical, it's five per medical, I mean, this obviously is functioning differently. And I don't think that would be appropriate in this instance. So even though, even though if you're finding it to be either the, putting it into office, I think feels strange because it's obviously not an office. It's a health center, and so.
No, we're, I think we have to call it all other, all other uses.
Yes, yeah.
In 6158.
Right, but with a qualifier that any change of use even to another health center has to come back to the Commission.
Okay.
We are providing the parking based on the square footage rather than on the
You're doing the 150, right?
On the use, and I'm doing the 150.
But you know, at the end of the day, we're going to have to change that because it doesn't make any sense that we're doing it like that, and that's our bad, not yours. Okay.
I'm more than happy to encourage, encourage that.
This application is a good, good, how it's viewed, is that it's not working? Because as Mr. Hegney's telling us, he's got 15 beds and nine people. Right, that's only 25 spaces that he actually needs.
No, he's got 12. He's got 12.
No, I'm talking about max-max.
Oh, max-max.
Nine staff, 15 total. That comes out to 25. He's allocated 44, but that means there's 37 left over for the rest of the building.
And the rest of the building, and the rest of the building only needs whatever I just did, 28? Okay.
Yeah, it's a little funny.
No, it's not funny. The rest of the building only needs 28, and they've got 37 left over. What's funny?
It seems that they
See, we do have arguments.
If they don't, they don't need as many as they're, they're allowing. Because people, as Mr. Lowe said, your people get dropped off, that kind of thing, so, but let's move on.
Okay, let's move on. Okay, no other public comment on this application? All right, is anybody object to closing this application at this time? Please raise your hand. All right, this application is now closed. Mr. Secretary, could we have a vote, I mean a motion?
Okay.
And we'll help you, I bet.
This is a final site plan, PLPZ 22 083, 417 West Putnam Avenue for a dialysis center in the existing space. The applicant has, zoning is signed off, Sewer Division has no comments. The applicant has indicated the use with 12 beds per day, with five full-time employees, four part-time employees to open it Monday, Wednesday, Friday, nine to five, expanding to Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday. The applicant should provide a couple of short-term spaces for the drop-off pickup as indicated. And the peak, the man for parking spaces is 24. I believe that's everything that I have here on.
I'm sorry, did you also say that thing about it's, we are approving this as a health center, which has specific needs? And the applicant shall, and this shall return to the Commission for any future change of use?
Nope, but you just did, so that's good, that's good.
Good.
Even, even a change, even to a same health center.
Even to, even to another health center. Alrighty.
Same, same use or same difference, okay.
All right. And then the last thing, did you mention the fit-out? The square footage of the fit-out?
Uh, no, it needs to be confirmed.
And the last thing is that prior to zoning permit, the applicant will verify the square feet of fit-out and confirm and provide evidence that it is consistent with previously approved applications. With that, may I have a second? And Mr. Levy, I don't know how much of the meeting you missed. I think I better let Mr. Baralek, Mr. Baralek, would you?
I didn't, but that's okay.
Oh, you didn't? No, you didn't. Then you go ahead. Okay, I just, you weren't in when I started. Okay. So Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. Yaski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Lowe?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five-nothing, and we go to our next application, which is Church. By the way, it's now the public hearing. We need Mr. Bazili. Hello, Mr. Hasland. Mr. Bazili?
Chair.
Yes, hello, Mr. Bazili. All right, and now we've opened the public hearing. Almost forgot, it's hardly ever the second application. Hello, Mr. Bazili. And I'm not going to make it two minutes tonight because we went too fast, so we're going to do three minutes. We do have 100 people here, over 100 people here, so it, we're going to have a lot of public comment. Okay, for the public who's listening, we will we we will, the, the attorneys for the applicant, the attorney will speak first. He is accompanied by the applicant himself. Then the attorneys for the opposition will speak. And then we will turn to the public for comment after we have queried the attorneys. Those of you who are speaking for a group will have more time. Those of you who are speaking individually will have three minutes, and we will tell you all that at the time. Okay, and with that, Mr. Hasland, if you would kindly begin, this is for Church Sherwood LLC for an application for an 830G at multiple addresses on Church Street and Sherwood Place and Putnam Court. A final site plan and special permit. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the Commission. For the record, Chip Hasland from Johnson Hasland and Hoagman for the applicant. With me tonight is Jim Cabra, who's the Principal of Church Sherwood LLC, the owners of the property. And he's also Principal of Eagle Ventures, which together with SJP Properties, is the development team. Also with me tonight is David Minow of Minow Wasco Architects, Lendy Andrea, who you know, civil engineer, and Chuck Olivam from Stonefield Engineering. uh, civil engineer, and Chuck Oliva from Stonefield Engineering, who did the traffic, uh, work. I also have the privilege to introduce you tonight, uh, my co-counsel, Matt Renelli and Mary Jo Andrews. They're both at the firm of shipment in Goodwin. Uh, Matt has statewide experience as to 8-30G developments. Uh, and the, the application of Connecticut law to those developments, while Mary Jo has extensive experience with the State Historical Preservation Office and Historical Preservation Council, uh, both of which I know you took an interest in. So I invited them to join me, uh, here tonight and, uh, uh, for me to introduce you, uh, to them. Um, also Peter Cabra, uh, there you go, there's Peter. Uh, Peter will be hosting when we go through various exhibits. Um, and we thought we'd just, uh, get into starting, uh, the presentation by orienting everyone as to where the project is and what it entails. And then we can get into some of the nitty-gritty that you raised yesterday in the briefing session, and then I'm sure, uh, some members of the public kind of want to discuss as well. So.
I'm, I'm not finding Matt, miss, uh, I found, oh, Matt Renelli, I see him now.
And Mary Jo Andrews as well.
We have her already.
Okay, good.
Okay, we're all set then.
All right. So Peter, if you can open up the first slide, which is just a rendering, um, of the view that would be facing Church Street, uh, towards the town and country, although kind of catty corner. Um, actually on a single-family house across the street and a, uh, a vacant lot or a lot attached to that single-family house. So, uh, this is property comprised of 11, uh, separate lots initially that have been amalgamated uh, over the years. You can see in that kind of greenish outline, the left-hand corner. These are the properties. You see Church on the left-hand side, Sherwood on the right-hand side. It's about a block away from the post road. And, uh, around the neighborhood, you have, starting with the Town and Country Restaurant, uh, which is part of it. You see right to the, right, uh, to the south of that, that's the Peabody Garage, which everybody I'm sure is pretty familiar with. Across the street from the Peabody Garage is the, uh, Town and Country condominiums. Again, I think you're all familiar with, uh, and then below that is a single-family house, which took the place of three houses that were torn down across the street here. Um, there you go. Uh, to make way for the single-family house a few years ago. You then have, uh, further to the north, the Nantucket condominiums. And then across the street, you have some, uh, office slash residential buildings. And another kind of development, uh, to the north of that, and then Sherwood Green, uh, to the east of that. And then as you head across Sherwood, there's a mix of single-family, two-family, uh, some commercial, some office buildings on the other side of, of Sherwood. And as you continue on from there, uh, again, that's mostly offices all the way down to the gas station. And then across the street, uh, uh, is the Telephone Exchange Building, which is, uh, one lot behind the post road. And then obviously you continue back to the Town and Country Restaurant and Peabody Garage on that, on that corner. Um, what's unique about this property, uh, is perhaps that it's so centrally located, uh, very close to public transportation, of course, in the post road, close to the railroad station, uh, close to such amenities as the YMCA, not so far from the YWCA. You've got Greenwich Hospital close by, Greenwich Library close by, Greenwich Avenue, of course, the Town Hall. Lots of amenities, parks, uh, schools, churches, et cetera, all within close proximity to this development, which makes it ideal as an infill piece as, uh, laid out by the POCD, uh, as the, um, real thrust of where affordable housing should be, uh, in the town of Greenwich. The, um, it's been raised, I, I think that, uh, these, this building is relatively tall compared to other buildings. I think actually there's, somebody even mentioned the fact that there's no buildings over four stories in the town of Greenwich. Uh, well, in fact, within a half a mile of this building, there are several, um, tall buildings, iconic tall buildings that have been here, uh, for many years and I think are generally, uh, liked by the citizens of the town of Greenwich, if not beloved. Um, you started, uh, if you look at it, there's the Harbor View at 40 West Elm Street, which is, uh, Timmercap number one there. Uh, there's the, uh, 58 Lafayette Court, uh, 11 Lafayette Court, 20 Church Street, 25 West Elm Street, 47 Lafayette Place and four Lafayette Court. All these buildings are either seven or six stories high. And the building we're proposing is, uh, seven stories high, uh, which has two levels of parking beneath it. Uh, the Town and Country, which is catty corner across the street, as I pointed out, which is number four, is in fact seven stories tall as well. And I think you may hear from a lot of people that live in that building tonight, uh, from 20 Church Street. If you do the comparison of FAR, uh, if you go over in the column, you will notice that we are well within the mix of what's acceptable FAR for buildings of this size on, uh, lots of this size in the downtown, uh, area of Greenwich. So we're not out of keeping with what's been built in Greenwich in the past historically, although obviously all these buildings were built prior to 1950 when the four-story limitation wasn't stated by the town of Greenwich to, uh, limit, uh, height development. This is, as you indicated, an 8-30G, uh, development. Uh, we will have 30% of the units, uh, set aside as affordable per state statute that, uh, amounts to 58 units in all. The mix will be one, two and three-bedroom, uh, apartments, which is a very healthy mix. So will not be confined to one bedroom only, has been suggested by certain members of the public. But will actually be, as I said, a very, uh, healthy mix of, of different, um, apartment-sized units. Um, I'd like to introduce now David Minow, who is the architect on the project to get a little sense. I'm sorry, Peter, I meant to, yeah, as you go through, go back a bit. This just gives you probably, this is one of the better pictures here. Uh, okay. This can be, uh, various pictures of the buildings I just mentioned. This picture is overlooking 20 Church Street though, to the west. And as you can see in close proximity, not only is there 20 Church, but also 47 Lafayette Place, uh, 15 Lafayette Court, 11 Lafayette Court and four Lafayette Court, all in that list, which I just gave you, indicating the, uh, heights, volume, uh, square footage and number of stories, uh, for each, um, individual site, which are comparable to what we're proposing on this site. Move to the next slide, Pete, please, Peter. So David Minow is going to discuss the process that Minow Wasco went through in developing the site, um, and envision how we could, uh, accommodate both the market rate units and the, um, identical, uh, affordable units on this location and have the least impact on the neighboring streets, uh, visually and, uh, as well as for traffic, et cetera. So I'll leave David to his vision. Uh, David, if you'd join us, please.
Hey, good afternoon. It's good to see all of you. I'm very pleased to present this great new infill project. It's very walkable to, as was mentioned, many of the amenities within town. And it's affordable. It has an affordable component, um, which I think we're all, all excited about. This is an ideal location for an inclusionary multifamily development with a target market which would be leaning toward the empty nester market. And we specifically designed the units and amenities to be attractive to that market. So I, I'd like to go to the next slide and give you a brief description of the improvements. I'm not going to get into a great deal of detail. But as was mentioned earlier, we have worked hard to make this project a low-impact project, but also make it extremely beautiful. And we've got some features to this that really, really support that. What you're looking at is, is what I would call the ground level plan. And we have, uh, two levels of garage. This, this, uh, first level has a level below it. This level was entered off of Church Street, which splits roughly half of our parking, uh, coming in off of Church. And then you'll see on the Sherwood side that we have a ramp going down to the parking in the garage below. Uh, that, that tends to mitigate, um, the flow of traffic throughout the site. We also have a beautiful, what we call a carriageway, which comes in off of Church Street. And it's a colonnaded space with beautiful glass windows, uh, looking into our main lobby spaces. And it reaches a beautiful motor court, a beautiful paved motor court, European infilling at our main entry to the project. So if you were being dropped off here or picked up, let's say by a Uber or a Lyft, or you're coming with a friend uh, to visit someone to pick them up, this would be the place where you would do that. This would also be the place where you, where package delivery would occur on a day-to-day basis. Short-term drop-off for FedEx and UPS and Amazon. From this motor court, we have access to Sherwood through Putnam Court. So you see that the traffic gets spread out both for the residents who would use the garage entries to enter the building and for visitors who would be on this southern edge of the building. Within this ground floor, we have a tremendous number of amenities, beautiful lobby space, leasing center. Uh, we have a mail area, package rooms, which is a big deal today. Uh, we have some lounge space. We have co-working space. And we have two, uh, pedestrian entryways to the building. The one on the left corner would be in access to Church Street. And this, we feel many of the people living in the building would take this entrance, uh, to walk to the post road. The other entry, uh, we do have a pedestrian entry along Sherwood on the other side of the building. So that also gives access to that location. Next to that entry on Sherwood, we have a service lane and we have a very tall service bay there so that, uh, for short-term move-in, traffic, a truck could come and park in that area and gain access to the move-in elevator, which would be directly behind that. We also have our trash termination room to, next to that. So trash would come out through that service area in a very limited way for trash pickup along Sherwood on trash day. That's a scheduled event by building management. So, uh, the trash doesn't sit on the street for hours at a time. It's scheduled. Um, let me move on to the next slide, which should be the lower-level garage. And here, you see a below-grade level, which is entered off of Sherwood. And this give act, gives access to, uh, that lower level. We also have all four of our elevators come down to that level to provide great access to that area. Uh, the next slide, please. So here's where we start to get really exciting in the building with our amenity package. Um, we, we have on this level, which is the first floor above grade. It's our first residential level. And the areas that are indicated there in the light purple color are amenities. People can come up either set of elevators. We have a large, uh, clubroom lounge, which has glass opening on to the courtyard. Uh, we have a private dining area with a wine storage area to the left of that. And that also opens out to an outdoor grilling area. Um, and we have additional lounge space. And then to the upper right purple area, we have our fitness room. Uh, and fitness on-demand studio there. And all this bleeds out to just a beautiful, uh, courtyard, which is bathed in southern light. And I'll show you how that works in a minute. But we have both, uh, passive and active areas out there. We have the swimming pool uh, with lounge chairs, lounge seating around it. We have, uh, more casual seating. We have grilling areas because people can't grill within their unit or on their balcony. So we have a more of a common area to do that. And there are some private terraces along the edge of the residential units at this level. You can also see on the northern edge of the building how we step the building back from the parking level and provide terraces on that for those units that uh, have terraces on top of the garage level. So that gives our neighbors a little bit more breathing room as we step the building back in that dimension. Uh, just to give you some of the numbers to fill in, what Chip was saying about the unit count, we have 192 units. We, 134 of those are market rate of the market rate units. We have 70s. We have 46 one-bedrooms, 61 two-bedrooms and 27 three-bedrooms. And then in the affordable 30% component, we have 58 units, 19 one-bedrooms, 27 two-bedrooms and 12 three-bedroom units. And our parking, uh, we have a total of 288 spaces, which gives us a 1.5 parking space per unit ratio. We have 126 spaces on the ground level off of Church and 153 spaces that are accessed in that lower level off of Sherwood. We have nine, uh, spaces in the motor court. And we have six of those as handicap spaces which are compliant. But one of the exciting things is, and we're looking to the future, is that we're going to pro- provide 20 to 40 EV spaces, electric vehicle charging spaces within the building and wire for more of them as the market, um, moves up, uh, and purchases electric vehicles. Um, and we also have in the basement level of the parking, we have storage for 70 bikes. So we really want to provide people, uh, who have bikes in this community to take advantage of that. Of the, of the amenity spaces that I mentioned, we have 23,000 square feet of indoor residential amenity and lobby space. That's really significant for this number of units. And then we have approximately 7,000, uh, square feet of outdoor courtyard amenity space. Uh, let's move on to the next plan if we can. So here we're, uh, at the third floor plan. And the reason I'm showing you this plan, you see the, the units obviously, uh, as a double-loaded corridor scheme. But the green area, um, of the roof of the amenity space, that becomes a green roof. And we've only made that level, it's only two stories off the ground. So the upper levels of the building have sunlight coming in from the south to bathe that courtyard in sunlight. Uh, next slide. Here we move up to the fourth through sixth levels. And again, uh, you have a double-loaded corridor scheme. And let's move on to the next slide. Here we show the seventh level. And what's significant about the seventh level is that if you look along the, all the outside edges of the building, we step the building back six and a half feet and create private terraces. And especially as you look at the building from Church Street and Sherwood Place, what that does is it really gives you, instead of a seven-story building height, the perception of the cornice now becomes the sixth floor. And I'll show you some renderings that, that show you what that, that looks like. But that step back is very significant. I've used it several times in these types of buildings and it's a very effective tool to reduce mass of the building from the street. Next. And this is our top-level roof plan. And with that goes an 8,000 square foot amenity deck on that level. So the area in brown on the left is our elevators come up and bring you up to a beautiful, uh, landscape deck area where people can come and sit. There will be some fire pits up there that go off in the early evening hours. Those will be, uh, set to have a turn, uh, electronic turn-off. And, uh, on the north side of the roof, we have a, a pickleball court. And again, I mentioned that we're trying to attract the empty nester market. This is a very attractive amenity for them. And that's, uh, in a little landscaped area with some seating on the south side of that. Uh, the rest of the roof is really used for our mechanical equipment. And from an environmental standpoint, it will be a light-colored roof, uh, to reduce the heat island effect of the building. Let's move on to the, uh, exterior renderings. So this is a rendering looking from Church Street. And you see on the lower left, our carriage, um, entrance, our carriageway going back to the motor court. This is a beautiful space with very tall windows into our amenity areas on the first floor. Uh, the, the base of the building, the first two floors is cast stone. And it's, it's a very rich material, but we have movement in the height of that cornice, even between the first and the second level. Our main pedestrian entry is shown there with a beautiful slung canopy and, uh, two-story glass in that load shown in that area. And then, uh, further to the left on Church Street, it's behind a tree from this angle. But we have our vehicular entrance right there where the pointer is. That's where the, uh, Church Street level of the garage is entered. The main body of the building is brick and we've used it in a traditional manner with some precast detail. And then we have a strong cornice line at the top of the sixth level. And here you see the seventh level stepping back so that, um, you very, you read very little of that, read a lighter color in that location, uh, that blends a little bit more with the sky. And this building has a lot of horizontal setback to it. We've got shadow line and step back in several areas. And we've used, uh, a couple of different materials along with a brick in some of those, uh, corner windows here, window areas. Uh, the next rendering, please. So this is a little tighter in shot. So this is a little tighter in shot, an evening shot, showing you the elegance of the main pedestrian entry on the left. And then the carriageway leading back to the motor court. This, I think, is going to really set this project off and make it special. And it keeps really this heavy-duty delivery traffic and Uber pickup. All that is really now taken off the streets, off the two main streets, Church and Sherwood. And it's put internal to the project so that it really is kind to our existing neighbors on both the adjoining streets. Next slide. And here you see what that motor court entry looks like. Our main entry to the building is straight ahead. You see the carriageway coming through from Church Street on the left. And Putnam Court would be to your right, just past those arroba vida bushes there. And you see the low portion of the building above the entry. I mentioned that's two stories with a green roof above. And that's where the sunlight comes into the courtyard beyond. So that all those units in the courtyard have great views and the people using the courtyard are in the sunlight as much as possible. I think that might be it for me, Peter. I just wanted to give you a broad overview of the project. And we're within the zoning height limits of this plan. We're at 82 feet, six inches. And that's measured, of course, by ordinance from the average grade plane to the roof deck of the building, the top roof deck. In terms of just some very brief green design elements, we'll be working on these as we go forward, as we get into the construction drawings and work with our mechanical engineers. But right now, we know we're going to be an Energy Star building. We're going to have automatic movement sensor light fixtures where we can. And that part of that will be in the garage and the common areas. But part of that will be within the dwelling units. Our windows will have low-e glass, will have low-flow water fixtures, easy-to-program thermostats. And as I mentioned, the EV car charging stations within the garage levels. And I think there will be more, we just haven't gotten to that point in the details of the building.
Thank you, David. Does anyone have questions of David before I move on to Lyndee Andrea to talk about the civil a little bit?
Well, you said it was within the zoning limits. I think what I understood you to mean was that if you calculated it using the zoning regulations, it would be 82 feet because obviously this exceeds the height limit. What I think you were saying is to use how you calculate height, it is at 82. Just to clarify.
That's correct. Thank you, Katie.
What level Energy Star score are you shooting for?
Energy Star score, we're going to meet all of the state Energy Star requirements so that we receive the credits for Energy Star. So that means our mechanical equipment in the building and appliances will all be at the highest Energy Star rating.
I guess, so you're not talking about the building as a whole, just the equipment? Because you know...
That's what Energy Star is a state and national program, which evaluates the energy efficiency of the appliances and equipment used within a residential building.
I understand that, but it is also used to evaluate the energy efficiency of the building as a whole. So my question was, are you targeting an Energy Star score for the building as a whole? Or are you just focused on the appliances?
We haven't gotten to that point again, because we haven't done the construction details. We haven't gone through all the insulation, all the rest of the building mechanical, all the other lighting in the building. We haven't done that analysis because we're still at the zoning level right now.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Minow. You mentioned, I think you said that you were leaning toward the empty nester market. Was that in reference to the market rate units or the affordable segment or both?
It would include both. Generally in these buildings, we see two markets. We see a younger professional market, generally childless. And with the affordable units, we see people who are people who work within the town or teachers, firemen, police, support personnel. And the rest of the market we see is an older empty nester market whose children have left home. Many times we see people in towns like Greenwich who have lived in a single-family home, who want to sell that home, buy a second home in Florida, the Carolinas, and keep an apartment in Greenwich where all their roots are, their business, their place of worship, those kinds of things.
No, I understand that the argument for the aging in place and that that is a town-wide goal. But there is also significant demand to provide for our town workers and our teachers, our police, fire personnel, to name a few.
If you would continue, please.
Any other questions of the commission members of Mr. Minow?
Yeah, one final question and maybe it's early, but obviously, you know, pickleball courts are kind of noisy. You're in a, you know, a busy crowded neighborhood. You're also going to have a bar and dining facility up there. Are you planning on sort of shutting down the nighttime activities at some reasonable hour? So people over at Town and Country can get a good night's sleep?
Yes. The pickleball courts will not be lighted. And so that will shut itself down at dusk. And the rest of the limited area on the southern roof of the building, where people would be gathering, would be closed at 10:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Now the question to Mr. Minow, I'll introduce Lyndee Andrea, who's a civil engineer in the project. I'm sure you're all familiar with Len and his firm. And Len's going to just discuss a little bit about the existing conditions and the site development plans as proposed. Len?
Yep, thank you very much. Yes, I'm going to give you basically our design approach to this development. I've selected this slide. This is a direct overhead view of the various properties, all outlined in yellow. And north is pointing up on the page. It's comprised of 11 buildings, extensive areas of asphalt driveways and parking areas. And in the course of preparing our topographic survey and through site inspections, we found only one dry well located right behind number two Putnam Court. And let's sure, Peter, if you can point that out to them, if we number these units or these buildings. And then there was one more just off to, sorry about that. There we go. And then there was one more catch basin that we found right next to 39 Church Street. And that drains out to Church Street into a catch basin on the Westly side. And that's it on the entire site. Church Street itself is about two and a half feet higher than Sherwood. And the drainage pattern for these, for the overall project itself is there's kind of a spine in the middle. And the Easterly properties drain out to Sherwood Place in basically a southeasterly direction. And on the west side, they drain more or less into a southwesterly direction out to Church Street. And then that little handle of land downward, number two Putnam Court is. There's the parking area there that drains into that one single little dry well. The first step in the process was to request a meeting with Commissioner of Public Works, Amy Seepert. She was very accommodating and confirmed for us the design capacity of the sewage treatment plant, which is 11.5 million gallons per day. And also the average daily flow, which is about 7 million gallons per day. After a discussion on the development itself, she suggested that we also set up a meeting with Waste Water Division Manager, Richard Feminella, which we did. He too was very accommodating and also included some of his staff. And we basically described the development, asked if there were any concerns that they were aware of on Church Street or Sherwood or even farther down. And then asked basically, what would they be looking for from our project? Would they want us to maybe use existing laterals, provide new laterals? We know the program in Greenwich is a very, very good program. And with that said, that's where they're looking to eliminate leaky laterals wherever we can. So we knew that we were going to make this an improvement from that sense. So one of the things he did ask us to do at that meeting was to go out and early on, do a video inspection of each lateral serving each of the buildings. And then that video record would be given to the sewer department. They would review it. And then they would make recommendations as to what they would like us to do with the laterals that we're either going to be using or not going to be using. So next step is to then move on with our design phase, which was first to prepare a comprehensive topographic survey, which we did of all the properties. And we extended that out to the opposite curb line of each roadway. So that would be to the Easterly side of Sherwood Place and to the Westly side of Church Street. We included, of course, all the buried utilities onsite. And we did that by video tracing all these utilities such as gas and water. And that was done by the same company that was retained to do all the video inspections of all the laterals. So we were able to map all those. At the same time, the town of Greenwich had a very good set of plans for Church and Sherwood in that these were, if some of you may remember, there was a major drainage improvement project on these streets that has been put into place.
Okay, Mr. DeAndrea.
Just moving on a little bit more.
That was just a long, a long, deep breath. We don't usually, we usually jump in and interrupt people. Go ahead, Mr. DeAndrea.
I have my notes, but I'm talking at will. So now getting down to our sewer. Based on our review of the sewer videos, we decided that none of them were in very good shape. We also found two sump pumps that were connected into the sanitary sewer. And so we know, and we have mentioned that those are going to be eliminated. But we looked at this and said, in our opinion, and we'll see what the sewer department says when they issue their comments, none of these laterals were worth saving or using. So before I get on to the next slide, what we will be doing or what we've recommended is that each of the existing sanitary sewer laterals will be discontinued. They will be discontinued at the collector in the street. So that all that infiltration that may be occurring now is going to be eliminated. We didn't, now you can go, let's go to the site plan, Peter, if you may. Yep, there you go, that's fine. So with all the units that were being proposed, we did our sanitary sewer connection report. And that was to determine what the increase would be from this development. And what it amounts to is about a 0.73% increase to the average daily flow of about 7 million gallons per day that the sewage treatment plant treats. That relates to 0.05 plus or minus million gallons per day net increase. So the benefit of this project now is we do have an increase, but we're going to be taking out a lot of what would be considered groundwater infiltration. And once we do receive sewer department comments, if any, we will certainly respond to those. Next is we looked at drainage. And the development will only have a slight increase of less than 5,000 square feet. The, under existing conditions, the site coverage of impervious is over 70,000 square feet. And again, the existing site discharge is essentially totally untreated. There's a lot of driveways, a lot of parked cars. I've mentioned the one dry well, the one catch basin. So based on the drainage manual, we have no choice but to do a far better job than what the existing conditions are today. How did we do that? Our drainage management plan is based on a number of things that will not adversely impact adjacent properties, not adversely impact local drainage patterns, and also protect the waters of Long Island Sound. And all in accordance with the Greenwich Drainage Manual, our drainage management design will treat the water quality volume and provide sufficient total suspended solids removal through a combination of permeable pavers. And that area would be directly below where the drive court is. Yep. And also for any of the driveways that are entering into the garages, those all have permeable pavers. Below that area of the drive court is going to be a subsurface gravel filter, all part of the combination of permeable pavement. We have also that same area, groundwater recharge units. There'll be vegetated areas that you can see around the perimeter and that were also discussed on the upper levels, especially on the roof. Those add actually a lot more than we are able to take credit for, but they're a great amenity to add. The runoff volume for the development will be reduced, not just for the required one-year rainstorm event, but for all storms through a 50-year event. By use of permeable paper drainage, excuse me, driveways and subsurface infiltration systems, we exceed the required groundwater recharge volume requirements. And with the proposed drainage management plan, we will reduce the peak stormwater flow rates as compared to existing conditions for all storms through the 100-year event. And that's all measured at our overall point of concern, which is basically where the drainage system for Sherwood Place and Church Street meet in East Putnam Avenue. And all this is outlined in our submitted drainage summary report, sanitary sewer connection summary report, and the full site plan set of land surveys and plans. Our design again is achievable because of the combination of treatments and controls that we are proposing and the very well-drained gravel soils below the entire group of properties. We confirm this by boring logs that were done by an outside contractor. We did receive DPW engineering comments this past Friday. We view them as minor. And we intend to meet with staff to discuss each comment and amend our plans accordingly if necessary. So with a long presentation ahead, that concludes my presentation and available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea.
Any questions that the commissioners have of Mr. DeAndrea?
Not at the time.
Okay. We have received departmental comments from fire, traffic, conservation, tree ward.
Could you take down the presentation? Thank you. So, Mr. Haslam, I believe you listened to our briefing yesterday?
I did.
Okay, so our plan on your application, and of course, subject to your input, was to discuss large issues now. The biggest issues that would affect this development and to get those worked and to move on to some of our second-tier questions, either later on this evening or at a separate meeting. As you know, we intend to keep this open because we've had intervenor status filed and that has been requested of us. So we believe we have the time to work issues and we would like to focus on the larger questions. I do want to make a correction to the person who presented. I have to tell you that my email filled up, my computer was binging. Somebody said that we could house teachers in an 830G building in town. In fact, one of the great challenges that we have in town is that many of our municipal workers that, who do not live here and a very high percentage do not live here, make too much to qualify for affordable housing. In fact, if you want to join our affordable housing plan group later in the week, we have a map that shows you that many very high-earning teachers and town employees are outside of town for whatever reasons they choose. It is not as much of an issue. So when you talk about being able to house our teachers and town workers in an 830G, in fact, they would not qualify. That's why we have the moderate income housing and the inclusionary zoning regulation. So I just want to make that clear, that we are, this does not accommodate workforce housing at this time and that we are not seeing there, you're not making what Sarah Bronin of Desegregate Connecticut so well-called it, the missing middle housing. And her point was that Connecticut to develop needs that. And I thought it was an excellent point, always agreed with her on that. So what I'd like to do, if you don't object, is get to the big issues on the table. as opposed to some of the smaller topics. Are you amenable to that?
Yes, I just want to say that I do have um Chuck Olivote tonight, who is our traffic engineer. If you have any questions this evening of him, but other than that.
We have many questions for the traffic engineer, but we think that they are subsidiary to a design for the building, to you answering the key questions on the building, its layout, its, its siting. And then um you've got some legal questions on the easements and um the accesses to the building. Those are the ones we'd like to work on. Yes, we definitely would like to talk traffic. I need someone to walk me through that traffic study very carefully, for sure. Um, would you be amenable to going to the key things? And the first one that I've raised with you from the very moment you came in with the pre-app, the commission right away said to you that this is a National Register Historic District and that as such, it rises to an importance that needs to be considered. Now we have intervenors on that basis, but we've been saying that to you from the beginning. Before we start asking you about it, I'd like to make one thing very, very clear. The commission has supported, as you point out, more affordable housing and we are not discouraging you from building affordable housing. What we're saying is that that has to be balanced with the fact that this is a National Register Historic District. And that is also very, very important to a society to protect its heritage. We'd have competing needs here. So with that, could we turn to the discussion of the National Register?
Yes, and again, that's why I asked Matt Minelli and Mary Jo Andrews to join us tonight as well. Because I think you were in part asking, what was the relationship of the review that's uh being undertaken now by the commission under eight dash thirty G with the review that's now being undertaken by the state uh of Connecticut? I believe in response to petition brought by uh the Greenwich Preservation Network. Uh, have those two things uh.
It's not only, it's not only the Greenwich Preservation Network. I believe you've had intervenor Katie, correct me, two other groups have now filed intervenor.
I think we have four interveners in total at this point.
And they're all on the same basis, Mr. Hasland. So.
Yes, I know, but I think the Greenwich Preservation Network was the one that initiated, that got the state initially involved. And since then, we've had some others add on. That was my only comment, Madam Chair.
Okay. So you now know you have four, Katie. I'm think, okay, that have filed for intervene, that have filed for intervenor status on this topic that we have raised with you. Let's get it on the table. Let's talk about it and let's see if we can find some resolution for it. Uh, we are not opposing affordable housing. We are saying this is National Register and we would like to figure out a way of preserving the heritage of our community.
Well, ultimately, I think it's going to come down to the commissions to decide. And you do, you have to weigh whether there's some health or safety issue or other issue of public importance that outweighs the need for affordable housing. That's for you, the plans under commission to make.
That's, well, let me put it to you differently, Mr. Hasland. I agree with you. We have our other matters that the commission may legally consider is the last part of that sentence. It's health, safety, or other matters that the commission may legally consider and their relation to the need for affordable housing. Now, what I would say to you, Mr. Hasland, and what we have been saying to you at every meeting that we, it, when we've been talking about it is we are looking for a way to balance the two sets of priorities. How can we make this work? How can we make the eight thirty G application work in the context of a National Register Historic District as such as you're working in? We don't, I, I'm, I keep getting quoted for saying this. I'm sorry, the baby with the bathwater. But we want to do both and we want to, we see the two priorities. Both are considered important by the state and both fall within our prerogative. Can we discuss that now?
Yes, and again, that's why I asked Mary Jo and Matthew to uh join us tonight because they both uh have uh substantial experience in dealing with these two competing issues. On the one hand, preservation, and on the other hand, affordable housing, which are of interest to the state. And also with regard to what the purviews are of the various agencies and commissions and standards, et cetera. So I've asked them to come tonight and help us all better understand that. And uh, so with that in mind, I think first, if we start with Mary Jo to explain the process with the state um and uh what, what the uh review is right now, uh, what the situation is right now and how that uh complements or parallels um or intertwines with the review by the commission.
Great. I, I think the simplest thing to do would be what we've asked you from day one is for you to make, it for you to consider how you might meet these two goals. How, is there what you could do? But you've continued along the road of the original proposal without addressing this concern that we've repeatedly raised. And that, that is a question for me as well. Um, should I ask, should I call on Ms. Andrews?
Yes, if you would, please.
Okay, ma'am, um, I, if you would, go ahead.
Sure. Um, just for the record, I'm Mary Jo Andrews. I'm a lawyer at Chipman and Goodwin in Hartford. And I also represent Sherwood LLC. Um, my primary role tonight, as I see it, is to clarify the process that is happening now on a parallel track with the zoning process, uh, which is the eight, uh, the twenty-two A nineteen A path. Um, and before I get into that, um, first I would like to just point out that in, there's a lot of um misunderstanding about twenty-two A nineteen A. Um, it's a short statute, but it actually is pretty complicated in how it plays out. Uh, and I saw some of um that uh in yesterday's briefing where some comments were made that seem to imply that um twenty-two A nineteen A prevents the demolition of property that is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. When, in fact, we need to clarify that when twenty-two A nineteen A is invoked, it only prevents, and I quote, "the unreasonable" destruction, unquote, of properties listed on the National Register and only prevents demolition if a court finds the particular demolition to be unreasonable in the circumstances. So that's um a distinction uh that I want to make. Twenty-two A nineteen A does not in and of itself prevent the demolition of properties that are on the National Register of Historic Places. If that were the case, um, we count about eighteen uh properties that were contributing properties on the National Register in this particular National Register Historic District that have been demolished in the twenty-two years since the district was created and replaced by uh luxury housing. So if twenty-two A nineteen A prevented the demolition of properties on the National Register, then those properties would not have been allowed to be demolished. But in fact, no one um opposed their demolition or invoked twenty-two A nineteen A. So um now we'll get into the steps that we're going through right now with the state. Let's see, um, first, basically, um, the opponents uh of the demolition of these seven structures notified Preservation Connecticut, uh Historic Preservation Organization of their opposition. And Preservation Connecticut then went to the State Historic Preservation Office, or SHIPO, and um notified SHIPO of the community opposition. SHIPO then added the project to the March twenty-fifth agenda of the State Historic Preservation Review Board. And at its meeting, the review board uh listened to um our presentation and uh listened to uh others speak. And then what they did was no more than confirm what has been the case since the historic district was created in the year 2000. And that is that the seven subject structures are contributing structures on the National Register. That's something that um we all already knew their only action was to confirm that. So they didn't change the status quo at all. Uh, we understand that the next step that SHIPO will take is to put uh this project on the agenda of the uh Historic Preservation Council, which is a different body. Uh, and uh, they will, um, they have not uh placed the project on uh any particular agenda yet. Um, but it, we understand that it will be on a future agenda. The Historic Preservation Council will also hear presentations from uh, from us, presentations from those who oppose the demolition of the uh, the seven structures. And they will then vote on whether to refer this project to the Connecticut Office of the Attorney General. And they will request that the Attorney General's office commence an action under twenty-two A nineteen A. Uh, if the Historic Preservation Council so votes, then the request will be referred to the Office of Attorney Gen- the Attorney General. The Attorney General is not obligated to bring a twenty-two A nineteen A action just because the Historic Preservation Council has requested it to do so. That is a decision, a determination up to the sole discretion of the Attorney General. Uh, if the Attorney General decides to bring a twenty-two A nineteen A action, then it will do so. And the timing of bringing uh inaction may be sooner or later depending on the status of the project. Uh, here, the zoning application for the project has not been approved. It's in the early stages and no demolition permit has been applied for. So the demolition of the subject structures is neither assured nor imminent. This will likely affect the Attorney General's timing on commencing an action if it decides to do so. Um, this case will then go to um Superior Court if the Attorney General decides to take it there, where the judge will hear testimony and make a determination as to whether the demolition of the subject properties is unreasonable given the circumstances as the statute requires. It's not just a question of whether properties are in a National Register District and whether they are proposed to be demolished. It's whether that dema- uh, that demolition in consideration of all the circumstances is reasonable. So following this Superior Court ruling, either party can bring an appeal to a higher court, after which there could even be a request to the Connecticut Supreme Court to hear the case. And only after the case has played out in the court could there be a twenty-two A nineteen A final ruling enjoining the demolition of the subject properties. But again, that would happen only if the court were to find that the demolition of these particular buildings is unreasonable in the context of bringing affordable housing back to the fourth ward. So you can see there are many steps and many decision makers and decision points along the way with twenty-two A nineteen A uh and multiple ifs along the way. Uh, truly, the outcome is speculative at best. Uh, and uh, as to, someone mentioned, uh, what role the zoning commission would have in a twenty-two A nineteen A process. Um, they have no decision-making role under twenty-two A nineteen A, nor does the town's Historic District Commission have any decision-making role under twenty-two A nineteen A. It's uh purely uh up to the, the state uh and the courts. Um, although um certainly the the, it, twenty-two A nineteen A is a private right of action. So anyone could bring an action under twenty-two A nineteen A. But the decision-makers are um with uh, you know, with the court, with the court ultimately, but with the state, if the opponents to the demolition, as they did here, chose the route of going through the state process to try to get the Attorney General to bring the case rather than bringing the case themselves. So the main issue with twenty-two A nineteen A uh is whether the demolition is unreasonable in its context. Uh, we posit that the demolition would in fact be reasonable under these circumstances. Uh, the only criterion under which the National Register District, this National Register District was created, was for its social history as a, and I quote, um, "the most visible moderate-income neighborhood in a town otherwise characterized by affluence of national renown," unquote. And what I'm quoting from is the first of two sentences in a section of the National Register Nomination Form, which is the main historical document um that goes along with this National Register District. It's the document that is approved by the National Park Service um in creating this as a, a historic district. And this statement of certif- significance for this National Register District only has two sentences. One of the sentences I just quoted, the second and only other sentence speaks of the ethnic diversity that so often characterizes a moderate-income neighborhood. So those are the keys. They are the foundation on which this National Register Historic District was built. It's the social history. There is no mention in the statement of significance of architecture.
I, I see, ma'am. So what you're saying is what you, I believe where you're going, and I just want to clarify this, that we should tear down old buildings that were deemed to have social significance because now we can put different social significance on the same site. Is that your argument here?
Absolutely not.
I, you might want to clarify that for me then.
What I'm saying is that the criteria, what's important about this National Register Historic District is its social history. So when we're looking at the importance of these structures, we're not looking at the architectural significance of these structures. They tend to be, uh, the, the vast majority are um what are called vernacular buildings. They're, they don't have any particular um uh historic um architectural designation. Um, and again, there's no, there's no mention of architecture.
So ma'am, ma'am, if I could, if I could give you an example of what I believe you're saying to make sure that I have captured it. Uh, you're saying that, for example, the Mark Twain House or something like that. Or even Abraham Lincoln's cabin, if we, something like that. Those buildings would have had no architectural merit at the time and they would have been submitted as historically important because of who lived there. Now we cherish what the, what that meant and we've saved those old structures. But you're saying if we got a different soon-to-be-president or a different famous writer of modern times, we could tear down those old structures and just go ahead and let those new famous people live there because it's the same significance because the structures themselves weren't important. We've saved Mark Twain's house, but only because it was Mark Twain's house, not because it was architecturally significant. So we could tear that down, is what you're saying. Isn't that kind of the point?
Absolutely not.
Okay, well, let's try again because I'm still not following you.
Let me address your point. First, I would strongly disagree that Mark Twain's house is not
Pick an example.
Was built, been historically significant and Abraham. And Abraham Lincoln's cabin, I'm sure, is an example of a log cabin that just doesn't exist anymore.
But back then they did ma'am, and it's the same thing. When, the point is what you are dismissing today as not being historically significant structure because at the time it wasn't deemed that, was made a historical structure because of who lived there. That's my point to you. But now we cherish those buildings and we say people live there and because of who lived there, we cherish those buildings. And they are an example of the architecture of the time. We say that now. But at the time they were surely, I'm, maybe those are bad examples I'm giving you. But they would certainly have been common ordinary buildings and you and I could probably come up with many of them. So the question is if you preserve something that housed something of sociologic significance a hundred years ago, why would you want to tear it down now? Just be, and on the claim that it can serve the same purpose. I'm just not following your argument is I, uh, I, I know you feel very strongly about it and I'm not saying, and I don't think there's a point in us arguing about it because I'm just not coming around to what you're presenting.
Fine, that's fine. Um, let me um, say, I believe there are, there actually and can be two ways to look at the historical architecture. Um, one way is to look at it um, through um, the lens of it being a, a particular example such as um, a log cabin that doesn't exist very much anymore. Uh, another way to look at it is a um, a particularly fine example of um, architecture that's associated with a particular person such as the Mark Twain house. But there's also, I mean, there's, there's no, um, there's no prohibition from the national register standpoint on destroying buildings that are in national register historic districts. Um, that is only a tool that Connecticut has put in place under twenty-two A nineteen A. And what we are saying is that it is not unreasonable to take seven vernacular buildings. Well, actually two of them, one is Second Empire and one is Italianate. Um, but the rest are vernacular and um, demolish those buildings for the sake of creating the type of of district, the type of neighborhood that this district that we, we wouldn't even have this district if it weren't for uh, the fact that um, it was for um, lower income and moderate income people. So we wouldn't even have a historic district if it weren't for that. And what we're saying is that it is reasonable to take down seven of a hundred and sixty examples of that. And these seven buildings are in fact on the edge of the district, surrounded for the most part by buildings that are not contributing buildings to the national register and to make that balance, to bring back to the district the uh, characteristics of the district for which it was created in the first place.
Uh, Mrs. Anderson, uh, I have, I have the
Her name is Andrew.
Andrew, excuse me, excuse me.
No problem.
I'm looking at the section eight, page one of the continuation sheet. Uh, I think this is the paragraph you were quoting. Uh, the fourth ward historic district is of local historical significance. Being, it comprises the oldest major urban settlement in the town of Greenwich. Is that what we're looking at? That's what you're quoting from.
It should be, um, I don't have it in front of me, but it would be called statement of certificate significance and it just has two sentences.
Okay, so the second part of that sentence, oldest major urban settlement of the, yeah, in the town of Greenwich that developed as the most visible moderate income neighborhood in a town otherwise charac- characterized by affluence of a national renown. I believe that's the sentence that you had quoted.
Yes.
Okay, I, I think actually that what's most important to me here as I read this is as the most visible moderate income neighborhood. Uh, you were saying that it's a, a, a social history. Uh, you know, it seems to me that the statement of significance is talking about a visible history as well. It goes on to say that it's also historically significant as a primary nucleus of the town's Irish population, including the top side of the town's first Roman Catholic church, which would be architecture. And is one of the town's most important African-American enclaves containing uh, the second of two African-American churches established in Greenwich, the architecture again. Uh, this same piece of paper, the same application actually lists all of the buildings as well. Uh, so I'm kind of at a loss here as to understand why this national district is just a social area when we're talking and it's listing all of the buildings. And its statement of significance talks about the visual uh, moderate income neighborhood.
Right, right.
Okay, uh, and I think, I think that's what we're kind of really looking at here is that, and I think this may be a question for Mr. uh, Hasland to, uh, to, to think about.
Well, Mr. Mack, I'd say that the Catholic Church no longer exists, it's long departed, so that clearly is not contributing architecturally. And I think you're gonna hear from the pastors of both the Bethel AMU Church and the Baptist Church with regard to their churches and their, their congregation, but I'll save that for another, another day.
Again, we have gotten the letters, we have gotten letters from, I, I know I've seen the letters from the pastors. Um, I think there's three pastors we have speaking tonight. But again, it, I believe, Mr. Hasland, that you are missing repeatedly the question we are really asking you. Couldn't you have done an application that respected the historic district? And still have figured out how to do some below-market housing? That's the question that we have asked you from the beginning. We are not in an either-or situation. We have asked you repeatedly, what could you do to make this work within the historic district? How could you do that? We see it. We see the significance of this district and how could you have done that? And you are sidestepping it by saying, oh, the district's not important. Okay.
No, 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 I didn't say that. To not say the district was not important. What I'm saying is
It's only sociologically important. The structures aren't important. Excuse me. But the point here is we are not asking you for either or. We're asking you, how could we make the two goals work together? What would it take for you to give us an application that provides below-market housing and respects the historic district and preserves these buildings? That's what we've been asking you from back, way back in the pre-app when you weren't supposed to have plans yet and we said, that was your opportunity, please look at your plans and give us something that meets both goals. You're positioning us in an either or and that's just not where we want to be. What we're trying to find is why you've gone into this position from which you're not moving.
Well, again, I think one of the reasons why eight dash thirty G hasn't worked in this community and actually in Fairfield County for the past thirty-some odd years is the fact that there is no way that a developer, private developer without public funds could afford to build these affordable thirty percent set aside affordable under the then current market. It just so happens to be now that a private developer can afford to build these kinds of developments, uh, because market rents ironically are so high that it, it creates a position where you can create finally affordable units, which is why you're seeing these applications in the first place. But you have to do so at a certain intensity to make it work. Otherwise, it just doesn't work financially. That's the reason. And to try to work around these
Mr. Hasland, Mr. Hasland, hold on a second. Mr. Barilak would like to ask you something.
Apologize, Mr. Hasland. Do you need to obliterate the entire block area that you're doing? Wipe out every historic building there and go, go lot line to lot line. That's the question.
I think if you look at the site, it's very difficult not to do that unless you are to move the buildings somehow, somewhere. And whether it be on this site or not, um, I can't speak to, I'm not an architect, I'm just a lawyer. Um, I'm not an engineer either, but uh, I think that there's opportunity if anyone cares to um, buy these houses or one of those houses or all of them for a dollar to move them elsewhere within the district or elsewhere within the town, we're certainly open to that suggestion. But other than that, my understanding is from the people that are in the development business here, it does not make financial sense to maintain these buildings, particularly when you really look at, I'm sorry, when you look at these individual buildings, there's nothing
Oh, so I would not, okay, so you don't like the buildings and you don't respect the buildings? And that's really what it keeps coming down to. Do you think
I don't think there's anything particularly unique about these buildings. I think that some of the buildings in this
There was anything unique about a lot. I don't think there was anything
Are beautiful. A lot really well maintained them and I think it's really, uh,
Mr. Hasland.
Mr. Hasland, let me, can I just say something? You, you do seem to be dismissing consideration of Ms. Alvin's uh, point and her question. And Ms. Andrews, I, I have a question for you. Do you not believe that one or more physical structures contribute to the definition of the social nature of a historic registered district?
I believe that there are a hundred and sixty contributing structures in this historic district and these seven are on the edge. So that if these seven could be replaced by the historical purpose of the district,
Well, how, how do you, how do you go about defining that they're on the edge? Isn't that a matter of opinion? Are you saying physically they're on the edge of the
Physically, they're physically located.
Sixty are not part of this application.
Oh, okay, so, so
But they are physically on
Wait, 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 okay, wait. Everybody cool, everybody take a deep breath. One person at a time, Mr. Low, will you finish? And then Ms. Andrews, would you let him finish?
Are you saying that it's okay to just nibble around the edges because it's not going into the, the heart of the district?
I would say that it does make a difference because if you take buildings from the edge of the district, from the periphery, buildings that are surrounded for the most part by buildings that are not historic, then you're not interrupting the cohesion of the rest of this very large historic district. And again, what I'm talking about is a balance, a balance between historic preservation and um, affordable housing. And I'm just trying to look at it, it that way. And, and I'd also like to um, address um, something that Mr. McCry, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
All right, you can take turns doing that.
Um, but um, i- in uh, the national register nomination form that you were looking at, there is a page that has criteria under which this particular historic district was um, created. And uh, there's a criteria that talks about it's associated with a master architect or uh, it's a particular example of architecture or it has archaeological value and can uh, uh, inform our understanding of prehistory. Well, the first of those criteria, criteria A is the social history criteria. And that's the only box that was checked for this particular national register.
I, I, I understand that. You, you, you were very clear in presenting those points, but I, I feel as if you're drifting now uh, from answering my, my basic question. And I, as I understand it, you feel it's okay to nibble around the edges, whether it's, you know, uh, not to drag in some sort of greater significant argument, but whether it's a little bit of Crimea today and then Eastern Ukraine tomorrow. After, after we nibble it and get rid of these, these structures, then there's a new boundary that would be open to uh, compromise.
Well, I don't like your example and I find that offensive. But um, what I'm saying is that in the balance of whether it is unreasonable to take down um, a building on the national register, that yes, I think that balance can include taking down a few buildings that are on the edge of the district so that it won't interrupt the cohesion of what is a district that will still have um, dozens and dozens of buildings um, in it. So that the, what you love in Greenwich about this district will still be there. There'll just be seven out of a hundred and fifty that are not there.
So I would, I, I would submit, I think there are a lot of people, uh, and many of them, or some of them are on this call that would argue vociferously against that premise. That it's okay to just, we'll just take a few here and uh, clip off a few there and everything. And the, and the, and the basic heart of it will, will remain. Because this district is defined as a whole. It's not defined as the, the inter- interior heart. It's the whole, it's the whole district. So when you begin compromising a part of it, you are compromising the whole district.
Well, as I, I just want to remind you that since the district was created twenty-two years ago, eighteen contributing buildings, that's almost three times the number that we're proposing to take down have been demolished without opposition to put up luxury housing.
There, there's opposition today, ma'am, and, and
I'm just pointing out the history.
Have a right.
Uh, Mrs., Mrs. Andrews.
But the fact that they did it, they did it uh, in the past, doesn't mean that it's right to do it now.
Exactly.
Right, Peter.
We also have several historic overlays that we've granted in the last twenty years also to protect both
Ms. Andrews, I'm looking at that section, uh, section number eight, the statement of significance. I want to make sure I've got this correct. Uh, it says, uh, a statement A is property is associated with events that have made significant contribution to the broad patterns of our history. Is that, that the correct section I should be looking at?
Uh, I'm so sorry I don't have it in front of me, but it's, it's, it's labeled clearly statement of significance. Not anything else, statement of significance.
That's exactly what I'm looking at. So then, the property is associated with events that have made significant contribution to the broad patterns of our history. To me, that seems like everything that happened there, including the building of these buildings is, is contrib- contributing to the broad patterns of our history. Now, uh, one other thing I'd like to uh, uh, state here is that, yes, eighteen contributing buildings have been torn down. And eighteen new buildings have been uh, constructed. But those eighteen buildings are residential in nature, not seven stories of uh, high-rise apartment build, apartment units. Uh, so I think actually understanding what's, what's been torn down and what's being built has to be considered. And I think actually understanding, are we, are we tearing down buildings that actually contribute to the success of what's being proposed? Why, why is this a good thing to build in Greenwich? Is it because of the fabric and the, and the historical significance of Greenwich itself? You know, i- is, is that why it would be a good thing here? And I think that's maybe something that Mr. Hasland should talk to uh, his clients in general about because it seems that we're saying, I'd like to preserve the, the historic nature of our town. And we should do it in a different way. And I think that's what Ms. uh, the chairwoman is trying to say, yes, we should be looking at preserving the history of our town because that's what actually makes any project successful. Um, and it's got to be looked at in a different way to make that happen. And I'm not too sure if we're really getting there.
I think it has to be financially viable if I didn't make that clear.
Mr. Hasland, Mr. Hasland, I don't believe anymore that I can actually speak about financial viability. Okay, really, that's not my job. My job is to look at a project and say, is this good for the town? And I'm not looking at, and like I've always said, is it good for the town today, tomorrow, fifty years, forty years from now?
But I'd like to support you, Mr. Mr. McRae, in something. When we do an eight thirty G, we can do health, safety uh, or other considerations that are within our authority. As Mr. Hasland well knows, financial issues are not within the authority of a planning and zoning commission. What we are saying to you regardless is, is there a modification to this proposal that would save the historic buildings and allow you to go forward? But it is not our job or our authority legally to analyze your financial situation.
No, I understand. I think Mr. Mr. Vanelle can come in on that. Ultimately, the court may look at that very issue. Is, is it, in the context of eight dash thirty G, is it financially viable for the, the project to be modified such that it can go forward? Both addressing whatever issues the commission has as well as allowing for affordable housing. So I did mean to imply that I should have you guys venture down an area that you should be venturing down. But it is part of the ultimate discussion that a court would have in a situation like this. I, I do want to say, again, we're open to the idea of having these buildings moved, relocated.
Mr. Hasland, just for the record, because it's the third time you've mentioned moving the buildings. Mr. Haslam, just for the record, because it's the third time you've mentioned moving the buildings, I believe, we have a letter from the Historic District Commission, I'm sure you've been copied on it, that says it's extremely dangerous to move these buildings and they strongly recommend against it. So we would weigh that in our consideration of your suggestion of moving the buildings.
The other angle, the other angle is that's.
Sorry. Okay. No, you're still echoing. Try that? No, we can't. You're still echoing. Okay.
I just, maybe we're waiting for Salivi to reconnect. I do want to make clear though, and this is not in any way meant to be rude or inconsiderate of the commission's concerns in this regard. Ultimately, you will have to weigh whether or not there are issues which outweigh the need for affordable housing and you will do so, I'm sure, in a principled fashion. I have no doubt of that. I will let's say though, that there was questions asked yesterday about what our plan B was. This is the only plan we have before the commission and that we foresee having before the commission with regard to this particular project. I just want to be clear in that again, because it was raised several times yesterday. What's our plan B? This is the plan that the development team wants to go forward with.
Well, Mr. Haslam, we, we understand that. And I think what we're asking is, have you, have you thought about, have you considered any other options? Have you considered a way to, to incorporate our concerns and the town's concerns about this district into a potential project that would be viable for this developer and it would achieve the goal of creating more affordable housing?
That's not my call to make, but clearly my clients are, you know, are listening tonight and you know, it's always something to take into consideration in respect to the commission's concerns.
Because it's a little bit, it's frankly, it's a little bit like saying, I'm sorry, take it or leave it. This is, this is all we've got.
No, I didn't mean, it's only being responsive to yesterday who said, well, what's their plan B? We need to know what their plan B is. And I just want to make it clear, at the moment, we do not have a plan B. I think there was a sense that we were holding something back. We are not. This is what we have before the board.
But we've asked you, we've asked you for plan B so many times now. We keep saying, any other ideas, something else? And the whole reason we have the pre-app, and this is the most disappointing thing about this application. The whole reason we have the pre-app is that without having spent any money on plans, you can come talk to us about different ways of approaching this before you're committed and have spent a huge amount of upfront money. That's why we have it. To facilitate just this kind of application so people don't have to spend money ahead of time. And I believe, Mr. Haslam, if, that you supported that. Now, I don't know if we're gonna get.
Generally, it's wonderful.
Yeah, I, but you understand that that's we're trying to save the applicant's money. Come to us without a design. Don't lock into a design at the pre-app. Now, the next question for, for you all is, I think you're seeing that we very, I think everyone in, on, on the commission has articulated, maybe Mr. Wells hasn't yet, or Mr. Yesky, but everybody else has articulated a desire to protect the historic district. Your next big elephant in the room question is this issue of the easements and access and whether or not it can be resolved. Because again, we don't know if the building, I'm gonna let, Katie, you look like you're ready to say something.
Before you change topics, may I just ask a question on the previous topic? So just a little confused because you, you've said that this is the plan, no desire to change the plan at this point. But from what I've understood from SHPO, what, that's the process that has been invoked with, with going to SHPO and then the Preservation Council and potentially the AG's office. And at the end of the day, they're not there to say yes or no. They're there to develop a compromise. So you're going to be asked this question as to how you're going to deal with this. And presumably then your answer will be, we're just gonna, we want to demolish. There is no, there is no plan B. I just want to make sure that that's what you're planning to go through this entire process with. The reason that's a relevant question is I wasn't sure, Ms. Andrews, where you were going with the relationship between planning and zoning and this other track, simply because the commission has a statutory timeline that has to be met, which doesn't appear to be conducive to going down this other track. In other words, who's first, chicken or egg? And if it's the court that's going to determine whether or not this is unreasonable, shouldn't you find that out first? Or do you wait for the commission to determine whether or not in their findings, they find this is acceptable or not acceptable, and then you take their decision and you go to the court? So I just want to understand if, if that's what you're asking. I want to understand your, your process, the way you see it, which is get the, get the commission's findings. I'm basing this on, on, Matt, you're nodding your head. Get the commission's findings and then take that. And if they, you know, and then take that to the AG and you will either support your argument or not. And then the court from there, is that where, where you're going with this?
Well, I, I, if I could, Chip, if I could. Katie, thank you for the question and Madam Chair and members. For the record, my name is Matt Renelli from Shipman and Goodwin on behalf of the applicant. And we thank you for the opportunity to discuss these issues. We know that they're important issues, both from the affordable housing point of view, which, you know, there's an acute need for in Greenwich, I don't need to tell you. And from your interest in the historic preservation angle. And Katie, thank you for the sort of leading question of, if I could, how do, how do these two statutes and these two processes interreact? And what's the interplay between them? And how do we plan to navigate that? So I will just, I'll, 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 I'll start with the conclusion to take the suspense out of it. It doesn't change your job. The existence of a 22A 19 intervention petition or four of them in this case, or the existence of this proceeding under 22A 19A in front of the State Preservation Board, doesn't change the legal analysis for, or standard that a commission is obligated to apply to an 830G application under the Affordable Housing Appeals Act, we otherwise know as 830G. That, that's the conclusion. Let me just back up and, and if I may, and sort of explain the interplay. So, you know, the, without, without going into too much detail, you know, these are not common fare at most commissions. I know you've had a few of them recently, but I also listened to the briefing and there was some talk about getting a workshop together before you got this number of applications. And, and that's because you, not unlike other commissions, you are accustomed to applying the traditional zoning standard. Where you apply your regulations and there's a traditional standard of review, et cetera. And that's not the case in 830G.
Sorry, Mr. Renelli, you would be surprised. We do, we are experienced in this. We do understand the statute. And we do understand that the burden of proof is on the municipality. Under an 830G, we are very clear where the burden of proof falls. So you're right, we have, whatever the number is, we've had 14 of 830G applications in the last year. But we do normally see them on occasion. Smaller ones, obviously. We've seen a lot of small ones. And we do understand that the burden of proof is on, on that municipality. And I'm only asking you that because we have 125 people in the audience. Thank you.
I'll be quick. Yeah, no. So what I was gonna say is, and then to have a 22A 19 intervention as part of that is sometimes less rare, although becoming more common. But in short, this act was adopted in 89. As you indicate, Madam Chair, it's, it's, I think implicit in your statement, it's remedial in nature. It's intended to advance the goal of providing more housing opportunities and affordable housing. And it does that. The burden shifting is only one element. And I won't touch on that because you know it, but to me, it's really the second most important element. The other element are the prongs of the test that you have to measure the application against. And I think this goes right to the issue that there's been a lot of discussion on. But basically, the commission has to find that their decision, however you come down on this, is necessary to protect a substantial public interest in health, safety, or other matters.
Matters that may legally come under the.
Right. And the, and the courts have said that historic considerations fall into the ambit of other matters. There are obviously other issues as, and you call them, that you want to get into later, but this is the, the one you wanted to address first. So within that sentence are these issues. And so you have to be protecting a substantial public interest. It has to be necessary. Then the second prong is that such public interest must clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing. So it's not the relationship between them. It is, it is that it must clearly outweigh. So that is going to require the commission to do, I hope, as intense an analysis of the need for affordable housing in Greenwich, which will provide information on half. Because in order to weigh these other matters, or even public health and safety matters, when you get to the second prong, are you going to need to weigh them against the need? And so you could have a matter that is important. For example, historic preservation. But it doesn't mean that it's more important than the pressing need. And that's something you need to not, obviously not conclude now, but over the course of the hearing, you'll hear testimony about the historic importance from us, from the opponents. You'll also hear testimony about the need and quantifying the need for affordable housing. And then your job is to assess those. And then once you've assessed them, decide if the, the other matter clearly outweighs the need. And then finally, the other prong in the test is whether or not the substantial public interest can be protected by a reasonable change in the, in the development plan. So that element's really important too, because.
And I think you just hit the nail on the head. What we've been saying since we heard this at the pre-app is that we see a public interest that could be protected by a change in the plan. And we have repeatedly asked for that public interest to be protected by a change in the plan. That, you've just gotten to what we've been saying from the beginning. And that's exactly right. I think everyone on the commission, nobody has dissented with Mr. McCray, Mr. Baralek, Mr. Levy and Mr. Low, as they've made the comments, or with me. I think we are all pointing out once again to the applicant that we see an important public interest in this National Register district. And we would like to find a way to protect it and a modification that you could make. I am hearing loud and clear that the applicant has not considered such a path and is apparently not willing to do so. And we will take that under advisement. It's all we can do.
I, I don't, I don't think that's what you're hearing, but I will say on, on that prong, it's.
There is no plan B was what I heard and there never has been.
Right. Well, because until you've weighed, you can't jump to prong three until you've got through prong two. Okay, so you can't prejudge what the alternate reasonable changes should be till you know the relative comparison between the need for affordable housing and the likelihood that the harm would occur. So it's not enough to just say, well, you should go back and redesign the project. You need to get through part two before you.
Mr. Renelli, what we asked is, have you considered any alternatives that would meet the dual goal of providing below market housing as well as these structures? We have not predetermined. We have not reached a judgment. We have asked several times, have you considered any other alternatives that would serve the dual goals of this community?
And Mr. Renelli, what, Mr. Renelli, I would suggest that what you've just articulated echoed what Ms. Albin had said earlier. It's, it's about balance. And, and that was brought up from the, from the get-go. And, and we've heard nothing about an attempt to achieve some sort of balance between these competing goals. Well, Mr. Low, respectively, or Commissioner Low, I, I disagree. I think what you've heard and will continue to hear is this plan is our, what we think strikes the best balance of something that's achievable and that preserves the, the history of the district. The history of the district is helping people have affordable housing. And that's what this project does. So we think it serves that historical purpose. So, but, but, but we're not saying there are no changes that can be made, but you have to let us get the application out and get it out and not say, well, the statute does not say that, that if you receive a 22A 19 intervention, it raises history, that preempts the rest of it. The statute does say that about other things. It says, for example, in an industrial zone, you can't do this.
We know what it says about an industrial zone. Mr. Renelli, I, I just beg you to bear in mind that the commission is very familiar with the 830G statute. And that we know that, we know that 830Gs are not allowed in industrial zones. In fact, there is a case, was it Stonington, Mr. Baralek?
Yes.
That had the industrial zone and that we looked at in terms of the historic. I mean, we have looked at that. Please, please bear in mind that we, we try very hard to be conscientious. And in addition, we have put into our plan of conservation and development that we want to have greater housing diversity in our community. We are trying to balance dual goals. Could, Katie, could we now move to, I just feel like we're not progressing here?
If I could just finish the interplay with 23A.
Thank you, sir. I hope Ms. Andrews covered the ground as well. I believe she said the same thing, but go ahead.
Respectfully, I will, yeah, I'll try to finish up.
Thank you, sir.
The, the, the final point is, is so how does this interrelate? And that's, as I said, the court has looked at the interrelation between 8-30G and mostly 22A 19, not 19A, because those are rare, but by, if you read 19A, you see it incorporates the others. And what the court has said is, under the rules of statutory construction, the first effort is to read these statutes harmoniously. And in, in actually a Greenwich case, Corinol, the court looked at that and basically arrived at the conclusion that it doesn't change the commission's standard for reviewing, the 830G standard for your review. You should conduct your review and, and go through the three prongs that I just described. In addition, you then have your intervention petitions. You have to make the findings that are required under there. And if the commission finds that the intervention petition contains substantial evidence of, in this case, unreasonable destruction with its regard to historic assets. In other cases, if it's regard to other, like air, water and other natural resource assets, it's a slightly different bar. Then you have to run that interest through the three prongs as well. So you do make separate findings under 2319 and under 830G, but the 20, the, the, the way the court harmonized them is that second part of 22A 19, the feasible and prudent alternatives, they said that's really the flip side of the reasonable changes coin. And so you have to run those through the, the other, the other prongs of the test. So that's how they interrelate. And then I would add, the other case that's maybe relevant in that is the Mazzardo case versus State Traffic Commission, which is, is a reminder that the 2319 doesn't expand the commission's jurisdiction. You still should look at all the zoning matters that you find important, which includes historical elements. But it doesn't, you know, expand your commission beyond the zoning import of those matters. So I'm happy to talk later about it or more. I understand there's a lot of people waiting, but the short answer is the existence of these 22A 19A and 2219 intervention petitions does not alter the 8-30G standard that you have to render a decision under. I won't go through the prongs again. You have them, you're well versed. You can consult your town attorney if you want. And then the state process plays out really separately. So Katie, it's not, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Luke, it's not about that one comes before the other. This commission does not need the other process to play out to render its decision. If you render a decision, let's just say you approve the application and then later on, it turns out the process Mary Jo described plays out and it goes to court and it's found to be unreasonable destruction, let's say, for example, then nothing gets built. But you have to evaluate it based on the content of the record before this commission.
Yeah, and that, that's why I started, thank you. And that, that's why it started the question by saying that obviously the AG or someone else in that, that track is going to ask you the same question. So in the spirit of efficiency and getting to the end result together, that's why I'd raise the question. But I, but I see your point. If you want to keep it separate, then.
And reasonable minds can disagree and you're going to hear lots of testimony, but I, I just hope, you know, that last prong is a collaborative prong, Madam Chair, as you indicated. And we would hope that you would take into full consideration our explanation of the historic import and, and as we go forward, our explanation of the project. And hopefully, we can provide you enough information to conduct that balancing test.
Okay, so I, what I'd like to do from here is move to the next big issue that we have on the table that addresses, that concerns the feasibility of the structure that you are proposing, which is the access in easements and issues with those that have been highlighted. And then to Mr. Renelli's point, we are going to need to have another meeting, I believe, to continue to discuss the second, the second tier of issues with this application that have been raised in the staff report and by the departments, as well as. as well as explore this, the historic, the National Register District some more. Would you discuss now the easement situation, mister?
Yes, I looked at this issue quite some time ago. And Putnam Court, um, actually I was looking, I was doing research on another matter completely. And I came across a case several decades old where it was a dispute over the use of Putnam Court. And, um, which is the small street, private street, that goes the street from my office here. And, uh, uh, the judge basically threw up his hands and said, I, I can't tell who owns Putnam Court. And I don't think it ever came out of the original owner, George Bowles. And I think that the Women's Exchange attorney several years ago as well came to the same conclusion as did their title searcher, Bob Mowbray. And so I don't disagree. I think that it's, it's ownership is unknown. Having said that, we do, as the Women's Exchange has conceded, have rights to use that court for access to at least five of the 11 properties. And the commission doesn't usually, and I think rightfully so, get involved in discussing property rights and rights of access, et cetera, for good reason. It's not your domain. But I will tell you that as a general proposition, the Connecticut Supreme Court has held that the mere fact that you add other property doesn't prohibit you from using that access to access that other acquired property. It's a question of whether you're either overburdening the easement or, uh, or you're interfering with the use by the other person. And, and I would suggest you, as a practical matter, that this design, where all we're using it for now is the parking court, which would be mostly served by occasional visitor, delivery truck, et cetera, Uber, is probably less of a use than what's there now servicing all these properties back there, et cetera. But ultimately, it's not for you to decide. It's for the courts to decide if, in fact, the Women's Exchange wants to take issue with our use of it. We do have the rights to use that right of access.
Katie, do you have a comment on this? Cause you raised it in the staff report.
But it just, it just sounds like, generally speaking, there's so much other things that are going on here. You know, if someone else's issue over here, if someone else's issue over there, any chance you would consider converting to preliminary? Because that, because that, I mean, that would be most helpful in that you could then go on a different track and, um, you know, hear what these other people have to say. Because it's, it's a, I understand, I understand the point where in, in certain instances there are things that don't come before the commission title issues, et cetera. But in these, in this instance, so these things seem so significant and potentially damning to the project, that it's, it's just an unfortunate chicken and an egg, I guess, if, if you will. So, so no, no on the revision to the plan, no on converting to preliminary.
I, I don't see that there is really any issue of great import or confusion with regard to access again. So I don't see where we gain by converting to preliminary on that. And as far as the, the plan changes, I mean, there may come a time that we're willing to change the plans. But right now, we're before the commission with the plans that we have.
No, I just-
You know me, Katie, I'm usually very amenable to converting or trying to work with the commission on this. But in, in this particular case, with the team as a whole, I, I feel that they believe that we have a good plan. We spent a lot of time on it. It's really well designed. It's going to serve a wonderful purpose and a great location for this kind of housing. And we think it's in keeping with the designation of this district, the ward on, in the register of historic places. So I don't see any great value in, in converting to preliminary. Of course, I'll talk to my team about it, but I believe that's their position at the time.
Yeah, and you're right. You are usually very amenable. For the record, agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's those, the main, those two main issues. If you are, again, agreeable, Mr. Hasen, we'd like to defer the discussion of the fire, drainage, traffic and conservation for the next time we meet with you. Because I suspect the public comment is going to take quite a long time. We have 122 people here. I don't know if they're all speaking. Perhaps they are not. But it will take quite some time. In that vein, does anybody on the commission have further questions right now?
Manager, I've got, I've got one more question.
And then, and then Mr. Yaski after that. Go ahead, Mr. Baralec.
I'm going to take a different tact. The, let's hypothesize for a second that, that, that you, you, you cannot build something smaller and preserve the history of this, this property. You mentioned that, that the economics is what's driving this. How much more affordable housing could your client put in this exact structure you're proposing now? And still have the property be, the project be viable?
Again, I'm not prepared to address that tonight for obvious reasons. But I, you're positing this concept and, and again, my team is all watching. So I'll be taking it under consideration.
Uh, Mr. Yaski?
Yeah, I mean, I've learned a lot tonight, but let me ask a question of the commission. It seems to me that their arguments are coming down to what's reasonable. As I heard it, they have a couple sub arguments there. The first one being that on, on the registration form, only one box was checked and it was called social. And then they talked about seven out of 159. I, I think, isn't it reasonable for us to go do a lot more research? I find it hard to believe that they created this district just for social purposes. So if we're going to end up down the road talking about what's reasonable, I would think that it would be in our best interest to do a whole lot more research about the origination of this district beyond what they've laid out.
And that was, that was in fact, Mr. Rennell, one of Mr. Rennelli's points buried in the, in the class on affordable housing. He did, he did make that point. Sorry, Mr. Rennelli, I had to make that dig. But that was one of the points Mr. Rennelli has made. It is, it is on the commission to get expert testimony in regard to the historic significance of these buildings. That is our job. In all cases where we believe there is an issue, both the applicant can give us expert testimony and we should and are encouraged to secure expert testimony about issues that we think rise to the significance of competing with our stated need for affordable housing. So absolutely, now we are going to hear from some experts tonight, but they are not on the commission's. They are not, they are just experts in historic structures. They are not people that have been retained by the commission. As you may recall, we have retained experts in the past on sewer systems, on environmental issues, and we always have a traffic consultant. It's exactly the same. And what Mr. Rennelli was encouraging us is, as we come to evaluate these competing priorities, we need to have expert testimony on the record and inside our heads so that we can make these decisions. Our take from what we have received in terms of public comment and the testimony submitted so far is that, and from the beginning, with it, we, we saw the importance of the historic structures. But you're right, we need to be sure, we need to get expert witness, expert testimony, whatever you want to say. We need to have a consultant in. With that, anybody else from the commission? Cause I think Mr. Haslam knows I want to, I would like to-
Yes, I would just like to, I want to clear up, I want to clear up something Mr. Yaski just said and suggest to the commission members to read page 369 of our agenda. That is the statement of significance. And it specifically checked as a statement of significance. A, property is associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of our history. And I'm reading that. I don't see the word social. I may be wrong. I may have the wrong section, but I do not see the word social in that statement.
So I, I believe it's an argument that, that the applicant is putting forward. I again, counter it with, you can have a perfectly ordinary structure that existed 300 years ago in which extraordinary events occurred and you preserve the structure. It eventually becomes the only one that's 300 years old in your neighborhood, but you preserve it because it reminds you of how your community was settled or how the American Revolution was led and many other wonderful things. So, exactly. But they're making a different argument here, and I think we've agreed to continue to explore the question. Is everyone amenable to going to public comment now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, to the public, some instructions before we start this. We have 120 people in the audience right now, and y'all are experts. I see the hands are coming up. And you raise your hands, everybody, raise your virtual hands. And you will be called on in the order that you have raised your hands. And we are going to time you, uh, we are going to give you three minutes each. However, we have some appeals from you, for you. Please, if someone has already made your point, don't repeat it. Say that person, three people have made my point and it's this, or even decide not to speak, but try to use your time to make a new point. The next thing is civil discourse, and I know the commission broached. I know we got very strong feelings ourselves about some of these questions, but civil discourse is the backbone of our nation. So please be respectful. And I always say what they told us in kindergarten, no name-calling, okay? So, cause I know people get upset. So with that, I'm going to begin calling on people. And Mr. LaRoe, you clock ready? And Reverend, I'm going to tell you who's coming, Reverend Delatorre. I believe you can read the, the, the subtitles. I will call on you as the third person. The first speaker is Joanne Messina, followed by, yes?
Were we going to start with Mrs. Studer and then?
Oh, 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 boop, 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 sorry. Back we go, opposition. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I was two hours into the meeting or I was so wanting to get to the public. I apologize, everybody, raise, drop your hands. We got to let the lawyers talk some more. The, the next person we have to recognize is Matt Studer. He's the attorney for the opposition. And Mr. Studer, I am so, so sorry. I'm having trouble getting him in. Hold on. And there he goes. I'm so sorry. Okay, folks, you can leave your hands up if you want. It doesn't really matter so much. We'll let the lawyers talk. And then after that is, is Attorney Siska. And we're all set. Again, my apologies. Just keep your hands up. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Studer. I'm sorry. I forgot about you and I was reminded several times.
Not a problem. And good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. My name is Matt Studer. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Bircham Moses. Bircham Moses has offices at 75 Broad Street in Milford and 1221 Post Road East in Westport. My colleague, Mario Capola, and I represent the Town and Country Condominium Association, as well as four individual residents of Town and Country. Francine Gingras, Michael Santangelo, Barbara Mueller, and John Romanow, each of whom have filed an individual verified pleading to intervene in this proceeding pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 22A19, the Environmental Protection Act, or SEPA. Yesterday, we submitted a letter to the commission which outlines Town and Country's opposition to this application. The intervention pleadings were also attached to that letter as Exhibit A, as this commission is presumably aware. And as noted during the commission's briefing yesterday, we have requested that the commission not close the public hearing and requested that we be afforded the opportunity to give our full presentation and offer expert testimony, including that of our civil engineer, Steve Trinkus, during a subsequent public hearing. So with that said, I will keep my comments tonight very brief before turning the mic over to Attorney Siska and members of the public, and then back to the applicant. As this commission is well aware, the applicant is proposing to build seven-story, 192-unit multifamily housing development in the Fourth Ward Historic District. The Fourth Ward is listed on both the National Register and the State Register of Historic Places. It's characterized by low-rise development, built between 1836 and 1929. And it's recognized as one of the two earliest urban subdivisions in the town of Greenwich, predating the arrival of the railroad, which converted the town from largely agricultural to a, a more urban suburb of New York City. It's also associated with Greenwich's first Irish and African-American populations. It was the location of the town's first Roman Catholic Church and first Baptist church. This application calls for the demolition of seven contributing structures. And if we look to the federal code of regulations, contributing structures are defined as buildings or structures which by location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, feeling and association add to the district's sense of time, place and historical development. As this commission is well aware and has reiterated, on March 25th, the State Preservation Review Board reassessed these seven structures and confirmed by unanimous vote that they retain the integrity and continue to contribute to the historic Fourth Ward District. It is our position that as such, the demolition of these seven structures would constitute the unreasonable destruction of historic structures and landmarks of the state of Connecticut under SEPA. I point out that the proposed demolition is also contrary to the state's plan of conservation and development. One of the POCD's stated goals is to preserve local historic sites, buildings and resources. So as this commission is well aware, and it was discussed before, the, the commission may deny an affordable housing application if the decision is necessary to protect substantial public interest in health, safety or other matters which the commission may legally consider. As we discuss in our letter in opposition, Connecticut courts have held that environmental and historical concerns fall within the ambit of other matters contemplated by 8-30G. Now, it is up to this commission to weigh those other matters. This is historical preservation concern against the need for affordable housing. And I'd simply point out that like many of the resources protected under the Connecticut Environmental Protection Act, historical structures are finite resources. Once demolished, they're gone and they simply can't be rebuilt. And I think that needs to be given full consideration by this commission. As detailed in our letter, Town and Country has a number of additional concerns which we will address in greater detail at a subsequent public hearing. These include generally municipal sanitary sewer capacity, traffic safety, engineering and stormwater and fire safety. I do know that some of the members of the public tonight will touch upon those topics. And so I'll, I'll conclude by simply reiterating that Town and Country recognizes the need for affordable housing in Greenwich. However, this application for this site within this nationally-registered historic district, which calls for the demolition of seven contributing structures, simply does not work. And with that, I will cede my, the rest of my time tonight.
Well, just for a second, just hold on just for a second. Attorney Studer, does anybody on the commission have any questions for Mr. Studer? I believe Mr. McRae has a question.
I don't think, nothing at this time, but I would, you know, reading of the letters, you know, it, it does not work. I think I'd like to know more specifics on that, but we have a lot of people to speak to tonight. So we should move on.
So, and, and Madam Chair, those are the details that we will get into in greater detail in our full presentation, which we have asked to put off to a subsequent hearing. Today was just some brief opening remarks.
Great. Thank you very much. Well, hopefully we will get to that. Thank you, sir. Ms. Siska, if you are ready to go ahead, we are ready for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commission, Madam Chair. My name is Andrea Siska. I represent Sherwood Green Condominium Association. I thank you for the opportunity to present to the commission tonight. Sherwood Green Condominium Association consists of a two-story, two, two-story buildings with a total of 10 condominium units that are located at 52 and 56 Sherwood Place, which is immediately adjacent to the proposed development. We have submitted two letters into the record, one that was dated April 8th and one that was incorporated, incorporates a letter that was submitted during the pre-application process, which is dated October 12th of 2021. My client's concerns related to the development are set forth in those letters and will not be repeated tonight. We, of course, reserve our right to submit expert testimony on the issues relating to traffic, sewers, stormwater, et cetera, in later meetings. Tonight, however, I'm going to focus on a couple of comments that were made by the applicant specifically relating to tonight's presentation. First, we'd like to note that Mr. Middo focused a couple of his comments on the amount of light in the courtyard and the units. And he stated, and I quote, "All units in the courtyard and people in the courtyard are in sunlight as much as possible." What I found particularly interesting about this statement is that in building this building, the applicant appears to be not taking into consideration the fact that they're building a seven-story building in the middle of a block very close to adjacent properties, which includes my client, the Sherwood Green Condominiums. By building the building and the location and having a building that's seven stories tall, they're actually leaving my client in the dark. My client's kitchens, living spaces, courtyards are actually no longer- My client's kitchens, living spaces, courtyards are actually no longer going to be exposed to sunlight, and that's known to have a negative effect on health. Um, I'm sure the homes across the streets will likewise be affected. Uh, we reserve the right to present expert testimony on that issue and will look forward to sha- uh, renderings that show shadows, et cetera, from the applicant at a later date. The commission is well aware of the law and, and you got a little briefing tonight from the applicant, so I'm not going to go through that. Uh, you certainly don't need it from me. But I think the law is very clear and everyone is well aware that it states that there's not allowed to be an unreasonable destruction of historic structures. Uh, I just want to note that, just so there's no confusion, the Attorney General is not the only party that's permitted to bring an action to prevent the unreasonable destruction of historic structures. And I, I thought that, that that was a little bit unclear from the applicant. A private citizen does have a right to bring an application to prevent the demolition of these seven structures that they're proposing to demolish. And so that's, um, that was a, a, a point that I wanted to make sure was clear on the record.
Ms. Siska, does that mean that you are considering doing that?
Mr. Levy, Commissioner Levy, at this time, uh, I've not discussed that with my client. Uh, but if the Attorney General, uh, decides not to, my client certainly will consider that.
And by any chance, has, uh, you or your clients talked to any other neighbors that are so affected by this proposal?
Uh, Commissioner Levy, has my client spoken to any of the other neighbors? I know my clients are in conversation with many of the other neighbors generally relating to the proposal, yes. I'm not sure if I'm quite answering the question that you're asking, though.
Yes, and, and, uh, but others are, uh, uh, also on the north side of this project. So have you talked to any other, uh, property owners on the north side?
I, I know that my clients are speaking to many of the, of the, uh, adjacent property owners in the neighborhood. As I stand here right now, I cannot, I cannot speak to who each of the individual unit owners have spoken to, but I can certainly revert to the commission with that information.
I think what Mr. Levy is getting at is, uh, an understanding of the, the impact of the, the loss of light and ventilation.
Understood.
And, and, and it's also behooves the commission to do our own work. Again, uh, what's the significance of this issue?
So, your question, so Ms. Siska, you saying that if the Attorney General doesn't take the action that is sufficient to your client, that your client will take some other action? I'm confused about what the, what the process is after the Attorney General acts. If, if you don't like their decision.
Yeah, was that Ms. DeLuca?
Oh, is it with the court you named?
No, I'm sorry, was that, was that Ms. DeLuca that was asking the question? Because I don't, okay, I'm sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, my client, my client certainly has the right and, and we would consult regarding whether they, they, uh, choose to proceed on an application to the court to enjoin the unreasonable destruction of the seven structures, of course.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for Attorney Siska? Any other questions for Attorney Siska?
Ms. Albin, may I just continue? I had a couple.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done, I'm so sorry.
I just didn't want to stop any of the, any of the questions.
Okay.
There was also another statement made, uh, by the applicant, and I quote, "There was no prohibition from the National Register standpoint on destroying historic places that is a quote 'tool' that Connecticut has put in place." I don't really understand that statement. The National Register acknowledges the significance of the seven structures. We're not talking about demolishing one structure or two structures. We're actually talking about demolishing seven structures that are in close vicinity, which as recently as a week and a half ago, were acknowledged to be contributing structures. And actually, it was a little bit more than that. The, 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 uh, the review board actually looked at photos and recent photos to ensure that the condition of the properties was the same as it was when they were put on the National Register list in two thousand. And so we're not talking about sort of a, a flipping, oh yeah, they're, they're back on the list. They actually, they actually looked at them and did some diligence in, in coming to that reaffirmation of the fact that they remain on the National Register. The state of Connecticut legislature then goes one step further and says, "We're going to protect historic structures," and they enact law. And the courts then further that statutory law by creating case law that says, not only do the, does the legislature say that you can prevent the unreasonable destruction, but as a commission, you have the right to deny an affordable housing application on the basis that, uh, historic factors such as destruction, uh, preventing the unreasonable destruction can be considered. And so that's important, because here we have an applicant who has taken the, the, the position that they're going to put forth a single one-hundred-and-ninety-two-unit building in the middle of a block surrounded by much smaller buildings and destroy seven historic structures in order to do that. And so the notion of balancing historic preservation and affordable housing is not present by, by the applicant here, there's been no balance. They want to put up the building because that's what's financially feasible for them, and they've made that determination without any regard whatsoever for historic preservation.
Mr. Wells, did you have a question?
I do have a question. Uh, you know, there are many ways to, uh, let's say demolish a building. Obviously, one is to just tear it down, the other is to not maintain it. You don't paint it, you don't replace the roof, you don't replace, replace the windows, and gradually it just decays. Is there anything in the current law that you're aware of that would require an owner to maintain, uh, buildings in a historic district?
Mr. Wells, I'll, I'll be candid, I'm, I'm not familiar with anything, but I've not delved that deeply into it. I can certainly look into that point and revert to the commission on that. Uh, what I will say is that when the National Reg-, when the, uh, co-, um, when the committee or the review board considered the, the seven structures on March twenty-fifth, they actually looked at the, uh, photographs of the structures to ensure that they were in the same condition that they were in back in two thousand. And so twenty-two years, those, those structures were in the same condition, and so they actually kept them on the National Register. And so whether there is it or isn't, as a praxical matter, it appear, it would appear that those houses have been, those structures have been maintained to, to at least a reasonable extent that they, they would qualify for the district.
Did you run the risk, or there is the risk, though, in ten years they may not be? Unless there's something to, you know, require an owner to maintain them?
Of, of course, and certainly since applicant now owns them, they could, they could do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Miss, I'm sorry, Ms. Sky, I, I don't think you were done.
No, all I was gonna say is, so, so I, you know, I think, I think that from my client's perspective, you know, uh, they, they really feel that the historic nature of the Fourth Ward is of such a, uh, such a critical importance to them and that, that this is a, a threshold issue that should be addressed before the other, the other matters in the application. And I think they appreciate that the commission is really focused on that issue. Uh, there are two, uh, individual unit owners here tonight that are going to speak to some of the other issues of importance, and I've reminded them about the commission's rules on brevity. So with that, I will, um, cede my time to the public. Thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. And there were no more questions, right? So I can do that. Okay. We are, we are, um, I think we're ready to go, uh, now finally, again, with the public. And, um, our first speaker. Okay, so everybody, um, I say the speech again, three minutes, don't repeat yourselves, courtesy, all that. Here comes our clock. Our first speaker is Joanne Messina. Joanne Messina will be followed by Patrice McCann, and Reverend Delatorre will be the third speaker. Reverend Delatorre, you will be the third speaker. Okay, Madam Messina. Um, you may go ahead, I believe. You should be all set.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, you're good.
Thank you, Madam Chair, commissioners, applicants, and public. Um, I want to speak, I guess, with three hats on tonight. First, um, I'm Joanne Messina, I live at fifteen Perry Ridge Road, which is right around the corner from the Fourth Ward. I lived at the Nantucket, which is right across from this proposal, um, for twenty-five years until four years ago, and therefore know the Fourth Ward very well. I also am speaking as the Executive Director of the Greenwich Tree Conservancy, as well as a member of the Preservation Network. I think the historical nature of what, what's been said, um, what's been discussed does not have to be repeated. I just totally endorse the fact that this is a historic district, that this is not the edge of the district. Um, having lived there across the street from this proposed, um, development for twenty-five years, I felt very much like I was a part of and in the middle of the Fourth Ward, and that was very important to my husband, my daughter, and myself. Um, I also wanted to make mention of a few inconsistencies in Mr. Haslam's presentation, um, between Town and Country and the Nantucket. There were two homes, um, that were taken down for a private home and a, a garden. And we did, in fact, try to preserve those two homes. They were also, um, contributing homes to the Fourth Ward, and they were important, and unfortunately, we lost them. We also, um, I think he mentioned the, the wrong name, but not a big deal, with the restaurant. Um, want to also agree with Attorney Siska. It was mentioned that this development is extremely beautiful, uh, maybe as you're standing from the courtyard. But I also want to speak to the fact that it will change, um, the view from the Nantucket, from, um, the homes that are across on Church Street, as well as the homes on Sherwood. It will make a huge difference. I am a very strong opponent, uh, I'm sorry, I'm a very strong proponent, um, and have been for many years of affordable housing. I think this is a wonderful area of town for affordable housing. I think it is and should be, um, used as such. The homes that we're talking about to be taken down were Section Eight homes for the entire twenty-five years I lived there. So they were, um, quote-unquote "affordable," although not in the way the legal definition, um, states. I also want to say that this is much more than a social structure. Um, it is, it is the buildings themselves.
Thank you, Ms. Messina.
Um, Madam Chair, as a result of the fact that I spoke to the Preservation Network and I now speak briefly on the Greenwich Tree Conservancy side.
Okay, so now you have a different organization, I suppose, okay.
I will just give thirty seconds.
Yes, ma'am.
I know you're not talking environmentally now. I just want to mention that there were two very large white oak trees that were lost, um, previously in this area. There are not any, um, incredible canopy trees right now, but it is an area of town that we, the Tree Conservancy, have really worked very hard to have canopy trees and to have green, um, and not have the heat island effect which, which occurs in downtown Greenwich. I also want to just make a personal reference that ten years ago, there were six trees planted along Church Street, um, in memory of my late husband by the Greenwich Tree Conservancy. And I know that the tree warden has been asked to remove seven trees, and we would oppose that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Messina, Messina. Uh, Patrice McCann, I have been unable to promote you, uh, as a panelist. I've enabled you to speak, um, please go ahead. And Reverend Delatorre will be next, fu-, excuse me, followed by Nick Abbott.
Great, thank you, and I hope everyone can hear me. I know not on video. Great, perfect, so thanks. So my name is Patrice McCann, I am on the Board of Directors and a unit owner at Greenwich Lodge. I know the commission, it's not the first time you've heard me speaking. I do want to share first, going to, um, the commission's question to Ms. Siska. There is a committee of the neighborhood, um, Greenwich Lodge being part of it. Sorry, there's a dog in the background. Um, being a part of it, so we all are concerned as neighbors, not only those affected on Church Street and Sherwood, but as a community as a whole. I am trying to be polite in listening earlier to, um, Mrs. Andrews and Mr. Halsin. I, the Greenwich Lodge building is an historic designated building. I am beyond thankful that my building is not where the developers want to be, because in their opinion, maybe it's not aesthetically important to them, so I felt like they would have knocked it down. I think it's critical as a community and for the commission to really listen to what we believe to keep this a historic district. I lived in New York City for a number of years. If I wanted to maintain large buildings, I would have stayed there, rather than coming to Greenwich, which is a quaint, historical, lovely, low buildings on the most part. I'm a little perplexed as to why, and again, as others have said, affordable housing is wonderful. I'm sure everyone listening, most would be, um, in agreement, but a hundred-and-ninety, uh, unit building, that is significant. It's taking down two blocks. I know we won't even get into the infrastructure, um, traffic at this point, but it, to me, it feels more like a hotel. I too would love a pickleball court and pool, but I think it really takes away from our neighborhood. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Our next speaker is Reverend Felix Delatorre. Reverend Delatorre, I am going to promote you. There he goes, okay. And after that is Mr. Nick Abbott. Uh, Reverend Delatorre, you should be all set. Reverend Delatorre?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you see the titles? Yes.
Okay, very good. Uh, my name is Reverend Delatorre, and I pastor Bethel Church, which is down the block, uh, right across the street from, um, the hospital. And right at the hospital, there's a sign that says, uh, "Heroes Work Here." And you know, it's unfortunate that, um, a lot of those people who work there and elsewhere cannot afford to live here. And it's based on what I'm hearing tonight, they're at loggerhead. And we cannot allow for the opposing view to be an excuse not to do something. Uh, I serve a, a righteous God and says that, um, you know, we have to let each other look out, not only for his own interest, but to the interest of others. As a minister, uh, I pray God redeeming love and looking out for our brothers and sisters. I pray we all do the same. So this is very difficult, um, uh, issue. I've heard a lot, but I, I pray that you come together some kind of way, not to allow the differences to be an excuse not to do something. People are dying, people now have homes, and we have to do something. Uh, I'm not a lawyer, um, I'm not well-versed in all these fancy terms, but what I can say, we must, we must do something. Chairman Albin, thank you very much, and all of you. I pray God bless you and each and every one of you. Let us do something. God bless you. Thank you, good night.
Thank you very much, Reverend. The next speaker is Mr. Nick Abbott, followed by Dean Guzmanos, followed by Stephen Stern. Um, Mr. Del-, uh, Mr. Abbott, you should be all set.
Hi, thank you to the commission for having me. Um, I'm here to testify in support of the project. Um, I'm a twenty-two-year Greenwich resident, and I am also an advocate with the Segregate C.T. Um, I've submitted, uh, a report, uh, along with the applicant stressing the need for affordable housing in Greenwich, which I won't elaborate here, since it is before the commissioners. Um, but it also makes a point that I think is particularly relevant to the discussion that we've been having here today around history and the proper way to continue to honor that history and to balance that history with the need for affordable housing in town. Where, whereas in other instances, I could see that there might be a need to balance those considerations. In this instance- In this instance, those impulses for to honor history and to promote affordability point in the same direction, and that direction is approving this project. Already, the attorneys in this call have ably talked about how the animating purpose for the Fourth Ward's historic designation is that it was historically a neighborhood for those with low and moderate incomes. It is not that today. Rents in the Fourth Ward have gone up by over four times the rate of inflation since 1944. Indeed, those who, that historic designation are meant to honor, including multiple African-American leaders in the community, marched for more accessible and affordable housing opportunities in Greenwich. It has been said by one Commissioner here that the proper way to honor history, likening it to the Mark Twain House, is to preserve buildings that remind you of how your community was settled or where extraordinary events occurred. I don't disagree with that in the Mark Twain House setting. But here, we don't need a monument to affordable housing. We don't need a monument to historic diversity represented through these buildings. What we need is affordable housing. What we need is housing options that can continue to sustain and to revive that diversity, not a relic of the past that serves merely as a symbol of that historic diversity. The best way in which to preserve that diverse historic character is to increase our housing supply, particularly of affordable housing units that is on the table today. I know there are a lot of plans that the town is engaging on to improve the stock of affordable housing in town, but this is a concrete way in which the town can actually concretely increase its affordable housing supply. The last thing I'll say about balance is that one Commissioner on this call likened even tearing down any demolition of historic structure to Russians' invasion of Crimea, which is insane. Tearing down a few historic structures, a small fraction of the total number that have been turned down, torn down to produce luxury single-family homes, is a necessary and sound balance between whatever other considerations are and the need for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Abbott.
Mr. Alban, before we go on, Mr. Abbott, from listening to your testimony, it sounds like that maybe what you're advocating is that all 192 units should be affordable. Is that what I'm hearing, that we really need that much affordable housing? That we should be looking at actually developments that provide affordable housing? And then that, rather than just the 30% or 57 units, 58 as they're saying, really what we should be getting is all 192?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that question. So I'd make two points. Number one, in order to produce affordable housing, developers lose money generally in the affordable units. So we need the market rate units to cross-subsidize them in the absence of large tax credits or far vastly more funding than even an optimistic projection of what would be raised for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund would be. Second, the market rate units still contribute to the affordability needs of the town. We have a dire shortage of rental units, of one, two, and three-bedroom units that the market rate units would also help to address. So while, of course, I am always in favor of the more affordable housing, the better, this plan is a concrete way to deliver sorely needed both affordable and market rate units in a way that just is not feasible through a proposed 100% affordable project, absent some sort of massive tax credit or massive subsidy for that development.
Okay, in that case, then, in that case, in that case, then, what I should be looking for is affordable housing as I can get it. But I should actually also be trying to think of affordable housing to be something that the town retains forever. Is that a correct statement? I need affordable housing, and I need it forever. Because I think one of the things I noticed here, something that Mr. Haslam had provided, there was a chart of when these tall buildings were made, put up. The last one built was in 1949. But if I actually take a look at the affordability of, say, if it was an affordability plan at 830G in 1949, the affordability plan ran out in 1989. That was 33 years ago. So for 33 years, that building never contributed any affordable housing. So kind of a little issue with that. I think, I think, something I'm looking for is like, how does this really balance out? What does the town of Greenwich get? And what does the town of Greenwich get today, tomorrow, and 40 years?
I would say two things. Number one, 40 years for a deed restriction for affordable housing is actually a fairly long period in most other inclusionary zoning.
But 40 years, 40 years, Mr. Abbott, in the history of the town of Greenwich is the blink of an eye. 40 years was 40 years, okay. For 40 years, it was 89. Okay, that's nothing, and that building is theirs. That building was built in 1949. So I have a building that's there still, but I have no affordable that's contributing anymore. So 40 years, the history of the town is nothing.
Well, Mr. Abbott, wouldn't you agree that what Mr. McRice is saying is that it would be reasonable for us to ask developers such as this to give more affordable than just the bare minimum 30% for 40 years? And my follow-up question is, why not tax credits?
So I'll answer the first question first. So one, in terms of the affordability requirements, the affordability requirements of 830G are extremely stringent. They're far more stringent than those other 40B under Massachusetts law. They're far more stringent than the inclusionary zoning requirements of the hottest real estate markets in the country, like New York City or San Francisco or what have you.
We're not talking about Massachusetts. We're not talking about New York City. We're talking about the state of Connecticut.
Yes, but to put it in perspective, the affordability requirements of 830G are already extremely stringent relative to those other very hot markets. And what that tells you is that exceeding this already extremely high bar for affordability would require even more market rate units.
Or tax credits, or some other way to do it, right? Or government assistance, right? What my issue with this whole concept is that, that, that people assume that the 30% in a set-aside development is not a minimum. It's a God-given right, and I don't understand why that is the case. Maybe you can answer this question. I mean, I've read your paper. I was very impressed. You've given a lot of thought to this. So, and I know, I've listened to a lot of the desegregated kynetic arguments. And what I don't understand is this. Why is it, why is it that, that we, we in Greenwich are considered to be obligated to approve 830Gs at 30% minimum, when the economics obviously are driving these deals bigger and bigger and bigger? Why shouldn't we be asking the developers to give us not 30%, but 35%, 40% affordable?
Well, you exactly have it there, which is that if you were to require 35 or 40%, they would have to be even larger. And so the reason that the 830G developments are, one, so rare, as they have been throughout Connecticut and in Greenwich, and, two, so large is because there's such a large affordability set aside.
You're missing one thing. What's driving, what's driving all these economics is the value of land. Value of land is valuable if somebody is willing to build on it. If, if a developer came in here and wanted to build something that was right-sized, if, for instance, the historical district limited the size of the buildings that could be put here, the land wouldn't trade for something as much as I'm sure it's trading for to justify this. Am I right about that?
I'm no expert on land costs, but...
But you understand the economic development. You clearly do. I know you do.
I appreciate the compliment, but what I'd say is, you know, the presentation that, you know, that right now, what is in front of you, and I don't believe there's any proposal on the table for some sort of historic overlay or something like that that would affect the value of this land. On the merits of the proposal in front of you, you have a way to materially increase affordable housing. To your question about, you know, tax credit development or an alternative, yes, absolutely. I am the biggest fan. If we were to have 100% affordable tax credit development in Greenwich. The reality is, though, that in order, you know, for example, if Greenwich wanted to get a moratorium, would need to get over 500 housing unit equivalent points. And in over 30 years, Greenwich has only accumulated 35 points.
Moratorium has nothing to do with tax credits. You and I should have this conversation offline. We're gonna, we're gonna have...
Well, you're kind of, yes. Actually, you're allowed to talk to Desegregate Connecticut offline, but you just can't talk about this application. Now, Mr. Abbott, I apologize, because we've all jumped on you, and I'm not jumping on you. I just want to give you a couple of corrections. I would suggest, you mentioned in your letter that you looked down Zillow. When we were researching for our affordable housing plan and identifying the affordable need in Greenwich, which we're not denying, what we discovered very interestingly is lower-cost units are not on the MLS system. They are not available by the Realtors. We have pored through the Realtor database to identify how many low-cost apartments are in the Realtor database, and we didn't find them. And we said, well, well, maybe we don't have any nationally naturally occurring affordable housing. So we then went to the census, and lo and behold, Bob, do you remember the percent of below? So we, and we can just, if you Google it, if you go into the census database, they have that query capacity, and you'll find that we have a lot of apartments that are actually below $1,500 a month. We have a high number of those units. I don't know how many bedrooms there are, but it's just intriguing because they are not listed where you can find them. They're listed privately. They're not on the MLS. But they're out there and in large numbers, because the folks in the census are saying they live there. So we have a lot of surprising amount of naturally occurring affordable housing that we are having a hard time identifying and tracking, because it doesn't show up. The other thing is, in your letter, you talk about accommodating workforce. We've been looking at the commute distance relative to salaries of town employees. We don't have that easily available from the census data, although we've asked a consultant to help us find it and to help us put together the query. And what we've discovered, interestingly, is that many of the higher salary people actually are the ones that don't live in Greenwich. It's the higher salaries that aren't living in town, and there is a much better concentration at the lower salary levels. I'm gonna send, Katie has that table. I'm gonna send it to her to send to you. It's gonna be in our Affordable Housing Plan. We're still working on it. But this is why you will hear us talk about in the Affordable Housing Plan that we need more than 830G kind of housing. We need the full spectrum of housing diversity. We need what I'm sure you respect her having said it with Sarah Bronin called the missing middle. And so it is a spectrum. And when people say we don't have enough affordable, they are missing a big part of the story of what makes a complete community. So we're working that into our Affordable Housing Plan, even though we don't think that's what the state wants to hear necessarily. But what's important is to give people the opportunity to live where they are employed if they so wish. Those people, Mr. Abbott, in some cases are making $150,000 a year. They don't qualify for anything that you would call affordable, but they don't have enough housing opportunity in Greenwich. So it's a much broader picture, and a much, it's a much more nuanced picture. And I just wanted to say that to you, and I'm sorry I've taken up a lot of the speaker time, and Katie will send you that map we made, and Mr. Baralec will talk to you when he talks to you. As long as he don't talk about the application, you're allowed. He's allowed to talk to you.
Could I just brief, very briefly, 30 seconds to respond to those two points?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I think they're both very well taken. And I agree that Greenwich does have a lot of naturally occurring affordable housing that does not show up in a place like Zillow. What I think it does show, though, is that for someone like me, a young professional looking to stay in town, senior looking to downsize, those who are looking for housing options aren't able to find them. And that's not to negate those, largely from my understanding. Those are, you know, private school teachers or country club employees who are living in those units. But for somebody who doesn't have that sort of connection, they are left out to dry in the marketplace. To the second point, we absolutely need to increase market affordability, not just affordable, not just, you know, restricted affordable housing, as you said, to meet the needs of town employees and others, which is why I think the market rate component here is also of significant benefit, providing sorely needed new rental housing opportunity. So it's not just the affordable units, from my perspective, that provide...
All right, everybody, okay, thank you very much, Mr. Abbott. And with that, Mr. Gumanos, you are next. And I have been unable to promote you. You've declined to be promoted as panelist, but you are enabled to speak if you unmute. So if you just unmute yourself, we're all ready for you. You will be followed by Stephen Stern, who will be followed by Dan Quigley. Go ahead, Mr. Gumanos.
Okay.
Hello.
I can see you all. I don't know if you could see me.
No, we can't see you. You declined to let us see you.
Sorry about that. But thank you for organizing this, and I think you guys are doing an amazing job. And I think these hearings that are open to the public are a great reason why I'm so happy to live in this town. But I want to answer a couple of the questions that came up in the course of today's speakers. Though, one about the Fourth Ward being, the project being on the fringe of the neighborhood, I, I think that is kind of silly, because the whole neighborhood got started on Sherwood Place, where, you know, it's on the one side of where the building is. Then it moved around to William Street, which is a stone's throw away from where the building is. And we know Church Street, which came a few years later, is right there too. And I live on Division Street, by the way. I'm on the Greenwich Preservation Trust. I'm a director there. And I think it's very important that we preserve our history to protect our future. It's very important. And the Fourth Ward where I live is such a vital neighborhood. And to hear people say that they're building this building in the spirit of how the neighborhood originally started, to me, is a bunch of bunk, because the building itself looks like a fortress. It doesn't seem like it's interactive with the rest of the neighborhood. Whereas when this neighborhood got started, it was, people knew their neighbors. There was a film done probably for the 350th anniversary of Greenwich, which showed this big party that was held here in the Fourth Ward. And it was like, you know, it wasn't a snobby neighborhood by any means. People knew everybody. It was a great place to live and to intermingle with the people who also lived here. So, and I wonder, that building, it seems to be surrounded by bricks. I don't think people walking by can really, probably not swim in the pool there. That's in the middle. The setbacks are nice up at the top, but unlike some of the buildings that, the large buildings that exist that they mentioned, they're back from the road. They have lawns. They have bushes. They have trees. They have a lot that this new building doesn't have. It's not a bad design, but to be so massive, to span from one end of the district to, through to, from Sherwood to Church Street, it's, it's like a, like a, an aircraft carrier in the middle of a small town. It's just, doesn't, I don't think it belongs here. And I just hope we'll be able to fight this thing. And I think this is a good way to start. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gumanos. Our next speaker is Stephen Stern. I believe you are ready. If you just go ahead, sir. And then the next person is Dan Quigley, followed by Diane Fox. Not seeing him. Mr. Stern? This is the one thing. Zoom is great, except when you can't see the people. Mr. Stern, are you there? All right, I'm gonna go to Mr. Quigley, and we'll see if Mr. Stern turns on his video. All right, Mr. Quigley.
I'm muted myself.
Oh, there you go, okay.
Starting my video.
Okay, good. You're all set. Okay, Mr. Stern, we're starting your clock. And Mr. Quigley, if you would just hold on, in the on-deck circle.
Great. So, yeah, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and I greatly appreciate everyone's comments. So I'm a psychiatrist. I live on Church Street. My office is in Mount Kisco. And I wanted to follow up with what Ms. Siska said about the effect of the lack of sunlight that would be created by this tall building. And as she pointed out, Mr. Minow talked about sunlight as being one of the great things about the building, that the residents of this proposed building would have lots of sunlight. But of course, putting up that tall building is going to cast a lot of people in this area into shadow. And as a psychiatrist, I know that there is very good evidence that sunlight is helpful for your mood, and lack of sunlight can promote depression. And of course, as we all know, there has been an increase in depression in the last couple of years in Greenwich and around the country because of the pandemic. And putting up this tall building could exacerbate that problem. Also, there's a problem of anxiety. Also, there's a problem of anxiety. There's going to be a great deal of noise from the construction of the new building and then from the increase in the amount of traffic. There'll be like 192 new parking places. There's going to be a great deal of traffic. And traffic noise can have a deleterious effect on people's increased anxiety and have a deleterious effect on health. So I strongly feel that this proposed building could negatively affect the health of the residents of this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stern. Our next speaker is Diane Fox.
Dan Quigley, I thought was going.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Quigley, Diane Fox, if you would hold. And Mr. Quigley, you're next. Thank you for that, Mr. Levy. You get a gold star.
I'm here, Margarita. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Quigley.
Great. Thanks so much. Yeah, I just wanted to speak out on this particular development. You know, we should be under no illusions on this project. We hear a lot about, you know, we're trying to, the developers trying to provide the town with affordable housing. And all these laudable words to try and help us get through that conundrum. But we should be under no illusions that the only reason this is being proposed to our town at this point is because developers now want to capitalize on what has been a very hot real estate market, especially with rentals. There is no other reason that we're getting all of these 830G proposals right now. For 32 years of 830G, Greenwich got a total of eight proposals for 830G projects. The last two years, we've received 14. Why? Because you've seen a pandemic flow of people to suburbs. And developers aren't stupid. They want to capitalize on that. And they see dollar signs above towns like Greenwich, and they know there's a movement on affordable housing. And the only reason they're doing this is to capitalize on that. Now, they have to give the 30%, which is great, but that's not the reason they're doing this. Secondly, although affordable housing is a very laudable goal for towns like Greenwich and other communities, not every single community should be held to a 10% mandated threshold. Why? Because every community is different. Greenwich has 5.3% of affordable housing right now. To get to the number we need to, to satisfy the state mandate, we would have to add up to 5,200 total units, residential market rate and affordable. That means 5,200 new residents to downtown areas, which will clearly drive up infrastructure costs and drive up school spending costs and other things that are ancillary to that, which will then drive up taxes. It will also create a lot of unwanted density in Greenwich, which we've been trying as a community not to have for a long time. Thirdly, getting to what Mr. Abbott said before, I have a lot of respect for Mr. Abbott. He's a Harvard Law School student. He's a smart guy. But when he says there's not enough housing for someone like him in Greenwich, Connecticut, a Harvard Law School graduate, who may not be able to afford to buy a house at 26 years old or an apartment at 26 years old, like I wasn't, because I lived at home till I was 27 years old, that's not the reason for affordable housing. It's not for people like Mr. Abbott. If Mr. Abbott didn't work for a non-for-profit organization, he may get paid more money if he worked for a for-profit company. And he may be able to buy himself a condo in Greenwich and grow from there. That's not what affordable housing is about, and we shouldn't be conned into thinking that it is. This is about money and developers, and it's about density in Greenwich. We should be for affordable housing, but on our terms and the way we can do it through our zoning committee. Thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Quigley. I'm going to get this right this time. Our next speaker is Diane Fox, and she will be followed by Veronica Schmitz. And then S. Holopeter. Ms. Fox, whenever you're ready.
Hello. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and Planning and Zoning Commission. Appreciate the opportunity. First of all, I also appreciate hearing from the applicant's attorneys with regard to the, well, I would say the attorney general role, et cetera. I think that was a very helpful explanation that many people may not be aware of. But let me just focus on that. The Environmental Protection Act 22A19, excuse me, unreasonable destruction of historic structures. That's the key thing, unreasonable. There are ways, excuse me, of preserving the buildings. In fact, the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, I'm sorry, I have allergies that I'm having a problem with, has said rehabilitating historic properties to provide affordable housing is a sound historic preservation strategy. So I would suggest that that would mean a reasonable approach for developing historic structures along with affordable housing. We're not opposed to affordable housing. Number two, you write, March 25, the State Preservation Council reaffirmed that the buildings are still contributory to the Fourth Ward. Now, I think what's important about that is, and I looked this up also, under the, under the federal law of National Park Service Historic Preservation Certifications, Section 3667.5, standards for evaluating significance within registered historic districts. Number one, properties located within historic districts are reviewed to see if they contribute to the historic significance of the district by applying the following standards. And I think this is the key. A building contributing to the historic significance of a district is one by which location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association adds to the district's sense of time and place and historical development. So it is also architecture. It's also about the time and placement of history. So it isn't just the sense of the one box being checked. And I would suggest, because the Historic Society has all the records, to look at all of the contributory buildings and the non-contributory buildings essays that were written for the nomination, because I think it'll give you a better sense of why and what was considered in each one of them, what the architectural significance was of each of these contributory buildings is detailed. So it wasn't just a sense of history. So I would argue that point. I also would suggest that one of the biggest issues is the precedent that this will set. We have six historic districts in this town. One of them is Greenwich Avenue. One of them is East Putnam Avenue, where Christ Church is. Just think of this project were to be developed in those historic districts. There's nothing that precludes that. This will set a precedent to allow for other kinds of development similar to this on those particular places. Strickland Road is another one. River Road is another one. So think about the precedent that this sets for historic districts and the kind of housing and the style of housing and the loss of historic structures in those districts as well. So I think that's an important point. Under Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-2A, quote, zoning regulations may be made with reasonable consideration for the protection of historic factors. And I think this ties into the 8-30G, because historic preservation falls, and was said, under the other matters which the commission may legally consider under the Connecticut Environmental Protection Act. And it also falls under the 8-30G, which also says, public interest cannot be, affordable housing, where public interests clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing, and such public interests cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the affordable housing development. And I think your points have been well taken tonight, Madam Chair and Commission members. There are reasonable alternatives that could be pursued. And I'm not talking about relocation of buildings. So I do think that's an important point. Also, from the standpoint of the petition, and I know you've received the petition, we've had over 2,300 signatures in opposition. And the opposition is based on preserving historic structures. It is not based on affordable housing issues. So we are focused as a network preservation group, basically looking at the history and the historic structures and trying to preserve our historic districts. That's not to say we're opposed to any affordable housing. It can be balanced. It can be done. It's a question of trying to balance within both sets of laws, the environmental as well as the 8-30G. Now, I believe one of the attorneys pointed out that there was some court cases with regard to these two state statutes. I'm not aware of any, but I certainly would ask the commission to see if they could submit those cases. Because I think that could be very interesting information. And I also think that would be helpful for the public.
Ms. Fox, I will answer you that. When we, at the time that they did the pre-app, the commission did look extensively for court cases on historic districts and 830Gs. And there is really very little case law in this subject. We found one case, which we referenced earlier tonight.
Southernton.
Yep.
Yeah.
It was Southernton. And we also discovered another one recently, which was a settlement, so it cannot be found in the court cases. And we are trying to get information on that, but there is very little case law that's been laid down on this topic. So it is, you're absolutely right. We have looked for it.
And I think that's going to be part of the precedent setting with regard to this application as well. Because there was very little opportunity to find case law on this, where the conflicts may or may not exist between those two state statutes. I do think it's important that Greenwich, as it were, stands up for historic preservation. At the same time, it promotes for the affordable housing, as long as it's done reasonably and it can meet the standards of both state statutes. And I'm speaking in behalf, of course, of the Greenwich Preservation Network and from the Historical Society. So we reached consensus, our group had met, and these, and that letter that you received, which I'm quoting from, is part of that as well as the petitions, which we were encouraged, by the way, to start that petition on change by the State Preservation Office. They said, we want to see what the community feels. So we said, all right, how do we do that? And they said, get a petition going. So that's what we started to do. And that's why you have those petitions.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And yes, we were aware you were speaking for those organizations, and that's why we didn't run the clock on you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ronnie Schmitz. And ma'am, I'm going to move you up now, followed by S. Holopeter, followed by E. Zimbardo. Ms. Schmitz, if you would go ahead, if you're ready. Ma'am, if you would unmute. Oh, there you go. Did I hear you?
My name is Ronnie Schmitz, and I'm president of the Greenwich Exchange for Women's Work. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. A federally recognized 501 charity operated exclusively by Greenwich volunteers. This project alleges to provide affordable housing. The exchange business is to provide a retail store for men and women who hand-make cottage goods, including children's toys and clothing. If this commission were to approve this application, it would greatly impact those men and women earning revenue through the exchange in order to afford living and housing. How ironic. The exchange has owned, occupied, and operated its retail business at 28 Sherwood Place since 1937. Its property is Lot 5, which is identified in this project's site plan on the corner of Sherwood Place and Putnam Court. The deed to the exchange's property, together with lots 1 to 4, four properties that are part of this project, enjoy a common right of use Putnam Court, a private paved road or byway, not a town public street. No other properties or lots on Sherwood Place or Church Street that are parts of this project have such a right. Following its deed, the exchange continually for the last 84 years has used Putnam Court for its volunteers, customers, and suppliers' use and parking. The incorporation of Putnam Court into this project for ingress, egress, deliveries, and fire truck access, benefiting properties not entitled to use Putnam Court, would be taking and or curtailing of the exchange's deeded property right. Such incorporation is unlawful as well as unconstitutional. This commission is without authority to allow such taking of private property. If this commission were to approve this project, it would be condoning wrongdoing and illegal taking of a private property right. It is well established that this commission does not involve itself in private property rights. This commission should not set precedence by doing so. No. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Our next speaker is S. Holopeter. I don't know if I got that right. Followed by E. Zimbardo, followed by a person who has only identified as Peggy. Okay. Yes, hello.
Was it good?
Yes, hello. Is this Ms. Holopeter? Hello?
Hi, Ellen.
Can we mute that person? Is Ms., okay, I'm going to move up the neck. I'm going to, E. Zimbardo is the next speaker. E. Zimbardo, you are the next speaker. Would you identify your first name, please?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, this is, this is Ralph Zimbardo. I'm the husband. My concern has to do with if this project goes forward, the demolition of the existing buildings, excavation, proposed construction will result in a number of pollutants going into the air, soil, water, thereby endangering the health of the surrounding residents as well as the public, and certainly to the environment. Considering the age of some of the historic buildings that would take, would be taken down, there's also a likelihood of pollutants that would include lead paint, asbestos, oil from heating, oil tanks that may or may not have been removed. Also, there's the issue of the likelihood of endangerment to the health and the environment, heightened by the fact that there's no adequate safety distance if this proposal goes through, which could certainly negatively affect the health of the nearby residents, even those who are walking or working nearby. Also, the issue of during the demolition, excavation, construction, there's also the concern about the streets being partly blocked with work trucks, deliveries that would hinder access not only to just the people around there, but also possibly fire trucks and ambulances. I also have concern about the current sewage lines, although that was mentioned, they're strained now. Whether this proposal, if going through, could handle the resulting possible problems. And I have another concern about maintaining the adequate water pressure and uninterrupted electricity could very well be jeopardized by the added demand caused by the residents of the proposed project, thereby increasing potential safety and health issues as to those people who rely on electricity for breathing apparatuses and such. Thank you very much. I thank all the board members for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. The next speaker has identified herself only as Peggy. When we promote you, if you would kindly give us your full, full name. And thank you, Mr. Zimbardo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is actually Anna Toma, speaking on behalf of my mother, Peggy.
If you would just kindly give us your names for the court, your name for the court reporter.
Anna Toma.
Yes, and it's A-N-N-A in your last.
It is A-N-A. Toma, T as in Thomas, O-M as in Mary, A-I.
Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am. If you would go ahead.
I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, who currently resides at Sherwood Green over on Sherwood Place. Just wanted to bring up two quick comments. We reviewed the traffic study, which I know we didn't get the chance to go through in detail this evening. But the traffic projections are unrealistic, given that the proposed complex is going to have 192 units, one and a half cars per unit, 288, or sorry, yeah, one and a half cars per unit, 288 vehicles in total. There is constant through traffic. Need I remind everyone, the constant deliveries, the UPS trucks, the pedestrian trucks, the mailman, and it is an emergency route. I did also want to bring up that on the traffic study, for a development of such a size, I was surprised that the traffic study was done only one weekday. two hours from seven AM to nine AM in the morning. And then what was it, four, four to seven PM in the evening, only on one weekday? And then one Saturday for three hours, which I just think a development of this size should have required a longer traffic study. Um, and then I just wanted to leave, I know Attorney Siska and Dr. Stern brought up the shade factor of the neighborhood. And I believe in the pre-application, somebody on the Planning and Zoning Commission had actually requested a shade study be done for the surrounding property, which I have yet, we have yet to see, you know, here at Sherwood Green. And that's all.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Our next speaker is Wynne McDaniel, followed by Marita Hamry and Francine Gingras.
Hey, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Wynne McDaniel, and I am Chair of the RTM District Seven, and I am speaking today to oppose this application. Our district, made up of twenty members, wrote a letter that was published in the Greenwich Free Press on February tenth, which was a call to action on the state mandated eight thirty G. This application is being presented as an eight thirty G project since it will have thirty percent affordable housing. We stated in our letter the following. The law, as written, lays a one-size-fits-all policy over diverse community structures throughout Connecticut. And in its current use, unintentionally exacerbates the ratio of total affordable housing stock in many of our communities and heavily burdens already overtaxed existing infrastructure, including our roads, sewer system, and already constrained public water supply. If a town in Connecticut has not or cannot reach the ten percent threshold, a developer that designates thirty percent of the proposed project to be affordable can build a project even if it violates local zoning rules. These projects will never get Greenwich to the statutory ten percent affordable housing goal because as a number of total residences increases with each project, so does the baseline of which the ten percent is calculated. It is impossible to ever catch up. Without the need to work within the local guidelines for zoning setbacks, height restrictions, green space, parking, et cetera, future large and small-scale development proposals are likely to continue, many negatively impacting the town's constrained infrastructure until we can repeal or at least modify slash redefine eight thirty G. On a separate note, I wanted to comment at a previous, uh, P and Z meeting, and I think it's important to highlight this. The starting salaries for teachers, policemen, and firefighters will not qualify them for affordable housing as their income levels and their, and their salaries are far exceed what would be determined under eight thirty G. So it's something I haven't heard come up on the call, but I did want to point that out. Also, as a private citizen, I want to add that I was a fourteen-year resident at fifty-six Sherwood Place, number seven. And I walked frequently around the neighborhood, taking our daughter to the William Street Playground. It is a quiet and peaceful neighborhood. Please do not change this. We need to maintain this neighborhood for the neighbors. Please oppose this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McDaniel. Our next speaker is Marita Hamry, followed by Francine Gingras, followed by Peter Berg. Birds. And Ms. Hamry, uh, you declined to join the panel, so I've just enabled you to speak. That's all right. You can speak. The bird sounds nice.
Apologies. I did not intend to, but you don't need to see me. Uh, hello, I am Marita Hamry. Uh, since my family, uh, first moved to Greenwich twenty-two years ago, I have been an active member of the First United Methodist Church, which is on the same block within steps of this proposed development. My church helped to raise my two children, who are now adults. The people we have sat next to and worshipped with at our church have included a retired elementary school teacher who has lived in the same house in town for over fifty years, an aging couple who recently had to move to Wilton because they could not downsize into an affordable place in this town where they raised their children. A ninety-four-year-old woman who has lived for decades in the town's public housing, after having come from the Bahamas to Greenwich to raise other people's children. There is a man who has managed to walk to church on Sundays from his room in public housing in spite of his disabilities that make walking very difficult. There's a couple who live in the very large upscale condominium complex across the street, able to get from there into our church by wheelchair. These people in our congregation who helped raise my children have been able to live in Greenwich and attend our church because when they moved here decades ago, the town offered expanding and diverse housing options. They moved here because decades ago, the town encouraged new housing and built new public housing. Since then, however, compact, middle-class neighborhoods have been transformed into very large properties that would become home to millionaires and billionaires. When the rest of the world looks at Greenwich, they see mansions and mazeratis, gated driveways and vast green lawns. And that narrow vision of our town has slowly begun to eat away at us. This singular image of what each of us should be, of the ideal life and house that we all should aspire to, it breeds a resentment that's been festering for years. We have started to look at our neighbors across town and potential new residents with anger and fear. And now that resentment has boiled over to a point where we are at war with one another in our town in a way that I have never seen. And I look at what's happened, and I know that that's not who we are. I know that with such certainty because Greenwich is not mansions and mazeratis and gated driveways and lawns. It is my church. And if everyone could see this incredible gathering of people from different walks of life every Sunday, who have loved each other through some of the most tumultuous years in our nation's history, they would know that this town is a special place where so much more is possible. We see a future Greenwich that takes a cue from its former self, creating new kinds of housing, welcoming new people, and also embracing its long-term residents, thriving in diversity and true community. We see this multifamily development, which will offer a variety of housing for a variety of people as part of that. My church welcomes these new residents to our community. We are excited at the possibilities that having new neighbors might bring. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Francine Gingras. And, um, sorry, moving slowly. Uh, ma'am, go ahead. Francine Gingras, go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much. Uh, my name is Francine Gingra. I live here at twenty Church, Church Street. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, anyways, Madam Chair and members of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission, thank you so much for your time, the countless hours it has, it has taken to review the application before you. And, and more importantly, listening to us tonight. I know this is off-hours for many of you. Many of you are volunteers, so I really appreciate you taking the time to hear our concerns. Again, I'm a resident and owner of a property here in the Fourth Historic Ward. The decisions you make today or on this subject matter will be forever affected regarding this inappropriate development, which I oppose. You've heard from many experts and many more experts to come, so I'm going to speak to you tonight more as a reflective of what it's like to live here. I actually live on Church Street and what I fear about this development. Walking my dog in and around the neighborhood, I meet all kinds of people who reside here. Some of them actually live in the historic homes that are at question this evening. Many are, have turned into multi-home dwellings. I'm sure they would be afforded affordable based on the type of work that some of our diverse neighbors have. None of these are counted in the state criteria for affordable housing, so it's hard to meet our required ten percent. As I said, they are diverse, they're good neighbors, and they're afraid of being evicted from their homes if this development moves forward. The people that we hope to place in affordable housing already live on Church Street. You know, we don't have to look too far for them. They're here. Some of them are here already. Greenwich is the gateway to New England. It's the first city entering Connecticut from New York. It has great historical significance. It's well-known for its outstanding architecture and rich history. It's imperative that we retain our distinguished characteristics and our seven registered homes, historic homes contributing to this wonderful district. Three weeks ago, while walking my dog, I witnessed another dog being hit by a fast car at the corner of Williams and Church. A broken tibia, the dog had to be put down. People have been hit at this corner as well. Regardless of what all of the traffic expert have to say, these streets are narrow. They're thirty-two feet wide, not fifty, which is the usual street, um, width. Uh, they are congested with delivery trucks, and we're barely able to have a two-way street. Speeding is a daily occurrence to get to the green light on Putman. Adding another potential two hundred and eighty-eight cars will only make what is already unsafe worse. And if you think that affordable housing is meant for everyone and that it's equal for everyone, well, don't be so quick to think that's how it works. Without further clarity on the amenity cost structure of this development, not everything the building has to offer may be available for all who live there. Rooftop pickleball may come at an extra cost. Looks like a two-tiered system of the haves and the have-nots. And forty years of affordable housing, what happens to those units after forty? Do they get pushed out and replaced with high rents? Shouldn't affordable housing be in perpetuity? The Greenwich community does a good job of providing housing in perpetuity. Why not eight thirty G? Let's continue, let's continue to support the great work Greenwich community does for this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Um, our next speaker, we've had some changes. Um, our next speaker is now Paul Puliezzi. And, uh, if you will go ahead, Mr. Puliezzi.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Oh, sorry. Don't know if you can see me.
Yep, we got you.
Turn the video. My name is Paul Puliezzi. I'm a member of the Architectural Review Committee as well as the Greenwich Preservation Trust and the Greenwich Preservation Network. I'm a supporter of affordable housing and housing diversity in town. And, uh, I think it's very important for the community to have a diversity of housing to accommodate our aging seniors as well as our, uh, children and young professionals coming into the community. I'd like to talk briefly about resources. Uh, historical resources are just as important as environmental resources. And, uh, in that vein, I think it's, uh, that they should rise to the level of environmental resources as well as health and safety in evaluating it against the need for affordable housing. When you look at one of the original eight thirty G cases that was found in favor of Stonington, Connecticut, uh, years ago when it was first enacted, uh, Stonington had a limited amount of industrial property that was available in the town, and someone proposed an affordable housing project on that industrial property. The court found that it was more important to preserve the industrial property than to have affordable housing because the affordable housing can be placed elsewhere. I think that this is the case with this project. There are many opportunities in town, virtually thousands, if you look at the way eight thirty G is written for, uh, the development of affordable housing. There's no need to destroy historic designated historic resources in order to provide affordable housing. I also find it interesting that the state DEEP requires that if you build a dock, you have to build it six feet in the air above the, uh, the mean low water in order to, uh, provide sunlight for the grasses that grow underneath the dock. Yet here, uh, a building is allowed to completely block out the sky for the neighboring residents who relied on the local zoning when they purchased their properties, knowing that they would have a yard where they could garden and enjoy the sunlight. So I think those resources need to be protected uh, and that they rise to the level that, uh, exceeds the need for affordable housing in this particular location. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker, well, actually, I'm not totally sure. So I'm gonna ask Peter Berg. I've enabled you speaking, or you've had your hand up, and then you took it down. Do you still wish to speak?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
And, um, can you see me?
Uh, no, but I can promote you. You had, you had, um.
Well, that's okay. I mean, uh.
I just did. Okay, so there you go. You'll be all set. Okay, now if you would unmute, you should be ready to go.
Yeah. Uh, so I'm Peter Berg. I am, uh, the Chair of the RTM's Land Use Committee. Uh, but I am not, uh, speaking for the committee. The RTM Land Use Committee oversees the Planning and Zoning Commission uh, and the Historic District Commission, among other land use agencies. We, um, appoint the members, we oversee the budgets, so. Uh, and in, uh, recently I've served on the committee that created the Affordable Housing Trust, and I'm currently on the committee that's writing the Affordable Housing Plan. So I've gotten to know, uh, a bit about affordable housing that I didn't know. So Greenwich has a serious predicament. Uh, it's not your fault, uh, but maybe a bet. As you know, the state adopted eight thirty G in nineteen eighty-nine, thirty-two years ago. And since then, the town has done little to comply. Towns with less than ten percent affordable housing risk losing control of local zoning. Greenwich has been around five percent affordable housing for most of those years. While some affordable units were added, scores of new subdivisions were approved. I feel badly for you commissioners who are suffering this debate. I know you are dedicated volunteers. I fear that you will not want to continue your service to the town and that the selectmen will not find such qualified nominees to replace you. Uh, a few corrections. Uh, eight thirty G is not a mandate. Uh, the town's not required to comply or to do anything as it has demonstrated for the last thirty-two years. Eight thirty G merely sets a threshold of ten percent. Furthermore, the ten percent threshold is low when you consider the size of Greenwich's Alice working poor workforce, uh, at least sixty percent of which commute to town by car, adding to our heated traffic congestion, probably the number one complaint in town. And I agree, Ms. Alban, with your statement that people who work in Greenwich ought to be able to live in the town in which they work. Next, eight thirty G has been described by some as a true public-private partnership. What are the respective contributions of government and the developer-owner? The government provides zoning variances. The developer-owner provides affordable housing at no cost to the taxpayer. So it's not correct when somebody says the market rate units are subsidizing the affordable units.
Mr. Berg.
Right, so I'll just stop right there. Uh, thank you very much for, uh, for listening to me. Have a good night.
Very much, Mr. Berg. Our next speaker is Sam Romeo. Mr. Romeo, um, yes, thank you. Okay. Mr. Romeo, if you unmute, you should be all set.
Okay, hear me?
There you go. Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, well, I, I was going to, um, speak about the health and safety and all the other stuff, but it's been adequately addressed by others. You know, I, I as the chairman of Greenwich Communities, I, I think there's only one really affordable housing developer in town that really is committed to affordable housing, and, and that's Greenwich Community. Our units that we build and maintain, um, are one hundred percent go directly to the ten percent number, uh, that is required. And they're in perpetuity. They don't go away after forty years. Unlike what happened in Stanford at St. John's Towers, where the forty-year deed restriction has left the right, right on Washington Boulevard. And now they destroyed them, and they're, they're putting up market rate units right down in the center of downtown Granite, uh, Stanford. And, and, and let's not be fooled about what's going on here with all these applications. There were a total of eight hundred and. There were a total of eight-hundred and, I believe, fifty or eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight units and applications presently proposed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, large developments. This application right now, let's not be fooled. The commission can see, as well as other people can see, there is no Plan B. Why is there no Plan B? Because this developer has no plans of making any changes. He's counting on the Connecticut eight-thirty-G statute to be on his side, and he just, in my opinion, is looking to go directly to litigation and have the court decide it. So there is no Plan B, and I don't think there will ever be a Plan B. I'm totally opposed to this. There's only, like I say, only one true developer affordable housing here in town, and that's Greenwich Communities, Greenwich Housing Authority. We, we have plans already to build another three-hundred units of affordable housing, which will be in perpetuity and affordable on our sites now. It's not going to impact anybody's neighborhood. We already own the land. We're just going to use the land that's underutilized. And we are the answer. In nineteen-eighty-nine, the Greenwich Housing Authority, now Greenwich Communities, has been, was designated as the Site Developer for the Town of Greenwich. We're the answer to creating affordable housing. We're not in it to make money. We're in it to fulfill our mission statement and to provide quality affordable housing. And if you can just look around town and see what we've done in the last three or four years on creating quality housing throughout the Town of Greenwich. I think Greenwich, with the partnership with all the other working agencies here in town, has done a fantastic job in moving the ball forward on creating affordable housing, and we will continue to do that and stop the madness that's attacking our town with this threat and the gun to our head from these developers who want to change the whole characteristic of the town.
Thank you.
A lot of infrastructure problems are created by them with schools and water and everything else. Just last week, or a couple of weeks ago, we had the.
Mr. Romeo, time?
Yes.
Sorry.
Well.
Go ahead, just go ahead and finish. Go ahead.
But just. We had the Aquarian Water Company come to the board of selectmen and put in place already a water restriction plan moving forward, and we're not even in the summer. So there's a lot to look at here. And I, and I think that you, the panel here, the commission, has their hands full, but you know what? I think we need to take a stand and we need to dig in. And we have to push back on this state because what they send down our throat is defective legislation. And this legislation, it has to be revised, and we have to take an exception to it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Romeo. We had one more speaker, and I'm just, Mr. Holla Peter Stevie Holla Peter. Did you change your mind about speaking? Just checking because we were trying to promote you and you disappeared. All you have to do is answer if you unmute. Okay. I'm just going to assume that's a no. All right. You can always try us the next time. Mr. Hasland, hello. I hope you enjoyed your, your break.
I've been watching.
There was a topic that we wanted to raise with you as something of significant concern that you could work on, which is this question of your fees and whether, and whether you've really got an affordability plan that creates affordable units, or whether you have a series of fees that make the units unaffordable. It was not clear. There are some comments from the housing analyst, and those, I believe, rise to the importance of an immediate resolution. Do you have a good afford, a compliant affordable housing plan in place that you're proposing? That's my last question. Anybody else? And then you can close, Mr. Hasland, and we'll see you soon.
Briefly address that. We've been talking to Crystal Berry for your department, as well as Mike Santora from the state throughout, to make sure that the compliance plan complies with state law. Will it possibly require some tweaking because it may be interpreted in a fashion which is not intended, which is to make sure that all people are created equal and treated equally within this development? But we'll continue to work with Crystal and Mr. Santora to make sure that it's compliant with state law.
Yeah, the concern, the concern, Mr. Hasland, is that you might have fees for what are considered basic services without which someone could not live comfortably in a unit.
Not intended at all. If there's an interpretation that needs to be tweaked, we're happy to do it, as I said. As with all departments, we'll continue to work with them and with the State of Connecticut Department of Housing. Make sure it's compliant.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Hasland?
I just want to say thank you all for your time again, and also for the number of people who took the time to watch tonight and to speak up. A very intelligent conversation, I thought, weighing two competing issues of great importance to the town. So I think it's an interesting conversation. I wish it was nothing more than hypothetical, but I think both things are important to the town, and it's important that we have these discussions. So thank you to all, and also to all the applicants that are coming after us and their lawyers who still have yet to be heard tonight, and to you folks again.
But since we start so early, it's, at least it's not midnight right now.
That's true.
So.
So keep the Zoom, keep the Zoom going as long as you can. I heard you yesterday about that, and I have to say.
The vote is, the vote, it's item two-oh-four on the House of Representatives' agenda. No, I'm sorry, item two-oh-seven on the House of Representatives' agenda tomorrow.
Well, not only is it really important for public comment, I think, and public participation, but also it's a lot less expensive for clients, I have to say, both in residential clients and my commercial clients, so it makes a lot of sense because they don't have to bring in people and experts and have them sit for a long time. So it's really a smart way of going, and I hope that that's the future.
Well, and if I, if I could do a small Planning and Zoning Commission brag, we enabled closed caption this evening. We would never have been able to do that in the Town Hall meeting room. We accommodated someone with a disability who could not have been accommodated without drawing attention to the disability. And that was really super cool. We've never tried doing that before. So it's a step forward for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and in Town Hall, that person would have been unable, you know, it would have been much harder. So, all right, so we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
And we'll work the rest of the issues, and we would like to, we're planning, as you heard us tonight and yesterday, on continuing to work the Historic District. Commissioners, anybody got a parting shot before we go eat? He's fair game. All right. Okay, Mr. Hasland, thank you very much.
Thank you, connect.
All right. So let's call it eight o'clock right now, and let's say we'll reconvene at eight-twenty.
I have a suggestion. The next application's been opening.
No, I'm very hungry. They're not coming. We can open it and close it when we get back. The applicant, the applicant isn't going to be here. The, that was an overreach, Mr. McRae. The applicant's not coming. All we have to do is open it. We can do that.
Well, I think anyway, opening, closing.
No, you're wasting my hunger time.
See you soon.
All righty. So continuing with the public hearing, our next application is Dairy and Partners LLC for final coastal site plan and special permit at twenty-six Homestead Lane. And this application is now open and will be continued at our, at the next hearing, Katie?
Yes. Yeah, this is just to, just to handle the statutory timelines.
This application is hereby opened and will be continued at our next hearing, or whenever the applicant so wishes. And with that, we go to the following application, which is Twenty-two Baldwin Farms LLC, Baldwin Farms One LLC, which is for a site plan, a final site plan and special permit for a single-family dwelling at Twenty-two Baldwin Farms South.
Madam Chair, I'm recused on this application.
Yes, and we seated Mr. Wells. I seated Mr. Wells, having forgotten that we postponed this last time. It was on the last agenda. I thought you had been seated. But why don't we go ahead? Because I know you've prepared, and we'll just go ahead. My apologies, Mr. Baralek. Good evening, Mr. Cohen.
Good evening. I'm here tonight representing the applicant. As you noted, Ms. Alban, this is an application for final site plan and special permit to allow a single-family house to be developed on a six-point-four-acre lot, two acres zone of Baldwin Farms. We've got a few images that I will illustrate, I think, a little better or what we're going to present for you. Let's see, is there a way to enlarge that pad? That first one? Yeah, that's great. So outlined in blue is the six-point-four-eight acre lot that we're talking about. It is surrounded on the west by residential homes, to the north by some vacant parcels, to the east by Camp Simmons, operated by the Boys and Girls Club, and to the south, a tract of of wooded land owned by the Land Trust. Pat, the next aerial show this a little more closely, and I show this particularly for two reasons, to show that the, there is an existing home and some outbuildings on the property located in the, I guess, the southwest corner of the property. There's a wooded area to the right on the eastern border of the property, and you'll note that sort of in the center of the property is a large green area which is existing. Lawn, the issue of lawn has come up in some of the comments by the conservation staff, and I wanted to note that the lawn that we're proposing to have is there already. We're not adding to it. Pat, the next image shows the the existing situation again a little more clearly. I've marked the buildings and read the existing pool in blue. And the next image will show what we're proposing to develop. And you, as you can see, it's, although it's a larger development, it's, the house is over twelve-thousand square feet. It's all located in the same area that is currently developed. I would point out that the proposal that's before you tonight is before you for really two reasons. One, the aggregate cubic volume of the new development exceeds one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand cubic feet. And also, our clients are proposing indoor athletics facilities in excess of twelve-hundred square feet. Specifically, there's an indoor pool and a gym and a yoga space. Totally a little over two thousand feet. That's the reason we're before you. The development, as we're proposing it, is well within all zoning requirements. The building, the main building is, is much lower than the existing permitted height. Same with FAR, much smaller. We have eighty, eighty-eight percent of green area versus the required seventy-eight percent. And of course, all setbacks have been observed. The next image shows what I had hoped would be green, but it turns out to be gray. I'm sure that the trees will turn out to be green when they're finished. Our landscape plan is, is illustrated on this rendered version of our development plan. Again, the existing wooded, wooded area to the east will remain. The existing lawn will continue to be where it is. And the development, as you can see, is all on the southwest corner of the, of the property. I, with that, if, I'm going to address a couple of issues that were raised at the briefing. And should you have any questions tonight with me, are the project architect, Grace Jordan, as well as the project engineer, Rob Sandolo of SC Minor. The two issues that came up in the briefing yesterday were these. First, there was an issue that I think was raised by Jody Couture, which was the designation on the guesthouse floor plan of a kitchenette. It is not intended to be a kitchenette. It is intended to be a wet bar. As was discussed, there is enough acreage on this property to provide for a couple of full residences, and subject, of course, to satisfying the commission or the staff that we're able to do it in the acceptable, acceptable way to create, I guess, what we've been calling a paper subdivision. So unless and until we're able to do that, we're going to proceed based upon the wet bar in the guesthouse as defined by the zoning regulations. And then the other issue that you talked about had to do with an issue that was raised oddly enough in the DPW report, having to do with the location of one of two garden garden areas that have to be constructed. And it was noted that the, and maybe, Pat, if you could go back to the, I guess, the last image that shows. Yeah, that's great. It shows a two areas that were designed by our project engineer. One along the driveway to the, to the west border of the property, the other in the wooded area to the north central portion of the property. It was the latter one that DPW commented on. I spoke with Rob Sandolo, the engineer, who tells me that that can be installed without disturbing any of the surrounding trees that the excavation needed for that garden area will be distant from the closest of the trees. And that, to some extent, it can be, it can be modified in terms of the exact location. So I think that, I think we can satisfy the desire to, to keep that area from interfering with any trees and still allow us or allow my clients to have their use of the lawn as, as they wish. We do not want to put that area into the, into the lawn. I'd also point out in determining whether or not.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen, just to clarify, so what you are. I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen, just to clarify, so what you are saying is that where conservation raises the comment about the trees that will be compromised with the installation of the rain garden, you are assuring that you will ensure there are sufficient protections for those trees in place?
Yes, we will.
Okay, for the ones that would be affected by the rain garden, and that you will have an arborist provide that?
Yes, we can do that.
The arborist, yeah, for the.
We've had an arborist on.
You've had the arborist on the project, okay.
We have.
All right.
And then finally, one last thing I'd note in terms of the conservation.
Now, did you have any comment on this thing with the chain link fence?
Yeah, we're not going to put up a chain ring fence, but we certainly are going to put up a, a construction fence during the construction period to A, protect the trees and B, make sure that all construction vehicles park.
Now, you know why she's asking for that. I agree with you. I, I think it's a pretty big ask for a chain link fence. But I can tell you that construction fences, having seen so many of them, they just topple during construction. Some guy comes along with his pickup truck. He decides to park there and he just brings the whole fence down. That's what the guys do. That's, they're busy. They're getting to their job. So what the point that's being made here is that you will make, you will install protection to avoid compacting the, the soil on the sides of the driveway.
Exactly, as well as protecting trees.
Right. But her key here is the, the compaction and also the trees. But I'll tell you right now that that construct, I know why she's saying that the construction fencing is never enough. It just falls over. Some guy just comes and sings happy birthday to it. Okay.
It's a long driveway and my clients are keenly aware of what, what should be protected and the issues involved, and my guess is they'll do a pretty good job.
All right, now, so the other thing is, back to the original conservation report, she, I take it she is now satisfied with the replacement plan that you have provided?
Well, I hope so, because we're following the Conservation Commission's guidelines in terms of impervious coverage offsetting.
Yeah.
And, and we are, we're doing so much planting that not only do we offset it, but we could have offset the other 24,000 square feet.
Okay, but the next question is, that she then hit, is whether you could reduce the overall area of lawn?
And, and the answer is, we're not increasing the lawn area. One of the reasons that our clients are interested in this property is because of the beautiful lawn that's there.
Okay, so you, go ahead.
Notwithstanding that, I think conservation makes the point that although that lawn has been there a long time, it, it, there have been a better, you know, better understanding of the influence of pesticides and all the rest of it, all the deleterious effects of, of maintaining a lawn, including irrigation. And I think she was trying to make the point that it would be appropriate to reduce the size of that lawn.
Well, we're, we're not, we're not increasing the size of the lawn, Mr. Low, nor are we, nor are we exceeding the impervious coverage offset, offsetted by our planning. However, I will tell you this, that my client is certainly committed to using to the extent possible while maintaining the lawn, a organic lawn care program.
Right. No, I, I understand that it has not been increased. I, I think the point that Ms. Mock was, was making was that this was, is now considered to be way oversized, given our, our knowledge of, of what, you know, what the effects will be environmentally.
Well, if, if there were a standard or a regulation that had established something along the lines of lawn reduction, I'm sure I would be aware of it and I would follow it. There, there is not. There is a guideline in terms of how you, how you plant to take care of impervious coverage additions, which we have observed, as you saw very carefully. And it's, you know, the reason that my client, my clients purchased a six and a half acre parcel is so that A, they could have the house they wanted, B, they could do so within all zoning limitations, and they, and C, they could have the lawn for their family. And that's what they would like to do. They'll do everything that they possibly can do to eliminate issues relating to pests, best not a great organic materials.
Mr. LaRoe, do you have anything else outstanding on this application?
But unless there are some additional questions, that.
I just asked Mr. LaRoe if he had anything else outstanding. Mr. Low, are you satisfied with the answer you received?
Well, that's.
Sorry.
That's really neither here nor there, is it?
Okay, all right. Let me ask you differently. Do you have any follow-up questions?
No, I, I, I think that it's, it's incumbent upon us to be respectful of the recommendations from the conservation department. And I'm not, I don't think that Ms. Mock was suggesting that they eliminate this beautiful lawn that what was one of the drivers for the purchase of the house. But to the extent that they might consider reducing it in size somewhat, would be an accommodation that would be appreciated by conservation and this commission, I suspect.
Okay.
My question is about some of the plantings. I was curious about, you know, it's a, it's seems like a well thought out landscape plan. And yet again, there's a rather long stretch along the western edge of Arbor, Arborbyde. And it seems like maybe that's not such a great material to use. It's, I think it's probably overused, and I just was curious if you might entertain doing something which is a little more creative than as, as in the past, it just seems like a, not much, an afterthought as opposed to doing something which is a little more clever and nice.
Well, let me point out to Mr. Levy that in addition to the Green Giant Arborbodies, there are Norway spruce in great abundance, cherries, American holly, and dogwoods, as well as sugar maple. So it's quite a mixture. I think that in the area you're talking about, the landscape architect felt that it would be an appropriate way to, to screen that area. I'll have them take a look at it with your comments in mind.
Only in that it just seems like it would be a simple thing to break up that feature and.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll discuss that with, with the landscape architect.
Very good.
Okay, any other questions?
Just a quick one. Mr. Cohen, you pointed out the rain garden in, in one of the corners. And is the water from the house, runoff from the house, is that what's going into the rain garden, or is it something else?
I'm not sure how the drainage pattern works, but to answer your question, I got Rob Sandolo with me here from SC Minor and.
Would you please raise your hand, Rob? There he goes. And and Pat, could you pull up the drainage plan? Mr. Sandolo, you should be ready to go. You're ready. You don't have your camera on, but that's okay. You can talk. Okay, I'm looking for the rain garden and the lines from it. The lines going into it are, it looks like one of them is from the rear, the, one of them is from the rear.
Looks like the one on the right is coming from the house and the one on the left is coming from the.
The one on the right, that's exactly what, what I, yes. And so, Mr. Wells, if Mr. Sandolo would confirm, he's muted, he's muted himself, but if he would confirm, it does look like that's probably from the roof leaders.
Right. And I just made a comment, it looks like it goes right through the lawn. So they're going to have to dig up the lawn, put a trench in there and then put the pipe in, right?
Right.
Yeah, I'll just point out that this, this whole area is going to be.
Is going to be disturbed anyway because of the cult tax.
And the septic.
And the septic system.
Right. Yeah, and I assume the land slopes down so that you don't have, you're not pumping the water. It's just naturally down.
Yes, it slopes from south to north.
Yeah, I can't read the numbers on the, on the plan from here.
This is, this is relatively the high point right here, sorry, of the lot. Everything is sort of, it goes in two directions here to the north and then to the west.
Great, thank you.
I guess Rob was never able to get unmuted.
Well, he unmuted, but now he muted himself. He keeps muting and unmuting and, I don't know. But anyway, he's all set, so I'll just.
It's okay. The fees can go to town hall, Mr. Cohen. Thank you.
Yeah. Don't pay him, pay us. Send a check to our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. If you don't want to do that, send it to our tree fund. That's at Parks and Rec. Just say post-road trees.
Why used to be so many funds? Did you notice that?
Excuse me?
There didn't used to be so many funds.
Yeah, I know. It's amazing what bad people do when they're running the commission, isn't it?
No, it's a very cyclical thing. There were funds, now then there were no funds, and now we're back to funds.
As long as we never have another parking fund. Okay, do, no more questions from the commission. Do I have any questions from the public, comments from the public? Please raise your virtual hand. Anybody wants to comment on 22 Baldwin Farms South? No. Does the commission object to closing this application at this time?
No.
No objections. All right. Mr. Cohen, you're out of here. This application is hereby closed. Alrighty, can we get Mr. McRae in? And Mr. Hegney? Now there he is. The one thing about the attorneys is when you click on them to come into the panel, they always come in. It is trickier with the. They decline, they don't want to, they ask if you can see them. All right, Mr. Hegney.
Well, they may be doing this every day, so.
Yeah, I know. I know that, but it's just, Mr. Hegney, in the past, we combined the three applications. So continuing with the public hearing, we will combine applications five, six, and seven. Is Mr. McRae on his way back in? McRae?
He was.
Madam Chair, in the meantime, if.
No talking.
I just want to, it's, it's only housekeeping.
Oh, okay.
If you could ask or bring in Andrew White, Sean Reagan, then Rick Canavan. Andrew's our civil engineer, Sean is our landscape architect, and Rick is our environmental scientist.
Wait, I.
Rick is our secretary, Nick is our secretary.
There's a funny guy in every group. Okay. All right, I think we have, wait, we're, oh, Andrew White, Rick Caravan, and Sean Reagan. Okay, we've got your crew here. Okay, and we've got Nick and here, and therefore we now go to applications five, six, and seven. They are all Plaza 200 LLC. One is for a zoning text amendment to sections relating to the conservation subdivision, then a zoning map amendment, and then a final site plan and special permit, all at 1141 King Street, reminding the application that this is a must-close tonight application. And with that, Mr. Hegney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the commission, for the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. This is a 19 acre site on the east side of King Street. We have the Chieftain's Conservation Cluster Zone area to the south. We have the Audubon, National Audubon property to the east. We have the Convent of the Sacred Heart to the north, and we have Greenwich Woods and a couple of single family properties and actual farms to the west. You, you have, ah, that's, thank you, Pat. And we're right smack in the middle there. You can see the Chieftain's development to the south that was actually done as lots rather than as a cluster, although they, they are clustered together. And you can see the other properties I just referred to as well. We have had, I think this is our 12th meeting on this application. And we've had three meetings with the Wetland Agency, and then there was a fourth meeting where they approved the plan and approved it unanimously, by the way. Three meetings with the Conservation Commission also voted unanimously to support both the site plan and the rezoning in their advisory capacity to you. We had two meetings with the Architectural Review Committee where we discussed mainly landscaping and where there were significant changes made to the landscape plan and particularly the, the quantity and size of the trees that we were looking to plant. We have had a number of meetings with the town engineer who, along with the Commissioner of Public Works, granted a waiver so that we could reduce pavement width, since this road is only serving for the most part, five houses. There are two properties up near King Street where the road is meeting the 22 foot wide requirement for town standards, because there are those two houses as well. We also hired an arborist who did an analysis of all the trees on site and made significant recommendations as to how to protect them during construction, which we will adopt as, as part of the construction of the homes. We're also providing geothermal wells to reduce energy consumption for each of the houses. And we are providing, well, we're dealing and accepting the extensive conditions that the Wetlands Agency and the Conservation Commission had. This plan preserves open space and significant environmental features, such as the significant meadow in the center of the site. We are only proposing two changes to the Conservation Cluster Zone. One is to reduce the acreage required from 50 to 10 as the minimum lot size. This is, this was adopted in 1988 as part of the Chieftain's development, and that was 34 years ago. This regulation has not been used since in any other development in town. The second suggested change to the regulations is to permit discretion on the part of the commission to have a lesser setback for accessory structures, and that involves the pool, which is on the northerly side of the property near House Five, and the greenhouse shed and tennis court, which is in the southwest corner of the property. Based on our meetings with really all three, Conservation Wetlands and ARC, we did significantly add to both the planting plan and the caliper of the trees up to four and four and a half inches in diameter and increase the height of the evergreens proposed for the site. I wanted to go through the objectives of the Plan of Conservation Development, because I think they really apply to what we're looking to do here, and there's changes in the regulations that we're proposing.
Actually, Mr. Hegney, I, we're.
I, I want to.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm looking to get you off the fence, Madam Chair, because.
No, and, and so let me.
I really want to point out what I think this plan does.
But yes, but I think that the objectives of the conservation zone are in this case more relevant because it is about the site plan that I was raising the concerns, and I believe that the P O C D is, in, in this case, somewhat less pertinent than what the conservation zones should accomplish. And that's what I wanted you to hit on, on this fence issue. The purposes of, of the, how you see it meeting the purposes of the conservation zones.
Okay, I, I can.
You can do both. I mean, feel free, it's your show, but.
Well, since you brought up the purposes of the conservations. Well, since you brought up the purposes of the conservation zone, that was going to be my second.
Okay.
Thought that was what we could focus on after, but let me, let me go over that first. It's to provide alternatives to residential development under other regulations when alternatives are more appropriately to assure conservation of land. And to, and more, most importantly, consider recommendations of the Conservation Commission, which has unanimously approved the plan that we have before you.
The zoning.
They, the rezoning and the site plan itself. We're both recommended by conservation.
I, where I'm stuck, where I'll tell you where my sticky point is. The commission has to find that this is best conserves and preserves the land to assure that its development will best maintain or enhance the appearance, character, and natural beauty of an area. And when one or more of the following purposes are accomplished, now, there's no question, you are protecting the wetlands and you are protecting streams and rivers. Where, where, that's enough, that would be enough, I suppose. Where I feel that it falls short as a site plan is in protecting particular areas and terrain which have qualities of natural beauty or historic interest. So what I feel, what I'm struggling with is, yes, you're protecting the wetlands, but the site plan itself, these houses are so big relative to what I see as the goals of the conservation zone. So there it is. That's my fence sitting.
Yes, and I did want to address that because that also came up both in front of wetlands and conservation.
Oh, good. I'll join wetlands. I was getting bored anyway.
But we.
Just kidding.
It never seems that way, though. The, the Wetland Agency in particular said, why can't you make the footprint of the houses smaller? Why is it, why do they have to be eight, nine thousand square foot houses?
Ten, some, one's ten.
One is ten. Why, why do they need to be so big? And I said, we're looking at the total footprint on the property. And we have scaled back asphalt, we have scaled back patio, we have literally clustered all the development in one area so that we can provide almost 100-foot buffer from the wetland on the east side and providing more than 100-foot buffer on the west side and also providing a buffer of 100 feet on the east side where we have the wetlands on the.
I know, you're doing a darn good job, except for the tennis court thing we went through. You're doing a darn good job of protecting the wetlands and that. My question just keeps coming back to the natural beauty of the place and whether you would, one would have decided on 10,000, how many square feet of total do we have? I.
We have a little over 48,000.
So call it 50,000 square feet, five houses.
That's what we're permitted.
Right, but whether that's consistent with the goals of the zone, and that's just where I'm struggling. I mean.
It was an interesting discussion that you had yesterday about.
We need to change the regs, yeah.
Is, is there? Is it the square footage that needs to be the controlling factor or the number of dwelling units? So if you had a lot more small dwelling units, but you stayed under the .0625 F A R, is that okay too? Something to consider, but.
But, but then I remind you, as long as we're having, and I don't want to rabbit hole because the commission probably shares my sentiment, we're all pretty tired after that four-hour application. But, but I remind you that we, there was a development that was denied by wetlands for that, that came in with many buildings with, that were smaller. So it's a tough one, but that's kind of where I'm stuck. So you're saying we raised a good point, but let's go back to your site plan. We can talk philosophy some other time on regs. Just talk about your site plan and why you think the site plan itself accomplishes the goals other than protecting the wetlands.
Okay, so you started with protect wetlands, and I pointed out that we're mostly 100-foot from the boundary.
Done, next.
Protect significant vegetation and wildlife habitat. There is a very unique wetland on this site, which is a meadow. And that's not something that we have elsewhere, and Rick can speak to that because he's developed a 10-year monitoring plan to that. But that is, that's a very unique aspect of this. There is also a very large wooded area on the southeast corner that we are preserving along with additional trees that are on the east side and the slope that is on the east side because we're building away from that slope. Three is protect slopes greater than 15% and not to alter drainage patterns. And Andrew can speak to the drainage on that, and we are not building on the 15% slopes. Where we are again clustering the development in one area. Number four is protect wetland from erosion, septic systems, and road runoff. Our septic systems, again, are more than 100 feet from the wetlands. The road runoff goes into specifically designed rain gardens along the road to deal with that. And erosion, we have a very involved sedimentation erosion plan, which can be implemented immediately after, before we start construction. Number five is protect natural features along roadways. We're 1,200 feet from the road, so I don't think that one really applies. You're not, when you drive by on King Street, you're not going to know that this exists. And number six is protect open space for active and passive recreation purposes through the conservation area. We do provide for walking paths as a passive recreation use, and of course, we do have the tennis court as an active recreation use. So I, I, I think those being the six items that we have to address, our plan does address that. But I wanted to get to the objectives of the P O C D because.
We got the P O C D memorized. I mean, I think, I think to me.
Let me touch on one thing then. This is, although it's in the residential zone, it's, the permitted uses are much greater than just residential because of special permits. And we could have healthcare facilities, we could have schools, farms, commercial nurseries.
That's not a way to convince me.
Houses of worship.
Mr. Hegney, you are not going to convince me you are doing a good thing by telling me about the bad things you aren't doing. I wouldn't even try that one. I mean.
I think that's something that you do need to look at.
No, I'm not going to look at that. I'm gonna, I'm looking at whether or not you're meeting the objective of a specific regulation, not a could, could you have done worse? Legally, that's my obligation. I have to see if you're meeting the regulation that's being applied to you, not if you could have been a bad boy and done something like build a prison or whatever. I don't know. But that's not the point. The point is, are you meeting the, the intent of the regulation, and that's what you've addressed? And in this case, since I'm asking you about the site plan, it's really, I don't think the P O C D is that relevant to it, to us, to the specific issue. Katie, would you agree with that? I mean, we took it, we took it out of the special permit standards, which always kills me, but. I mean, I don't, I think it's got to correspond to the regulation only, right?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that's the question. Are you meeting the intent of the regulation? And your argument is, yes, we are doing the things that are, that are enumerated.
That, that's why I did go through both purpose and the standards on the special permit and for the Conservation Cluster Zone specifically. Because this is a zone that's been used once. I, in looking at this site, not just because it's immediately north to the only other one that the commission created, but it's a unique site because of the slopes, because of the wooded areas, and because of that meadow. And there's a real opportunity here to permanently protect these areas that provide unique habitats for wildlife that don't really exist elsewhere in town.
And I'm not, I'm not going to tell Mr., I'm not going to tell Mr. Canavan you could have protected more of his habitats if you had built smaller houses. I'm sure he knows that. And, okay, so you're saying you're protecting the habitats, you're protecting the wetlands, you're preserving that can't be seen from the roadway. I keep looking at the regular conservation zone.
Preserving upland buffer areas as well, preserving steep slopes and preserving forested areas and significant trees. The Conservation Commission, particularly the chair, said there is a very unique, large elm. And we did relocate houses so that that elm would be protected, and that was based on the comments from our arborist we brought in to analyze all the trees on site. So we, we certainly are meeting all of those criteria for a Conservation Cluster Zone. And.
Okay.
I, I, I think that this, I think this is a real opportunity to use a zone that has not had a lot of activity and has fallen out of favor for whatever reason. You're limiting the size of the square footage to the .0625. It's only six and a quarter percent of the entire site. You are providing buffer areas, you're providing a management plan for a unique meadow. You're reducing the amount of pavement through the waiver that we obtained from the Commissioner of Public Works. And overall, this is something where there is reasonable development of the site while preserving very significant environmental attributes of it. And, and I, I really think that perhaps not when we started and we were looking for 40% to protect, but now we're over 60. We meet that criteria. We're not proposing to modify that. And it's over 11 acres that's adjacent to the Audubon and frankly, the, the northerly property in the convent, which provides a real critical mass
All right.
of protected area.
Okay, so having you, you having addressed that question, we got some more issues that we raised at the briefing yesterday. What's going on with this tree cut, tree cutting and clear cutting on your property and trees being removed at the Audubon? What's going on with that?
The, when I spoke with the client about that, the property had been neglected for many, many years.
Oh, my.
Now, well, I have more to say on this.
Go ahead.
The vines had either severely impacted or had killed the trees, and many of them were leaning over. This has been a vacant property for a long time. It attracts people wanting to explore it. And my client was concerned about safety and, and injury.
If you would tell your client, Mr. Hegney, that there is no clear cutting once an application has been filed with the commission for a site plan. And there is certainly no tree removal on the neighbor's property, which is what we're hearing happen. But if you would be very clear with your client that there is no tree removal, and if you would be clear with all your clients that once it's been filed, you know that.
As soon as I became aware that.
You stopped it, okay.
Going on, it stopped. My client has stopped it.
I like that answer the best.
The. The northerly boundary, unfortunately, I think everybody thought the, the stone wall was the property line when the stone wall is not the property line. And, and that, that was an error. And one that we have a restoration plan for, and then area that can also be used as the access to the Audubon and the riding trails.
One more.
What was the extent of the tree? Trees being cut down?
Thank you, Mr. Levy.
I, I walked that portion of the property, Mr. Levy. I didn't see a lot of tree removal there. It was more understory brush that was removed.
The pictures we got were of, of cut trees.
Yeah, there, there were some cut trees on the, on the easterly side of the property, not so much on, on the north.
Okay.
We do have a landscape plan.
You put a stop to it, and that was really what we were looking to hear, I think. Okay, the next thing is the stone wall. Are you preserving the stone wall?
We're preserving portions of the stone wall that run east-west and are not involved where the road is.
Because that was still unclear towards the end of you. We're going to be doing all the preservation. What did you finally do with the, with the the access for the horses?
Well, we'll remove any stones that block that accessway in the northern, northeastern corner of the property so that they can, the horse trails can go through there.
Okay, so you're going to allow the horse trails. You stopped removing the trees. You're conserving, you are definitely conserving as much of the stone wall as you can, and it would be good, I didn't see it in the application, if you would give the sections that are being if you would actually give us sections of those that are being conserved, just so we have it. Bad things happen when it's not super specific. You know that. I'm sorry, I'm rabbit holing on you. But, oh, no, we didn't mean that one. You know how that, oh, we forgot, whatever it is. You know, it happens when people are building things.
It is reflected on our site plan.
One follow-up question. I'm a little bit confused about, you made a comment, I believe, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but.
In my mouth, you can, yeah, sure, go ahead.
No, well, not your mouth, but you mentioned that they had, somebody had assumed that the stone wall defined the boundary of the property.
They did a survey, they knew better.
Well, thank you. So you asked the question, that's where I was going. And so I'm thinking, well, first of all, if the, if the stone wall is on the applicant's property, I'm not sure why that's an issue, but the stone wall is on the Audubon's property?
No, it's on the applicant's, and they remove trees on, it's very confusing because they remove, they remove trees on both sides.
Right, so, so I don't know about thinking because I'm assuming that somebody with this property would have had it surveyed.
Yeah, they did.
It was surveyed, but I don't believe, I don't believe it was staked. Which is, which is a separate activity by the surveyors. They, they prepare a topographic survey.
We're all familiar, we're really, I, I'm quite surprised because, you know, little properties down where I live get staked, so it's interesting that they.
Well, you know, the surprising thing is you may have to pay a little bit more for staking, but at the end of the day, you, you know where your property line is.
So, Mr., Mr. Hegney, you, you just, I think we're being especially clear. I, I don't think that the other attorneys are here anymore, but we really would like to relay the message that trees should not be removed nor should work be performed once you are before you have filed, and it seems like people have been forgetting. And I'm just, I'm done. I'm done with the lecture. I'm just making it strong. Pat, you share that for a reason? Oh, you were showing us the wall in the back.
So there's a wall along the northerly property line where Pat has the cursor. At that, actually, that's not the northerly property line. The northerly property line is what he's showing right now. That's right.
And why is there planting on the horse trail?
Because we were requested to do that by both, well, we were requested by Conservation and directed to do that by the Wetland Agency.
So Nick will need.
Your property, that's not your property.
Certainly, we need to get the permission of the Audubon Society.
Well, not only that, but you need to leave them.
What about the people that are riding their horses that are trying to get through? You're blocking their horse trail.
Well, what we're showing here are, I believe, six mature trees in that area, and the rest would just be saplings, and those could be placed in a way so that the path for the horses would be provided.
Well, it might be nice if you checked with Audubon or the actual property owner before you put plantings in. And I assume Conservation thought that that was your land, otherwise they wouldn't have advised you to do what they did.
Yeah, this lack of clarity about your boundaries is very concerning.
Well, we can certainly have that particular property line staked so that it's, it's clearly demarcated.
All right. Katie, Pat, we're gonna have to do something.
Margarita, your microphone.
We're gonna, I don't know how that happened. We're gonna, I was probably mad at Mr. Hegney. We're gonna have to do something to get this clarified, say, if this was approved, that there not be landscaping on other people's property, that they not be blocking the horse trails, that they really give us the sections of the stone fence that are going to be conserved. And I hate to say this, but, well, I guess, once they're approved, once they're approved for go-ahead, I suppose they could start removing trees, but that it be very clear. I, I guess we just have the, have them come back into zoning with a very specific demarcation of their land from their survey and that they're not in, they're not going to be trespassing with their development.
This is Delucia, Mr. Leroux. In terms of zoning permits sign-off, what would we, how would this be handled? We have the site plan, so it's the whole thing. And that would include actually that, at that time, the zoning permit sign-up would be for each one of the buildings? Or do they have to come back as well individually?
The, the buildings don't have to come back to the commission unless they're over a hundred and fifty thousand, so they would
No, no, no. This, yeah, to staff, but they come back individually prior to building permit.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think the, sorry, Katie, I think what the question is, is how, what's the order of those things? I think, I think each lot, each house would get a building and zoning permit separately. How the applicant wants to handle it with staff, it could be in phases, or, you know, it could be buildings one, two, three, yada, 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 like that, like that. That's the, you know, it could be parsed out, but it would typically be us assigning a review or reviewing the location of houses that, that are being requested for permits.
Great point, Mr. Leroux, because this is where I'm trying to get to, is how do we control that the overall site is respectful of its boundaries if they are coming in for separate?
Well, certainly, if the commission wanted to do, make some particular points about things being addressed, staked, cordoned off, whatever that is before permits.
You're getting all that, right?
That, that, that's something that we have done in the past.
Right, I'm just, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of zoning permit compliance review. Yes, each, so each house would be something that would be separate for its building permit. It would, for example, you know, is the first house going to include the total site plan? Or is that a separate thing? And then, you know, that's, that's what I'm confused on is the procedure.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a site plan that gets approved that shows all of the development. Now, naturally, each of the specific houses that is shown in, on the site plan that you're looking at now could be changed slightly, that, you know, the configuration could be different, which is typical, by the way. So, so then when they come in, it gets reviewed on, on an individual basis. We do this in coordination with the Wetlands Department also, by the way, so they sign up now, obviously with the Health Department and all the other applicable departments like we ordinarily do. So the application comes in, it gets sent around to the other departments for each individual house. Now, in terms of the site and like the greenhouse and making sure that the meadow is protected and whatnot, that all takes place through this process because we have the Wetlands Agency, you know, basically governing what, what's going on with, with the wetland area, and they're reviewing it as a, as a whole also. What I was gonna say before, though, Madam Chair, regarding the point about other properties and horse trails and all that, obviously, the applicant can only function and, and control what happens on their own property. But to that end, I mean, there, there, you'd assume, and this isn't assumption, that what's been happening on the Audubon property would just continue in terms of the horse trails and whatnot. But my concern is, in terms of the horses being able to continue along the trail, right? But my concern is, should there be something that comes up where they want to go left instead of right? Or something like that? I mean, I think there has to be an understanding very clear, clearly stated that the idea here is, as long as the trails are kind of functioning and whatever, that the applicant should be putting their best foot forward to maintain the trails that might run through their property. I mean, obviously, they're entitled to maintain them only in a separate area and whatnot. But the idea here is to continue, to continue that use. I think that's sort of the point that, that the commission's making. So if it has to be slightly to the left or slightly to the right, I think that, that the
And, and that landscape plans not be in the horse trails.
Exactly. That's, that's the point. I mean, the, the idea here is to, is that the horses can go through there like they have historically been able to do, or not. But I mean, once a decision's made, you can't fiddle around with, oops, sorry, we wanted to put a tree here, the trail's closed.
But am I getting, am I getting? Katie, am I getting this wrong? I don't think horse trails are on the applicant's property.
No, but their, but their landscaping plan is on the horse trails.
Understood, but, but there shouldn't be any worry about the applicant doing something to change, you know, the direction of the horse trail. They're, they're two separate properties. They don't overlap.
But is, isn't the applicant apply, isn't the applicant providing entry or access to the horse trail?
Right. That's, that's the stone wall that's been closed off.
Well
And they're gonna open it. And Nick has to make sure to remember to write that down.
Doesn't that suggest that these horses might be traversing over applicant property? No.
No. No.
No, because the stone wall is not, in fact, the delineation. This is what's been confusing everybody. I think you do have to stake, Mr. Hegney. Mr. Canavan, you're, you're doing a follow-up on the preservation and the wildlife and all of that. It's, they said it was a ten-year plan?
Yeah, so in our, the plan that was submitted as part of our Wetlands application, there's a, it's, there's one of the comments we got back from the initial plan was that they wanted to sort of spell out what, what the obligations are. So we tracked that out. There, it's a process that's kind of established from similar, the Army Corps mitigation plan where you, you're looking at the response after the first few years, getting information. And then over time, you get, you get the practice of what time of year it should be mowed. It's, we're gonna be looking at mowing sections to allow for some of the standing vegetation to overwinter for, you know, inverberates to, to overwinter in that material. So there's gonna be, you know, this has been managed this way for a hundred years. You know, like, we, you know, part of it could be, we'll still do it the same way. But, you know, we also don't, no one's been looking at how it's functioning. So that, that process spells out some, some data collection to fine-tune the management of the meadow.
Okay. I just was interested. And you'll be sending reports into Wetlands on that, right?
Right. I mean,
Okay.
It, it might be a different scientist, but it's, that's the obligation on the plan is to have it monitored and, and reported on.
And Wetlands did require this specific management plan to be included as part of their decision. So it would be a, a wetland violation not to abide by this.
Yeah, well, you know how it is. I, I'm not gonna make another dig, Mr. Hegney, but it did cross my mind. All right. Okay. Any other?
Yeah, I, I just have a real quick question for Mr. White. On the surveys and field notes, did you guys identify any riding trail between the, the northern property line and the wall? Or was it, was there anything official or defined out there? Or was it just a simple path to the, to the land?
We did not observe any formal path through the land. As Mr. Hegney had mentioned, there was a lot of underbrush, which is what our client had unfortunately removed. What's on the survey is the, the right-of-way. So there's the paper right-of-way that's north of our property line. So that is what's depicted on the survey.
Right, there's really no official path out there. Okay, thank you.
Okay. More questions?
I just wanted to think about, Madam Chair, what you said about this, what, what makes, what makes it feel like a conservation zone? And one of the things that I think I agree with is, I would not have thought of this as a project by looking at it. I understand how it meets certain goals. But if you just walk down the road, looking at the five houses, it's a string of houses that are rather impressive. And don't lend themselves the idea that you're in a conservation zone. Whether or not they should is something else. So it looks like you're in a development. And the, the idea of being out in the country, in a bucolic setting, is certainly walled off by this string of houses. So I, I think that's, it must be part of what you're getting at. And so there's some, some kind of, something incongruous about it. But it's still hard to put
Yeah.
my hands on it.
Yeah.
Perhaps we could take a look at the landscape plan that we're
No, I mean, we've, we were just, we've looked at it. We've all been over it. But, I mean, it isn't about the landscape plan. We keep raising five very large houses close together and is a very intense use of that portion of the lot. And is that consistent with what this regulation is trying to do? And I hear you. You went through the list of the items in the way the regulation is written, and that's the thing to chew on. Does anybody else have any questions? Does anybody?
Just, just to postulate something. So if there were, if the grouping was so, was a little different, so there was a, more of a sense of openness and, and and feeling that you were in that environment, I think that would go a long way into kind of quelling this unease about, about the, the way that the, the project is laid out. So let's say you had, you know, you know, the, the two units at the back, if they were kind of pushed back a little bit differently so that there's an openness and maybe, you know, one, two, and two grouped a little differently so that you got a sense of coming across you know, you, you come across a house in an open area, and then you come across two houses, and it's still very open. And then you come across another two houses out in these fields. That's a very different procession and feeling than coming along this wall of construct, of, of built edifices along the driveway. So that's the frustration.
I, I suppose that's only something that the, the people either living there or visiting, the people who live there, would experience. And the focus that we discussed with both Conservation and with Wetlands was how do you protect and preserve the natural features of the property? How do you make sure you're not building on the steep slopes? How do you make sure that you're providing an adequate buffer to the wetlands? And those people, when they look out their backyard, they're gonna see a very bucolic wetland meadow. And when they look to the east, they're going to see woods and they're going to see the Audubon farther to the east. So a lot of what these people would be looking for in terms of this, the setting are there. Now, for, to a very great extent, the topography of the site dictates where you're going to build. We, we can't scatter these to the four quarters because you have steep slopes in one corner, you have wetlands in the other, you have heavily wooded area in another, and, and wetlands in the other. So we, we couldn't put them in four quarters. The, the, the site itself dictates where these houses would be built and how you protect and preserve over sixty percent of the site as part of that. So i- in the four acre zone is a four acre development, you need to have seventy-eight percent green space. As part of this development, we have eighty-eight percent green space. So we really are, I, I think are meeting all of the criteria that are set forth in six dash twenty-three.
I could, I'm gonna just go ahead and flip that argument around. I mean, you would not have been able to build more than, you wouldn't have, you would have only been able to build four houses here because you would have had to do a fifteen percent set aside. And those four houses would not have been able to be very large on separate properties because they would have been wetlands limited. So by having the conservation zone, you are able to go max-max and, and get around the fact that you have wetlands. This is where I'm struggling. I, I, I'm gonna keep working on it in my head. I'm still thinking about it. Do we have any questions from the public on this application? Let me just turn to that because we still have a lot of people here. And maybe they just fell asleep. No? Okay. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? Guess not. I guess they, oh, Susie J. Does not want to be a panelist. Okay. Oh, go ahead. And I've enabled you to speak. You declined to be a panelist, but I've enabled you. Go ahead, Susie J. If you would spell your last name again for the court reporter.
Sure. It's, can you hear me, Margarita?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, hi. I was hoping Chip Haslam was going to speak for us. I'm calling. Last name is Jarvis, J A R V I S. I've been living at Chieftains for twenty-four years.
Oh, you complained about getting water on your property.
Wasn't a complaint, Margarita. It was one of our houses in the back, the one that used to be the horse barn, was almost inundated last week with water. And I sent you pictures, you and Katie.
Yes, yes, we saw them.
Yeah, it was very serious. And they've never had this like this before. And particularly since the clearing was done. We're very concerned over here for the sake of not only that house, the house that was the horse barn, number eleven, but there's number thirteen, fourteen, and ten over on that side as well. And what I saw seven hours after the rain had subsided, probably around eleven thirty in the morning after the, my neighbor at number eleven phoned me, I'm on the homeowners board here. It was really shocking. I don't know what it was like. He said it was really coming toward the house. And that would have been the first floor of their house. They would have been inundated if it was, if it lasted much longer, like it did in September first storm. Chieftains really, yes, thank you. Chieftains took a real hit here.
Katie, were you able to find out, was anybody able to go out and find out what happened?
No.
Because there should not have been, the tree removal should not have created flooding in an adjacent property. I mean, they removed trees.
I don't remember seeing this before. I think it has happened out there before. But basically, after watching your presentation, Mr. Hegney's presentation on his maps, what I saw, my husband and I saw, we drove down the road that used to lead to Mrs. Solinger's, is that house number one that you're planning to build would have been, it would have definitely been to the first floor easily. The water was so deep and so far over, it was like a huge lake. And house number two definitely would be affected by it. I mean, I think you would want to know this, actually. So it was just pretty threatening to us that, okay, now after all the digging goes on and everything and their house is there, how is this going to affect Chieftains? And we have some serious real estate here. I'm curious where all this water is going to be planned to be put. When Chieftains was built, when I met Mr. Ferrari years and years ago, two years before we even moved in here, there was an approved drainage system put in here, an extensive drainage system put in here that I know pretty well. And I would hope that none of this is just gonna be assumed it's gonna go back down behind their property and, and/or And uh, and/or because some of it was going down the side by our number eight house at the bottom of the hill where the cow pasture used to be. Um, and piggyback on our system. We can't take it here. We're, we're maxed. We're really maxed. I mean, we have 12 inch pipes I saw that day that were um, down the hill um, that we observed that it was coming down and, and it was filling up a full 12 inch pipe and a catch basin and going into the next one opposite it at such force and such huge amounts. And I thought, hey, this, this isn't our water. This is coming from over there. Um, and it's not good, it's not going to be good for us. This goes down onto conservation land below us.
And it did seem to cover the whole driveway, Mr. Higgin. So on your property, so what, what, is this something that your engineers?
Oh, it came, Katie, excuse me, it came way over that road.
Oh, no.
And that's where it went right into number 11's lawn and right up to the back door.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, Katie.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to make the point. No, you're absolutely right. I saw the photos. I was just trying to make the point though, that obviously this is something that the, you would think the applicant would have uncovered in their engineering work, um, given the extensive water that was on the driveway and that they're going to have to figure out also just from their standpoint of access and whatnot. So I'm just, that's why I was bringing it up because it's, it's clearly not something that just, you know, I don't think it just happened. I mean, there, there's got to have been some drainage patterns that they could have interpolated from the, from the engineering work.
So uh, Katie, I, I did get those that you sent over. I forwarded them to Andrew White. Uh, Andrew was at the property today uh, and uh, wants to share his observations and his suggestions. So Andrew, if you could go over that, please.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you, Tom. I was on the property uh, this afternoon. Uh, my observations when I was out there, uh, the area, I know I saw, saw the videos. Uh, we certainly know how much water was out there. Uh, currently, the area is dry just below uh, the surface level or the, the surface of the wetland. There is standing water in uh, what appears to be some broken uh, clay piping uh, that was present in the wetland. We believe that the wetland must have been dewatered at some point over the past hundred or so years while they was being used for uh, horse paddocks uh, and other uh, agrarian activities. And uh, so that was, that was one observation. The other, I found plenty of evidence where uh, there is an existing stone swale to the southeast of the property that drops from the driveway down to the conservation area. Uh, it appeared that uh, either from accumulation over the years or whether anything was deposited there recently, uh, there's significant amount of uh, limbs and other tree material that were placed on this in uh, two locations, uh, which for my observations was uh, there was a large sediment uh, pond in front of the, the lead one, the upstream one, uh, which to me is indicating that it's damming water enough that sediment could uh, fall out of the water. Uh, and then it is most likely uh, making the water uh, proceed at a erosa velocity, which was scouring out the uh, stone swale as it went down the hill. Uh, also with the scour, we observed a four inch clay pipe that was either beneath or associated with the stone drain. Um, and other things, there was a pothole that developed in the driveway uh, just north of house number 11 uh, for the Chieftains that they're referring to. Uh, upon investigating that, it looked like there is a buried culvert uh, that you think has been historically buried for quite a while, as well as the stone wall that the fence to house number 11 has dividing the properties. There appears to be a remnant of a culvert that may have proceeded south through the Chieftain's properties uh, that I am assuming based on the information that we were able to pull. I think there's a septic system back there and the grade of the Chieftain's lots is raised uh, was most likely disconnected and buried when the development was built. Um, so my, my thoughts and observations from this is twofold. First, uh, is I believe these debris piles that are in the stone swales are affecting the overlap flow patterns. Uh, looking at the topography, it seems like overtopping of this road uh, was common or has occurred and has gone down this swell. And that the debris piles is now inundating uh, what was happening. It is exacerbating the condition. Uh, second is when the meadow uh, was cleared or mowed last year, uh, some of the storm drainage uh, was damaged uh, and is possibly, I think it was partially functioning and then between.
That storm drainage was damaged at Chieftains, you're saying?
No, this, this is in the meadow. It, it looks like historic drainage that has probably been there for
Now, who would have put storm drainage in a meadow if it hadn't been a problem?
So that, that, I believe this would have been from the historic use of uh, paddocks and having horses there to dewater the area. Uh, I don't believe it's been 100% functioning for.
Mr. White. There is a big wetland pocket that goes through there. So if it, in the, in the past, if it'd been used for horses and they just wanted to divert the water away.
So that their hooves, their hooves weren't sitting in it. But um, Mr. White, I, it's going to sound like a crazy question, but there's a small park, a small wooded park near me that the house adjacent to it remodeled and put in significant sump pump. That park had had a wetland. And it is not near that house, but as soon as that house was completed, the wetland went away because of the sump pump activity at that house. Whatever it did, it began to drain downhill of the wetland at a distance. And the wetland began to empty because of this development work. And so I'm now concerned if the wetland's natural flow is towards where you're going to develop, are you going to impact the long-term viability of this wetland? And even though you're not within the 100 foot, I get that. And I know that's why the 100 foot was created. So you know, we've read all this stuff. So how would you answer that?
So we are not going to be affecting this wetland. The reason being is that we are preserving the natural flow from our calculations of what drains to the wetland. The soils that the house, it's a very unique site because the soils uh, under the wetland uh, are wetland soils. They're poorly draining soils uh, and the soils at the house, houses are constructed on where the septic systems are where we tested. Groundwater was down eight, nine feet. The soils perk amazing. We have an extremely variable uh, soil condition on the site. And so where those houses are placed on that ridgeline uh, where uh, we're draining to the east and down that slope, we, we have great soils in that location. Whereas in the wetland, there isn't. So the idea is we are not proposing to put underdrains in the wetland. We're not proposing to drain the wetland. We want to maintain that. Looking at this condition, and we've been in talks with DPW, I believe they gave you uh, comments. Uh, one of the comments was to model the ponding condition in this wetland and look at the overtopping of the road.
And that's what you've done. Now, coming back to the reason Ms. Jarvis came into the meeting, you're saying that Chieftains is being impacted by this breakdown in the clay piping that was installed a long time ago in the meadow?
It is possible that that is one of the contributing factors. I also think the amount of uh, debris in the stone swell where this overtopping would typically go down uh, has been backing up water and it's also been causing it to uh, erode new gullies and concentrate water.
And, and Andrew, that's, uh, that flows to the east, not south. So it flows away
Close to the east.
From the Chieftains.
We're not saying that something doesn't need to be, to happen there. Um, this whole, this whole thing needs to be uh, looked at. And in working with DPW, uh, we believe that we can provide an overflow condition uh, so that we're not draining the wetland when it is uh, below the roadway elevation, pick up drainage um, that's at the roadway or just a little bit below it and discharge it and discharge it in such a manner that it's at non-erosive velocities, which is not occurring right now because the, the stone swell's been compromised.
And that would be to the east again, not, no.
Again, to the east.
So, uh, Mr. Mr. White, would, would um, abandoning or plugging that uh, underdrain in the wetlands be a benefit to the wetland? Um, that way the water that, that drains into it naturally stays in it as opposed to goes out through that pipe?
That is correct, and that's effectively what's happening right now. The, the pipe from our observations has been broken open. We can see in some portions where it's flowing, but as it gets towards the driveway, it is essentially non-functioning. So yes, it would be a benefit to effectively not uh, repair that, but in turn provide an overflow condition where we can manage the, the water level uh, so that the wetland receives the water it's supposed to receive. And then anything that comes uh, to the point of raising elevation to the point of reaching the road, the driveway uh, would be taken care of and discharged.
Right.
And that's
So that is not shown uh, currently in the proposed drawings. That was a comment from DPW and something we want to work with them.
All right. I think, I think we're gonna, and I'm just going to throw this out. Um, I know, by the way, Mr. Higgin, this is, I know this is a must-close tonight, but I am warning you right now that I'm going to tell the commission that I'm, I'm not ready to decide it tonight. Okay, just so you know, I, I, and, and we usually respect when one, I hope they respect me because we usually respect one person who doesn't want to decide. Um, I'm thinking, Katie, that since we have that time for when we make a decision, assuming that we are approving, I'd like to get some language from DPW, Katie, Patrick, both of you guys, whatever you think, on how we address this, these issues that have surfaced post-storms regarding adjacent property impact as well as protecting the wetland as Mr. White is describing. He's got, they're going to address it, but I'd like to have some very specific language in the decision that would condition this if we were to approve it.
Right. I mean, that, so it's been brought up in the DPW comments already, but you're saying X has to be completed prior to the, to the zoning permit?
There's also this issue of, and I don't know when we do it, but there's, it isn't just the wetlands issue that the mapping of the wetland flow that Mr. White's been raising. It's also the fact that the adjacent neighbors are now, are seeing water for themselves and also for the applicant on their, on their current driveway. And that, that may, that may need to be fully investigated and may require some revision to the drainage and whatever we do. I, I don't know how to handle this, but it might have to come back to us with a change in. Yes, of course.
Uh, I, I'll, I'll, I'll agree. I think there's a lot of moving parts to this, so I agree that maybe not, not decide tonight. But um, I think if we move forward with this, uh, as I was talking about before, there's going to be zoning permit conditions, et cetera. I think what I'm, what I'm hearing now is it seems to be that DPW has addressed or mentioned this, this information.
The, only the wetland part, only the wetland part, but not the adjacent property part is what I'm getting.
What I'm looking for, what I'm looking for is um, specifics on how this is to be repaired. Understanding Mr. White says that it's, we have a broken pipe, we have clogged swells, that kind of thing. I think that can be part of any, any kind of uh, uh, condition. That way we know that uh, things have been fixed and it's going to be functioning the way that we've seen it and approved it, if we approve it. You know what I mean? It's conditioned to fix those things.
Madam Chair, may I just speak one more time?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Margarita, to interrupt you. Um, I just wanted to make a couple of things very, very clear. We're not, you know, it's your business, you know, uh, Mr. Higgin and his client's business, you know, to do what he wants with this property. Um, my concern, as I said, is only for my, the group of us here, my community, my neighbors.
I understood that.
And um, as far as any debris or tree things, we pay an extremely wonderful company to come in here. And um, I mean, they take away so much stuff, Margarita, every spring. I can't even tell you.
Yeah, Ms. Jarvis.
They do not leave one thing here.
Ms. Jarvis, I believe that the debris is not on your properties. It's not on Chieftains.
I just didn't want anybody to think we were dumping or anything.
No, 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 no. We know Chieftains well and we know you maintain well. We know the development well, so it's um, we, we're well familiar with you. Um, so, but what Mr. White is saying is that there's something going on, on this property that has begun to impact.
There's a drain directly behind number 11 and they know that. And they said they're not sure that if animals have gotten down there and blocked it up or something and that maybe your client, their client could come and look into that, see if he can clear that line to at least help in the immediate future with thunderstorms coming and, you know, weather coming. Um, this was pretty scary for this family, you know, to think about a big insurance mess. I've been through it.
No, no, we know, we know. We know what we, what the whole town went through during Ida.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome, Ms. Jarvis.
Thank you all for what you do. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome, Ms. Jarvis.
Good luck to Mr. Higgin.
Uh, Mr. White, Mr. White, yes, go ahead.
Ask a question before, before you leave. Uh, it sounded like you just mentioned that there was a pipe below number 11 that might be clogged?
No, not below them, but on your property, on the road, what we call the back road down there. I didn't see it because the water was way up too high and we didn't want to drive through it or try to do anything at that point. But when I went into number 11's, you know, up to the end of the fence, I was trying to see it from there and I couldn't. But they said that they have seen some kind of a big drain out there on that road. And they wonder if maybe, you know, a coyote got in there. We've had a couple of them that were not well last year. We don't know if some animals are in there and made a home while it was nice and dry. I've had a problem with that once before. So no, it's um, inside on the road on your side of the stone wall. Um, and we didn't know whether that would affect, have a good effect on trying to get rid of some of this for the immediate future.
But you're thinking it's in the vicinity of house number 11?
Correct. If you go down there, yeah. I mean, I'd be happy to meet anyone down there that wants to.
I think what they're saying is that it empties in the direction of number 11. Uh, Mr. White, I would suggest you, you guys all take this offline. There's two issues. The applicant, DPW has raised already, um, Katie, Patrick, with the applicant that they, the wetland renovation. The second issue is this new discovery of off-site flooding relate, coming from this property and, and the, just, we just need to make sure both are done. And then we're good. Okay, Ms. Jarvis, I'm going to pull you out.
Great. Thank you so much. Great.
Okay, thank you. Wait, wait, no. Wait, no. Um, Katie, who did you want to talk to?
Oh, Mr. White.
Okay.
Okay, bye, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.
Um, the, the ridge where the houses are going, that the water flows both ways, right?
Yes, it does.
Because the only thing I was just thinking in terms of when we've had multi-house development in a situation like this is that we have um, like a detention basin or a water basin or something along those lines. I'm thinking of that property on North Street, which very sadly for them, opened up the entire property all at once. And it caused, it was near North Maple. Um, but anyway, I, I just remember it to be a colossal disaster. And so I'm just thinking if, if it's such that it's going down the road and all of that, I mean, so we, we need to look very closely, is my point, at the, at the overall soil erosion control plan um, in the sign-off, building department's sign-off process.
So what I'd like, my, my ask, just to be clear, is that we get from staff and DPW the very specific guidance on conditions that might be added if this application were to be approved in this regard? Because this is of great concern. And I'm very sensitive to this right now, Mr. Higgin, because of all the people that got their houses destroyed during Ida. It was painful. Um, Mr. Levy, I think some of it was in your neighborhood, right? And it's just, it's, it was painful for the folks. And, and I just don't want to be making these things worse. Okay, um, we have one more member from the public and then I'd like to move on and just close this at that point. Um, Mr. Alexander, if you would unmute and speak?
Yes, thank you. It's Peter Alexander. Is it possible that you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Excellent. Yeah, I'm a landscape architect. And one of the reasons I am is because of the wonderful gimbals that is now the Chieftains. And I would be happy to I would be happy to pro bono for them and Audubon, which I owe also, part of my youth, to analyze what the problems are. It's.
Well, why don't you, Mr. Mr. Alexander, why don't you speak offline to the applicant and to whomever I, this isn't an appropriate venue for that? Did you want to make a comment about the application?
Yes, I think that it is a good example of the lack of drainage and the wonderful, wonderful potential it has to get it right, too.
Oh, great. Okay. Well, thank you, sir.
Peter, just give me a call and I'll hook you up with Andrew and uh.
All right, there you go.
And Sean.
Okay.
Madam Chair, there was one item I did want to bring up and.
Ooh, we forgot something.
It's part, no, it's something that's in the wetland approval letter. And it says, prior to starting activity or May 1st, whichever occurs sooner, there are wood chip piles on the northeast side and near the wetlands that they want removed. And keeping in mind that I told my client not to do anything on the site at all.
Don't do anything.
Except that I have the May 1st date from the wetland.
Or or approval, whichever is sooner, and um, we'll fix it for you.
I would appreciate your uh your.
Yeah, Katie will fix it for you, or Patrick will fix it for you, but um, I think you're gonna um.
I I don't want to run amiss of the wetland regulations.
Our first meeting? Um, first May meeting, when?
Twenty uh eighth, sorry, excuse me, twenty eighth.
Oh, so if we did.
Is the next April meeting, right?
Yeah, so you'll be all set. We don't even have to do anything. If we if we decided at the next meeting, you're all set.
Six, I'm sorry, twenty six.
Yeah. You don't have a problem.
No, it's uh, it it's before any activity or May 1st, whichever soon should occur.
Yeah, well, you're gonna have to wait till May 1st.
They they want us to have these piles out by May 1st. That's my only.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Higney, they're.
Well, you can remove them on the 29th if you get an approval. Otherwise, I mean, I'm sorry, but.
All right, all right, but um, we'll we'll line it up.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Higney, they're they're wood chips or trees?
Wood chips.
This is wood chips.
Yeah, it's just at this point, we really don't want you doing work there, because it's really uncomfortable.
Understood.
I mean, please, I'm, yeah, it's bad enough that people can do. Okay, I'll stop. Um, okay, no more comments from the commission, no more comments from Mr. Higney?
Uh, we we uh request your approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, with that, does anybody object to closing this application at this time?
No.
All righty, this application is now closed, and as we kind of tossed around before, if nobody objects, uh, we will not decide it tonight. And with that, we move to our last application of the night. Uh, we have seven minutes to finish it, so Mr. Yesky can go to bed. All right.
Don't fight it, Dennis. Stay strong.
Dennis, watch out for that bus just drove right through our meeting.
All right. This is, uh, someone's gonna read our transcript someday and decide we were all crazy back way back when. Okay, G E H Properties LLC and. Yeah.
Not not, never mind, I'm not gonna stand.
G E H Properties. It's on the record. I know they're all nuts. G E H Properties LLC and Strickland Nine LLC for a final coastal site plan and special permit at 133 East Putnam and Nine Strickland Road. Mr. Higney.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. For the record, Tom Higney on behalf of the applicant. Uh, in February, uh, you approved a lotline revision and a rezoning of a portion of this property. There were a couple of issues to resolve, one with the connections, the sewer department thought it existed since 2011, uh, which have been all resolved, and you have a memo from Rich Femenella on that. Uh, revised parking layouts so that it works and flows better and didn't have uh conflicts uh and to provide for more green space. And so we've been able to accomplish all those. Mr. Dandria has a uh map that shows approximately 1,800 square feet of uh pavement removed and landscaping areas. Uh, and uh, the, we we have lost one parking space, but the 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 layout is is much better and and along the lines of what the public works has suggested. At the briefing yesterday, uh, there was discussions on uh uh providing trees, and my clients all in favor of that. And I sent a letter in, but to staff today indicating that we would provide three uh trees um and uh evergreen shrubs. I think uh Mr. Levy yesterday mentioned Texas, uh, hardened evergreen shrub.
The message from this, the message from Mr. Levy is where you can watch, if you think I haven't been listening, Peter Levy, is that is to avoid the non-native, non-environmentally beneficial shrub, which would be the Thujas. I mean, the the Arbivites. He's particularly concerned that those are good for screening, which you don't really need on the location, and to do something that is greener and more sustainable. Okay.
And we would, we would put a plan together and bring it to staff for their approval.
Okay, you would put a plan.
Give this to the staff.
Yes, and they 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 thought that would be okay.
And we would now request your approval of the third leg of our uh project here.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Ooh, good. Does any somebody from the public, wait, what happened to Arn? Wait, I gotta bring him back in. Arn fell out of the meeting. I don't know what happened to him. Um, does anybody from the public other than Arn wish to speak on this application? There you are. Does anybody wish to speak on this application from the public? This is 133 East Putnam, going once. Okay, all righty. Does anybody object to closing this application at this time?
No.
No objections. This application is hereby closed. Mr. Bazili, you can go home.
The good news is he's probably at home.
Yeah, I know. Mr. Bazili?
Yes, it was a fun night. Thank you very much.
Did you enjoy that nice, long four hours in the beginning?
Well, yeah. Not so much.
Yeah, nothing nice to say.
Definitely not.
It was long. Okay, Mr. Bazili, but we got everybody.
I have to say. Transcript, though, is really wonderful.
I I have to say, Mr. Bazili has been a longtime stenographer for the Zoning Board of Appeals, and they always asked him, leaning over, is it okay to continue or shall we take a break? So, he he wasn't, they weren't asking each other, they were asking him.
Yeah, but he, uh, I'm gonna tell you a secret, Mr. Higney. He has my cell number. If Mr. Bazili, if Mr. Bazili needs something, he now knows he can ask, he can ask directly.
Very good. I I was just concerned there, that's all.
No, no, he knows he can reach out to us anytime and ask us for anything he needs. Mr. Bazili, we'll see you soon. Stay well.
Thank you, you too.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, madam.
All righty.
How does live, how does the live transcript work? Is it uh, Mr. Bazili that does that?
No, it does it by itself. It Zoom does it on voice recognition. And the crazy thing with it is sometimes it it types really insane things.
There's some curse words today, I saw.
It it says some amazing things.
But it goes back, actually, what it did, it'll it'll type out some gibberish and then go back and correct it.
Hey, come on, Dennis has to go to bed in two minutes.
Things left to do.
Two minutes. First of all, um, Mr. MacRae, if you would do 133 East Putnam real fast, please, thank you. And then you can leave and we'll do Baldwin Farms.
Uh, do we have to do uh, what you call it?
No, there's, 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 there's four more things to do, two, two votes and the.
Oh, shoot, I forgot about that.
You didn't write this?
Never mind.
All right, okay, what do you want to do first? Um, vote our.
I'm giving you an extension, so you're okay. Keep going.
Okay, let's do uh.
Is that a motion to, sorry, Nick, go ahead.
It's a motion not to adjourn at 10, which is good, because it's 9:59. Um, the uh, Nick is gonna make the two motions, and then we'll do the vote on election, and what was the last thing we have to do?
Well, Nick's gonna make a motion for the chair, and then the chair can make a motion for the secretary, just to keep it so that the secretary is not making a motion for the secretary.
Oh, okay, we can do that. All right.
It's easier, easier to do it that way.
Mr. Levy, don't fall asleep. We can't reach a way, reach to wake you up.
Okay, so we're gonna do officers first?
Okay, that's what the boss said.
Okay, therefore, I nominate Margarita Albon as Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commissioner of the Town of Greenwich for a term of one year.
Second.
Mr. Barilak has seconded. Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
I'm.
I was gonna ask myself. I'm starting to get tired. Mr. Low?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Mr. Barilak?
I'm gonna vote aye aye.
Mr. Yesky?
Aye.
Mr. MacRae?
Sure, why not?
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
And I, do I have to, I don't vote, right?
Please do.
No, no, I'll abstain. All right, and with that, uh, we've passed at six oh zero one. And um, we now go to, I hereby nominate. Yeah. My sister said to me over the weekend, do you guys want to keep doing this stuff? You guys are all so crazy. Um, I hereby nominate Mr. MacRae to continue on as our much abused secretary.
You're in.
Um, do I have a second?
Wait, 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 do I have any say in this?
No.
No.
Okay, I I'm gonna give the second to Low, just so we have variety. All righty, Mr. Low has seconded. Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Definitely.
Mr. Barilak?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Mr. Yesky?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, I'm not, I'm gonna make you abstain. It's a six zero one. And by the way, one of the things that Mr. MacRae is incredibly good about doing, that the rest of us are haphazard, he always proofreads the decision letters. If anyone or anybody wants to pony up for that, when you get a decision letter, please feel free, because he's the only one.
No, no, I do it about once every 10 times, whether I need to.
Uh, there were some really funny, the last two that I did today, there were some really funny typos. Because Nick, Nick hadn't done it, and there, yeah, there were some really funny things in it.
We're losing Dennis. Let's go.
Dennis, Dennis.
Dennis is falling asleep.
Dennis, wake up.
The next one is this.
It, never mind.
Okay, so.
We're just using you, Dennis, to express our own feelings through you.
I don't mind taking some heat. Um, let's go, let's go.
May I do the fee schedule, Madam Chair?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, so this this is um due to language in the Public Act 21 dash 29 that basically says you can't charge more for 830G applications or for multifamily. So frankly, all of us had that kind of structure, meaning the towns in Fairfield County, just from way back when. Um, so we went through the process of of updating the fee schedule. Usually what we do, just for, so people know, is we usually do a 2% increase or something small every year. We haven't done that the last couple of years for obvious reasons, so we've just done the 2% ish this year. The numbers came out a little funny, um, but it's just effectively a a pretty standard update with the difference being that we've now eliminated the multifamily business. The the multifamily differentiation. So what that, what that meant um also is that then we had to look at what we thought about the difference between. Um, so we didn't do it based on on number of, we just did, just did a flat, excuse me, we just did a flat residential use number.
Okay.
Yeah, um, there was, it's it's about 2,000. The non-residential uses, which are commercial, they they range based on size, and over 20,000 square feet is 5,000. So we just, we're just starting with this for now. We can amend it as time goes on if need be.
Sounds good.
Has to cover single family all the way up.
Sounds good.
Okay.
We just.
All right, could I have a motion, please, Mr. MacRae?
Uh, I so.
My new secretary, do I have a second? You so move approval?
We know, so move with approval of uh revised fee schedule for, is it 2022?
2022, yeah.
Okay, uh, that's it, yeah.
Second. Okay, Mr. Low has seconded. Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
I'm.
Low?
Aye.
Yesky?
Aye.
MacRae?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, it passes five nothing, and just a.
Hey, don't I get to vote?
You and I have already voted aye by a substantia or something.
All right.
Oh, I, it's just regulars, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Next week, when someone, you know, forgets to come or something. Um, also, at some point, we should really look at the fees in general. There's a bunch of stuff to talk about, but not with residential.
We just wanted to kind of get this, get in compliance, and then we can deal with other stuff as time goes on. Particularly outdoor dining is gonna be different next year, so it seemed.
Yeah, and and there's also, um, for example, one of the things that that the state law last year says, we can recover the fees of hiring experts on 830Gs, we can charge the applicants for that, for example, on any big application. And we have never done that, and I'd like to have a discussion about that, but let's go to our decisions now before we've, you know, um, the curfew. All righty, Mr. MacRae, if you go ahead on 133 East Putt, then you can leave, and I'll do Baldwin.
Okay, um, let's see this one up, a lot of pieces to this. Uh, 133 East Potam Avenue, Cosco, uh, application PLPZ 2021 556. Final coastal site plan, special permit, asking for approval uh to revise and reconfigure parking to create an additional 12 parking spaces that are properly located in the LBR 2HO zone. Uh, whereas the applicant requested a final subdivision be transferred to the land, it was granted by the commission under application PLPZ 2021 558. Having received a zoning maximum amendment to rezone 4,703 square feet portion of the land from R7 uh to the LBR 2HO zone under application PLPZ 2021 557. Uh, and there are no, to be no changes to the contributing structures on the site. So that was the stuff from a couple of weeks ago. Uh, commission finds that conservation issue comments and uh dated uh 12122 indicating comments to the plan. Uh, issued uh issued comment, uh, zoning issue comments, uh, 124 indicating proposal meets the requirements of the BZR and endorse the project for zoning permit. Engineering issue comments dated 125 and again comments to the proposed plan. Uh, wetlands issued of permanent needs questionnaire dated uh 12/9 indicating no regulated wetlands on site. And the sewer division issue comments dated 4/722 indicating that all uh that the applicant owner has addressed all of the sewer's commission uh comments and corrected sewer engineering issues previously identified and has no objection to P and Z approving the per application. Uh, therefore, motion to approve the application, knowing the following, per GPW engineering comments, if any of the assigned spaces um for employee only parking considerations should be given to using spaces 1 and 7. Uh, the installation of parking 9 will impact uh the travel lane, and installation of parking 9 will increase the width behind the existing parking. Uh, let's see, uh, per conservation comments recommended the applicant provide native ornithory tree to three native species. And the applicant has provided a letter dated April 12, 2022, committing to planting three trees and some evergreen shrubs.
Which shall not be arbivite.
Okay. Uh, there's, there's no number to that. I guess we can just say some, and they put them in as as they can.
Um, no, we put subject to the review, and then you're you're just gonna say subject to the review of plant, uh, planning and zoning staff, and then it'll get nice, because we have expertise on staff.
Okay. Okay, and the applicant shall address uh any and all remaining staffer into departmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Low has seconded. Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Yesky?
Aye.
MacRae?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five nothing. Goodbye, Mr. MacRae.
Can I have a second to listen?
Yeah, you could actually listen, as long as you go, go dark on your camera.
Yeah.
You're, you're getting time off for good behavior here.
Yeah, but the point is, remember, you, you know the story, you guys, about in the old days when we met in person, the commissioner had to leave the room when he recused, because we had a lawsuit threatened because the commissioner remained in the room and made faces?
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a threat, it was, it actually happened, not with our commission, but with a commission. And and they, the the um decision was overturned, because it was judged that that person influenced the the um decision. because it was judged that that person influenced the, the, um, decision.
So that's why we can't see Mr. MacRae, so when he makes faces at us, we won't know. Okay, I hereby move approval of the final site plan and special permit at 22 Baldwin Farms South for a, um, a, a single-family dwelling which will exceed 150,000 cubic feet. And the special permit is also for an indoor athletic facility which will exceed 1,200 feet. Uh, the commission does so noting the following, uh, the kitchen spaces in the cottage and the poolhouse shall be relabeled as wet bars. Uh, the ZEO is to verify all zoning statistics prior to permit issuance. The applicant is to install more, uh, uh, protection more robust than construction fencing to protect both sides of the driveway during the construction period to protect the driveway from compacting and damage to the trees adjacent. An arborist shall ensure that the trees shall make a plan and ensure that the trees uh, near the locations of the rain garden will be adequately protected. The, uh, applicant will explore, Mr. Levy, replacing the Arbivite with, uh, more environmentally um, supportive and with and/or native species. Those are the conditions I have. Does anybody have anything else? Um, I would add one other thing, which is, I would like.
But is this, is this, which, which application is this?
22 Baldwin. You can, but it's okay. Yes, you're good, right? You know what you're voting on. Okay, good.
Yeah, no, I, I was gonna add something, but, uh, it's too late because we already voted on the thing I was gonna add.
Oh, yeah, that happens. It's, okay, the last thing I'd like to do on this is the commission notes that the applicant's landscaping plan offsets the increase in impervious surface um, with, and then put that whole plant calculation that they gave us into the decision letter. I don't want to go through 881 shrubs and blah de blah. But that whole section that they've got from conservation, I'd like to put it into our record for the decision because it's really the first time we've done something like that. I just want to include it, that the applicant, uh, that we, the commission notes that and, um, appreciates that, um, commitment to offsetting the impervious. Um, all, uh, it appears that all other staff, um, that all other departmental comments have been addressed. However, outstanding comments should be addressed by the applicant. Uh, do I have a second? I think Levy got it. Um, with that, Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. Yaski?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, it's five, nothing, and we are done.
Uh, just note, Mr. MacRae is not working on this one, so if anybody wants to, uh, use their one in 10, this may be the, the, the decision letter to do it with.
No, no, I'm not due yet. I've got a couple more free rides.
And Madam Chair, the, the phrases, the applicant shall address any and all remaining staffer in departmental issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
New secretary is saucy, I guess.
Yeah, he is. You know what? They manage. They know what you mean. They manage. All you have to do is make the point. You don't, you know? But on the other hand, I make Bob Baralec quote the exact language of 830G every time he talks about it.
You know, Nick, you try to be helpful and what do you get, right?
See, Bob, I feel the same way. I, you know, do the.